And welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for today, February 26th. At this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. All of the City Council members are present. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and make some introductions. So I'd like to go ahead and first introduce Councilmember Drew Combs to my far right. To my immediate right is Councilmember Betsy Nash. To my left is Mayor Protem Cecilia Taylor. To her left is Councilmember Catherine Carlton. Off the dais, we have our interim City Manager, soon-to-be City Manager, Mr. Jerome Robinson. Starlet Jerome Robinson. Next to her is our City Attorney, Bill McClure. Off the dais, we have our City Clerk Judy Heron. Judy's, folks, she's, for those of you who want to speak, most important person in the room. Please fill out a comment card on the item that you're here to speak on and provide to her so that she can go ahead and get you into the systems that we know to call you. If everyone could go ahead and please rise at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
Okay, so first item this evening is the report from closed session. We have nothing to report from closed session. So we're going to take a few things out of order this evening. The first thing we're going to do actually, as I'd like to do, is I'd like to actually pull one item from our consent calendar. I'd like to go ahead, excuse me, not from our consent. Where is this? H3, yes, I'd like to go ahead and start with H3, since we have people here for this, to approve the two-year employment agreement for Mr. Jerome Robinson, the City Manager. Is that okay for everyone? Yes. So we can go ahead, Mr. McClure, if you could go ahead and read us the item? Or actually, there's no staff presentation. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McClure?
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Nope. Okay, so this time, let's go ahead. Any council discussion? All right, let's go ahead and call the matter to a vote.
Mayor Mueller, I do apologize. We have one public comment on this item.
Okay. I don't see it in the system.
Mr. Andrew Boone.
Mr. Boone, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. It's not an earth-shattering comment or anything, but I'd just like to thank you and the city and express my thanks that we have a local resident being promoted to the position of City Manager. I've seen someone involved in the community for many years is very lucky for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. And with that, we can go ahead and call the matter to a vote. Okay, well, I'm not seeing it come up on the screen, so I'll just go ahead. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Great. And we'll take some pictures later on to celebrate. So let's go ahead now and move on to our first regular business item. Today, we're going to go ahead and actually, we're going to start with item H1, which are City Council Priorities and Work Plan. And then what we're going to do, we're going to pause at 7:00 PM for proclamations. Following the proclamations, then we're going to move on to item H2. So it's a little, I understand, for those following along who are here tonight, it might seem a little out of order, but we wanted to start on goal setting before we moved on to the tenant relocation issue because we expect that's going to go late into the evening. So right now, we're going to go ahead and call item H1. And for that, we have Assistant City Manager Nick Pegaros will make the presentation on our 2019 City Council Priorities and Work Plan. Mr. Pegaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Members of Council. My name's Nick Pegaros. I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I'm pleased this evening to present to you the second step in the city's annual work plan process development, priority development. As the council is aware, we met on February 2nd, and I have a presentation this evening that will help, hopefully help frame the discussion. At the end of this evening, we hope to have the City Council's priorities for 2019, and we will return in March for a City Council adoption. So just by way of agenda, I'll go through some background, then I'll give a presentation on a variety of items related to the work plan and goal setting, which suggests then we take discussion and public comments, and then come back to the City Council for prioritization. So for the benefit of the audience, the annual, the purpose of the City Council's work plan is really to establish the City Council's priorities and expectations of staff. This helps us align our resources with the priorities of the council, and it provides a good guide to help develop the City Manager's recommended budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This year, the 2019 goal-setting session occurred on a Saturday. Previously, it had occurred on a Friday afternoon. It was approximately six hours. We had a very lively discussion. In that session, the City Council received an overview of the city's ten-year financial forecast, which helped provide a basis for understanding what may be possible in the future, both next year and beyond. Additionally, there were extensive opportunities for public comment after every sort of major component. The mayor opened the floor for public comment, and we received some good public comment there. This year, we attempted to provide the City Council with a comprehensive overview of the city's project workload, which I'll go into a little bit in greater detail here in a second. And then finally, we held the session here in council chambers, which allowed us to record the session for future reference. As with previous years, once the City Council adopts its work plan, we provide quarterly updates on progress toward the major milestones that are identified. Preparing for the 2019 goal-setting session was quite an undertaking. I'd just like to highlight some of the key elements. The first thing we did was review the 2018 priorities. The City Council adopted work plan for 2018, contained 59 projects. Some of them were in the capital improvement project. We anticipate that approximately, that 16 of those projects are either complete or expected to be completed by June 30 of 2019, the end of this current fiscal year. 12 of those projects will continue into 2019-20, and 12 require additional City Council In addition, we provided an overview of the 2018-19 City Council adopted capital improvement program budget. This document contains approximately 80 projects, and includes a number of projects from previous years the council had provided approved money for in the amount of $34 million. Additionally, in 2018-19, there was new money of $18,750,000. To quote our new City Manager, "We can do almost anything, but not everything." And so the goal-setting session helps us identify what we can achieve with the resources available. And the final thing I'd like to highlight is 2019 really is, this current year really is a year of transition. We have a new City Manager, we have a new City Council, and so it's a good opportunity to take a look at the process and confirm, rather than assume, the City Council's priorities going forward. So to help achieve that, we provided a comprehensive overview of city projects. City projects occur in a couple of different places in our processes, and I thought it would be helpful to get them all in one sort of document. The first are the work plan projects. Work plan projects are reviewed and approved by the City Council on an annual basis with quarterly updates. Those projects are broken into several categories. The first are the top priority projects. Examples of those include the Guild Theater and Transportation Master Plan. Non-capital projects, these are projects that won't result in the construction of any infrastructure or capital improvement. An example of that is from 2018 was the Stanford University Journal Use Permit Review. And then we have our capital improvement program projects that are on the work plan. Jacklisle Park restroom is an example of that. And in 2019, we really attempted to focus the work plan on the heavy lift policy projects as opposed to sort of a combination of capital improvement and policy projects. The capital improvement program budget is really a planning tool or cue that the council approves annually in July. It includes carryover projects, as I mentioned earlier. An example of that would be the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. New projects such as Welcome to Menlo Park Monument signs, and anticipated projects in the future, not necessarily occurring in the current year, but potentially in the next five years, such as the Will Place Bridge abutment repair project. And then finally, we have operating projects. Sorry about that, operating projects. So moving on, as part of the annual goal-setting session, we requested the City Council review and give guidance on budget principles that will be used for preparation of the upcoming fiscal year budget. Purpose here is, again, to guide the development of the City Manager's proposed fiscal year 2019 budget, as well as, and the action that we're requesting of City Council tonight is to provide final edits of the revised, or to the revised budget principles, which are on page 28 of the staff report. And staff will return on March 5th with the, for adoption. So I'll just quickly go through the changes. The first change was recommended by staff and is really focused on pension liabilities and costs, opportunities to, you'll see here, we actively pursue strategies to reduce pension costs and opportunity, as opportunities arise. The second change came out of the goal-setting session where there was a request to include some, a prior, or principle relative, relatable, within relation to equity through the budget process, so we provided this information there. The next update is from the, it was also raised at goal-setting session, and this is really to incor, ensure that we're making progress towards documentation of procedures, practices, and processes to manage the loss of institutional knowledge. And then finally, we have some changes relative to the communication of the city's financial position and making it clearer, making that particular statement clearer. So we will be coming back, and I'll ask the council to give us guidance on those priorities, on those principles. Moving on to the 2019-20 Priorities and Work Plan. In 2019, we made several attempts to help clarify the process. The first, as you noticed in the council, in the staff report, you'll see that we included for the first time what we call a clarity of project scope. So these are projects on a page. We call them POPs. Those documents are intended to ensure that we are accurately executing the project that the council desires us to execute. So if there are changes to the project on a page, we would very much appreciate that clarification this evening. Additionally, we attempted in this year, in this year's process, to place projects in the proper document or process to avoid duplication. As you'll see in a few moments, there were several projects that were included in the work plan, that were also included in the, in the capital improvement budget, and it can cause some, for some confusion. So we'd like to achieve some greater clarity there. For definition purposes, you'll hear us use the term "top priority projects," and I just want to clarify our understanding. So the top priority projects reflect the City Council's highest priorities for 2019. What this means is that staff will realign resources necessary to achieve the milestones outlined in the project on a page description. The previous City Manager sort of said, "We will do whatever it takes to make sure that we reach those milestones," and I think that that was particularly helpful in 2018 to make some good progress towards the key projects that the council had to prioritize for 2018. In addition, we have other work plan projects. These are projects that are out, that are, that staff has also provided a project on a page, and will make our best effort to deliver on the timeline, on the major milestones that are included on the project on a page. However, if resources are required, the project may be delayed to complete the top priorities. So as, as, if we experience changes in the project that were unanticipated, whether it be staffing or otherwise, we would move, we would move, we could strategically, not in a very thoughtful manner, move, move, move the resources. So for this evening, we are looking for the City Council to review the staff report items as presented. The first, and there are two attachments to the staff report. The first is Attachment A, and that's pages 31 through 39 of the staff, of the staff report, and that's this capital improvement program prioritization. Then we have Attachment B, which is, which is on pages 40 to 50, and that's the 2019 goal-setting summary. In that, we have four components. The first is a recommendation to transfer projects off of the work plan onto, and leave them in the capital improvement program budget, or another study or process that may be ongoing in the city. Again, this is to achieve clarity and to avoid duplication across documents. The second component would be to refer an item to a commission for additional review or exploration. These are ideas that came up during the goal-setting session, either recommended by members of the public or by the City Council, that could benefit from our advisory commission's expertise in these areas to help refine the scope and present a potential project for the City Council to consider. Additionally, we're looking, several projects have been placed, as we understand from the goal-setting session, to have study sessions, and these would be opportunities for the City Council to sit down and hear the policy question, and then give guidance on the policy, give policy direction desired, and then staff can go back and do the necessary work, return to council. One item that staff has recommended in the, in the report is that the council may consider designating City Council ad hoc subcommittee members to assist staff in developing the, or preparing for the study session, to ensure that we're meeting the expectations of the council members that were interested in the, in the item being added to a study session. And then finally, we have the, the remaining projects, which are really the item of top, great topic tonight, and prioritization. These are projects that, we have 14 of those, and we'll go through them. The action requested tonight is to either accept the recommended prioritization as provided in the staff report, or direct changes, changes as desired. And whatever the outcome from this evening is, we will return to the council on the 5th of March for final adoption of the work plan. So to dive into the Attachment A, which was the first purpose that was identified on the previous slide, these are, this is prioritization of our capital improvement program budget. As an overview, the attachment breaks, it, the attachment takes our adopted City, our City Council adopted capital improvement program budget. There are seven functional areas, such as build, city buildings and systems and environment, and you'll see those on, on the pages 32 through 39. In the cover memo to Attachment A, our Public Works Director has presented a, introduced a prioritization process, which we're calling tiers. First tier, tier one, tier one provides for the highest relative priority projects, and tier NA are projects that are anticipated but not yet funded or on the work plan, so they're not prioritized. As you go through the attachment, you'll see each project is rated either tier one, tier two, tier three, or tier, or NA. To establish the tiers, the department and staff looked at a number of considerations, first being staff capacity. This is our ability to complete the projects. Others, other considerations include regulatory compliance, so these are projects that need to be completed in order to comply with regulations, preservation of city assets, improved efficiencies, grant funding timelines, and then just generally first in, first out. So the first project that was approved is the first one that we attempt to complete. So feedback received at the February 2nd goal-setting session. We received feedback on two projects. The first was, or to change the priority of the Chrysler Pump Station. The feedback was to increase the Chrysler Pump Station from, move Chrysler Pump Station from a tier one, from a tier two to a tier one project. And this represents or reflects the importance of that project and the critical nature of us moving forward with that. The second change was to move the Welcome to Menlo Park Monument signs from tier three to tier two. In part, in recognition, in acknowledgement of the addition, or the increase in priority for the Menlo, Welcome to Menlo Park Monument signs, staff is recommending that the downtown parking structure move from tier two to tier three. So this is sort of the compensating offset to increasing priority for another project. While those are, for the most part, the only feedback that we received at goal-setting that staff captured, there has been a good amount of communication through CCIN regarding sidewalk projects. This is just a quick list of the sidewalk projects that are currently included in our capital improvement program. You'll see we have two tier one projects, and then four tier two projects. The first tier two project, Sidewalk Repair Program, that's our annual program that's, that we engage upon to ensure, to minimize risk and liability related to potential trips and falls, as well as just general public safety. The other three projects are presented in order of, present, in order of their addition to the capital improvement program budget. So they're all ranked tier two, and staff is approaching the projects at that, in that order. Two of the projects, if I'm not mistaken, the Santa Cruz sidewalk, the Santa Cruz and Middle Avenue resurfacing program, this is an upper Santa Cruz Avenue project, sidewalk project, as well as the Pierce Road sidewalk are grant-funded projects, which was one of the considerations that was used in the prioritization. And just as a reminder, the Sharon Road project, sidewalk project, was added to the budget last year through the budget adoption process. So that, that concludes the feedback, or the CIP prioritization, and we'll come back.
Why don't we stop there?
Okay.
And go through CIP, and then go ahead and do the next section. So at this point, we're going to take questions, then take, well, actually, I just have a couple of clarifying questions. Do you guys have any questions, any questions before we take public comment? I have one clarifying question. So last year, during the budget process, when Sharon Road was added, there was language in that that indicated that, and I'll read it, Sharon Road sidewalks installation, $935,000. Vice Mayor Mueller proposed prefunding this project in fiscal year 2018. The project was scheduled to begin design in fiscal year 2019-20 and construction in 2020-21, subject to appropriation in future years. That's staff's language from the report that was included in the budget. And so I'm kind of wondering how it got a tier two designation, and whether or not it's still the intention of staff to begin design work with the community on that, this in 2019.
Sure. In my conversations with the Public Works Director earlier today, he did indicate that that timeline generally is what we're striving for based on the resources that we have and know of today. We, the project has never been deprioritized or has been decreased in priority. It's always been a tier two project. It's just that the tier project, the tiering of the projects is new this year. So it's our intent to move forward with the project, as mentioned in the staff report, provided resources, again, are continuing to be available.
So tonight, for people who came to speak on that in advance, they should know that within the CIP right now, design work is scheduled to begin with the community of that in two, in the latter half of this year, beginning 2019-2020 budget cycle.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? No. Great, then we can go ahead and begin a public comment on the CIP portion of the presentation. Any public comment on the CIP portion of the presentation? Yeah, if you, you know what? I think it's going to be difficult to split it up this way, and my apologies. So let's go ahead and move on to the next portion, and then we'll just take public comment all at once.
Very good. So moving on from the capital improvement prioritization, now we're moving into the 2019 work plan project distinct, buckets. The first is the recommendation to transfer projects from the work plan to another document. The first group are, as you'll see up there, are projects that were included in the 2018 work plan, that were also budgeted in the capital improvement program budget. And we're recommending that they're, given that they are in the capital improvement program budget, generally, one of the biggest obstacles to undertaking a project or completing a project has to do with financial resources. And so all of these projects have funds that are, that are either carryover or appropriated in 2018-19. So we don't necessarily recommend that they be duplicated on the work plan, since the council has already given direction to move forward with them. The second group of transferred projects are to transfer to a master planning project, and there are two projects here that were discussed at the goal-setting session on February 2nd. The Snack Shack project is being incorporated into the Park and Rec Master, Park and Rec Master Plan. This will give a comprehensive overview of the uses and opportunities here at the Civic Center campus, which is one of the potential, which is, which is a potential site of this, of the Snack Shack. And additionally, the El Camino Real Quarter Study is incorporated, or is already a part of the Transportation Master Plan. And then finally, on last year's work plan, was the High-Speed Rail Coordination, and this has already been transferred to operations. So that's the first bucket of 2018 work plan items continuing into 2019. The next bucket are items that staff recommends, that the City Council refer these items that were identified primarily by the public and, and I believe, primarily by the public, new work plan items, and the recommendation here is to recommend, or refer these items to the applicable commission. So we have three, sort of, three projects or initiatives. The recommendation is to move the Middle Avenue Caltrain Access, San Mateo Bike Bridge, Olive Project to Complete Streets for their development of a project scope, and return to council with the recommendation on how to move forward. The second are the Energy Reach Codes and Carbon Policy. The recommendation is to refer that to environmental quality. And then finally, affordable housing efforts and initiatives refer to the Housing Commission. What we would expect to do is share with the committee chair that the council is asking the committee to focus on these particular projects and develop a project on a page for that to be, for that to return to council for consideration and prioritization. The next bucket are, many of these were on the 2000, or all of these were on, no, many of these were on the 2018 work plan. One of them is new. The, in, in the presentation on February 2nd, staff had identified that there were several projects that were on the 2018 work plan where the project scope was a little unclear to staff, and we wanted to check in with council to understand where you wanted us to go on these particular items. You'll see here that as part of the, on February 2nd, one, one recommendation was that these items be scheduled for study sessions. And so what, what staff has done is scheduled, tentative schedule, study sessions for the various items. As mentioned in the staff report, we have study sessions currently scheduled through the end of April. These would be in addition to those, which then start in May and then move through August. There's a possibility that as the mayor and city manager set the agenda, that these, that these may need to move around based on differing needs. So this is purely tentative. We're not suggesting, we're not asking the council to take action tonight on these, but we are asking that you confirm that you do want study sessions on these items. And I think ideally, if the council is, has the interest to appoint ad hoc committee, council ad hoc committee to work with staff to develop these ideas more fully before the study session. And I think ideally, if the council is, has the interest to appoint ad hoc committee, council ad hoc committee to work with staff to develop these ideas more fully before And the moment we've all been waiting for, the prioritization of top priorities for 2019. In the staff report, there are 14 projects that emerged from the, that staff believes emerged from the February 2nd goal-setting session. Of those 14 projects internally, staff has discussed a variety of the projects and has taken a first shot at identifying potentially top, five top priorities for the council to consider in 2019. By no means are we suggesting that this is the list that needs to be the top five, but we wanted to provide a opportunity for reaction and for, to help move the discussion forward. So as you'll see here, the top five projects recommended are the Transportation Master Plan, which was a top priority in 2018, so that's continuing. The Chilco Street Improvements Project, a Middle Avenue pedestrian and bicycle rail crossing, Heritage Tree Ordinance Update, and the Bellhaven Branch Library Project. And included in the staff report is a description of what we hope to achieve in 2019 for each of those projects. The remaining projects for work plan consideration in 2019 are shown there on the screen. I'm not going to read all of them. Again, these projects are, all have projects on a page that were included in the staff report, and they could be considered for movement to the top priority, or they could stay as-is. As I mentioned earlier, the distinguishing factor between a top priority project and a work plan project is that only in the event that we need to move resources to achieve or to ensure progress on the top priority project, we will. But otherwise, staff is committing to the work plan or the milestones that are outlined in the projects on a page for all of these projects. So next steps, we are seeking city council direction this evening on the 2019 budget principles, as well as Attachment A and Attachment B to the staff report. I won't read those there. Following this evening, we will return on March 5th with the, with a consent agenda staff report for the city council to adopt its 2019 priorities and work plan, as well as the budget principles. A quick overview of the budget process is up there. Our fiscal year ends June 30. We're required by state law to have a city council adopted budget by June 30, and so this calendar provides for that. Nothing new or special this year. And then we will, as always, continue with quarterly updates on both the budget and the work plan for the council. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
There's just one comment I wanted to provide. It's not really a question, but the council wouldn't know it, the city manager would know it, and you probably know it, Nick. One of the items that we've added to the work plan for a study session is Mark. And March is on the chronic homeless issue in Menlo Park right now. So when you're looking, chronic homeless, chronic homeless. So if you're looking at study sessions, that's also within the list, but we've set that up to be taken up pretty quickly here in March. With that, I think if there's any, if there are no questions, we can go ahead and move to public comment. So I always want to let people know in public comment, so we're on Item H1, and so city council policy parties and work plan. And folks, I always say, never underestimate the power of a sharp mind, a sincere heart, and a kind voice. Sitting here on the dais, people don't usually come to city council meetings unless they're fired up about something, otherwise they're at home. But from us, on our standpoint, it's a lot easier to hear you when you're, when you're, when you can be as composed as possible and just talk with us about what your issue is. So with that, our first speaker of the evening, this evening, is Marcy Coggins.
Thank you. Marcy Coggins, 15-year resident of Sharon Road, former Launtrada and parent and student, past LLE Foundation president, co-chair for District Parcel Tax. I love my and care about my community. I'm here tonight with fellow residents representing the homeowners of the 2100 block of Sharon Road. We are direct stakeholders to the proposed changes to our street. The first correspondence regarding the sidewalks, not from the city, was an email I received February 5th that stated the council had allocated funds to put a sidewalk on Sharon Road between Launtrada and the Alameda. This email also stated the city council members needed to hear from residents of the street to make the project actually happen. We are in opposition to such drastic changes to our street without further notification or consideration. That does not mean that we are not willing to work with the city to address issues and to help find solutions. We were all shocked that funds had been allocated and the project was being considered as a Tier Two priority in the city's 2019 list, without a single resident being notified, contacted, or sought for input. As the 16 residents who own property on Sharon Road, we feel blindsided by the exclusion of being part of the process. Expectations would be that you would seek comment and feedback of the residents affected of the area to help determine if any improvement would be appropriate. Most of us are longtime residents and have had children grow up and navigate Sharon Road without incident. In short, in the short time allowed, we cannot address all concerns, ask the questions we have, nor offer some of our suggestions for possible alternative solutions. We have written you with our concerns and our ideas. We question who and what data source determined that safety is an issue on Sharon Road and deemed it unsafe. Next, we question whether the addition of sidewalks would make the road safer. We believe the wide roads with sidewalks present a problem of increased speed, as is evident... That's it?
Thank you, Ms. Coggins. Just so you know, folks, residents of Sharon Road, the project, as described tonight, there's a whole design process that takes place at the city. So the next step is actually meeting with residents and talking to them about it. When Santa Cruz sidewalks came up, it was in the CIP for a number of years, and we actually met with residents, one of them sitting next to me, through a design process to go ahead and figure that design with residents. Our next speaker this evening is Lynn FoVinci.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Lynn FoVinci, a resident of Menlo Park and a member of the Library Foundation Board. Just wanted to say that we were very gratified to see that the Bellhaven Library Branch is recommended to be a top priority for the coming year, and we encourage you to keep it there as a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Ann Wollandlada. I apologize. I did my best.
First of all, thank you so much for an opportunity to speak. I am one of the residents on Sharon Road, and like Marcy, we were, came out of the blue. And we have real concerns about safety on the road, and I have written to you, I voice those concerns. First of all, sidewalks on Sharon have become a sort of mantra. Sidewalks, build them, build them, all will be safe. Much larger problem and contained problem. Within a block of Launtrada, we have major intersection problems. I have been hit once, my dog once. Just one block and an intersection controlled. We have not had any incidents on sidewalks, but no one is looking at safety issues. It's sidewalks, it's not safety. And we would like to broaden the discussion. I know, Ray, this is your pet project, and I don't know, you can inform us better how to work through the design issue, where we can have input. We have had zero communication, zero inclusion in any discussion on this. I would like to propose the model we have used with Launtrada School. We work to have good neighbor relations, that's right on the block, that's where the kids are going. They include us, we have direct targeted communication with what's going on. This has been traffic flow, student flow, changing direction of school buses. They have contacted us, and we have worked with them. I am asking the city to give us the same civility, courtesy, and inclusion for residents who are directly impacted by this change. There are many alternatives to sidewalks. Sidewalks may be an issue, but it's a bigger problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Our next speaker this evening is Andrew Boone.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. My name is Andrew Boone. I was surprised that we didn't have the public comment on non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. That's always been the case here in Menlo Park, and I think it's important because if someone comes to say something, they, if it's not at the beginning of the meeting, they don't know when it will be. It could be 7:00 PM, it could be 8:00 PM, it could be the very end of the meeting. Also, we've also, we've always had three minutes to speak, even to comment on individual items. That's another change that I noticed Liz Niss made last year in Palo Alto, cut all the comment period from three to two minutes. It's very hard to, for people to express what they wish in two minutes. If the city council meeting begins at 5:45 PM, I think three minutes is reasonable. I'm very encouraged to see that a study session has already been scheduled for the topic of establishing a minimum wage ordinance for May. So thank you, that's something, that will be the first public meeting on the minimum wage in Menlo Park ever, two and a half years after the city should have raised the minimum wage, along with Palo Alto, San Jose, most of Santa Clara County, and we're now following a whole bunch of cities in San Mateo County. So very glad to see that move forward. I hope that you would take seriously a discussion of raising the minimum wage to a number higher than $15 per hour. Just because every other city is doing $15 per hour doesn't mean Menlo Park also should the minimum wage in Mountain View and Sunnyvale is already $15 and 65 cents per hour. The other, one item that's, I, in my opinion, completely missing from the set of priority projects is bike lanes on El Camino Real. It's not there anywhere, Tier One, Two, or Three. Betsy Nash and Cecilia Taylor, you both stated when, in your campaigns for city council, you support that project. Mayor Mueller, you also stated support for it in 2016 when the discussion came up of should the city move ahead with a pilot project? You said then that the Oak Grove Bicycle Boulevard should move ahead. So we have three out of five council members, a majority, that support bike lanes on El Camino Real that should be discussed soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Linda Barman. I'm sorry, our next speaker this evening, sorry about that. I have, this is moving all over the place on me, but not going the direction I need it to go. Our next speaker this evening is Kristy Heaton.
Mayor Mueller, I apologize for interrupting, but we do have one more before Kristy.
No, she's spoken, actually.
Oh.
I believe. Did Ann, yeah, Ann spoke already? Yes. So Kristy.
So, good evening. I'm Kristy Heaton. I just finished my five years on Los Amigos School Board, and it's weird to be on this side of the dais, so. Thank you for putting the Sharon Road sidewalks on the priority list, and I'm here to encourage you to leave them there and get them done and talk to the residents more in the design process. But the safety of our children getting to school is of utmost priority. It's something we've been arguing for, for a very long time, and it's really nice to see that the money has been allocated and that we might be getting safer routes to school for our children. That stretch of road is a nightmare for kids to navigate, especially when the weather is horrible, because it's, there's a lot of mud and debris and stuff that gets in the sidewalks, along with people parking on the, on the street. So anything that can be done to make it safer for our students and get it allocated. I know as a school board that we got crossing guards a number of years ago because we were so concerned about the safety of our kids at those intersections, but Sharon Road can't be solved with crossing guards. We need to have a way for the kids to have a designated place to walk, because a lot of them walk to school in unprotected, you know, areas of that street. So I just wanted to add my appreciation for getting it on the priority list and do whatever I can to encourage you to continue to look at the safety on Sharon Road. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Heaton. Our next speaker this evening is Elise Stein. Elise, can you do me a favor? Can you pull that mic down a little bit? It's kind of up at people's eye line.
How's that?
Great.
So I'm Elise Stein, longtime resident of Menlo Park and also on the Library Foundation. I first want to say congratulations to Starla. We really welcome her as the city manager. So pleased to see you. So I wanted to say to you all, we see the Tier One priority for the Bellhaven Library and Tier Two for the main branch. We want to thank you for prioritizing that. I hope it keeps those priorities. We really appreciate that, and we think it is recognition of the importance of these initiatives to the community. So just calling your attention to it, hope it keeps its priorities, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. Our next speaker this evening is Linda Barman.
Hi, my name is Linda Barman. I live on the 2000 block of Sharon Road, and I am terrified of public speaking. I'm like shaking right now. This is one of the hardest things for me to do, but I'm here because of my daughter. This is Annika. She's nine years old, she loves animals, and if she was at Hogwarts, she would absolutely be a hot full puff. And she's starting fourth grade at Launtrada this August. A lot of people don't know Launtrada, although it's a middle school, it actually starts at fourth grade, so there's pretty small kids. My older daughter, who wants to speak a little bit later, is in seventh grade. I've been walking with her for three years, and it's a really scary stretch of road. We balance, there's one yard that has half a railroad tie, we kind of balance on it, like it's a balance beam. When there's puddles, or Thursday is trash day, there's no shoulder, we literally have to go out in the road. So you kind of stick out your head around the cars to see if there's traffic coming, and it's usually other stressed-out parents drive into school because they don't feel they're safe walking their kids two blocks. So I just want you to know, I know it's on the plan, and if there's, if you're ever thinking about delaying it, I just want you to know that this is the exact person. I told her, I'm like trying like cute and vulnerable when you're up here, but I urge you to do the right thing, help keep my kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barman. Our next speaker this evening is Nina Barman.
Hello there, my name is Nina Barman.
Pull it down, Nina. You got it.
And I am a seventh grader at Launtrada Middle School. I walk to school each day, and honestly, it's just kind of appalling, the state, there's puddles, cars park in the road, and often to navigate the road, you have to actually walk into the middle of the road and risk getting hit by cars. So this is why I am very grateful for the project to install the sidewalks on Sharon Road, and I'm glad to see that Menlo Park is a city looking towards the future and looking to care for its children. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Our next speaker this evening is Rich Ginn.
Good evening. I'm also here to speak in favor of the Sharon Road sidewalk. I just finished eight years on the governing board at Los Amigos, including two terms as president. And during that time, we did everything we could in terms of getting kids to school safely. We have very robust busing, get as many kids to school on the bus as we can, and then we also want kids to walk and bike to school, minimize traffic. There's a lot of traffic on Alameda, the more people we can get to walk or bike or ride the bus, the better. And as you've heard, the sidewalk on Sharon, or lack thereof, is preventing some people from walking. And there is a picture, hopefully you guys saw it in the paper, someone posted a picture of people walking to school when there had been some rain, and you could see puddles and people actually walking in the path of traffic to navigate the street. So again, just here in support of that project and hope to see it completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ginn. Our next speaker this evening is Neil Barman.
Hello. There's nothing I can say really that my wife and daughter didn't say more eloquently, but I'm a longtime citizen of Menlo Park on the 2000 block of Sharon, and I just want to thank you for prioritizing the Sharon Road sidewalks. I think it's really a dangerous situation, a dangerous situation right now, and I'd just like to encourage further dialogue. I think there are other things that could be improved in that general area. As one of the Sharon Road residents mentioned, I As one of the Sharon Road residents mentioned, I think the intersection there could be improved as well, but I really appreciate the council putting money towards this effort this year and the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barman. Our next speaker this evening is Karen Reese.
Good evening. I've lived at 2140 Sharon Road in Menlo Park for almost 40 years. For nearly all of those years I've been employed as a middle school teacher, my husband grew up and went to Los Amigos and La Entraada as well. So did our two children. An important part of the training in my profession is around the topic of student safety, so I was quite interested to learn about the proposal to install sidewalks in front of my home, as the reason given for the proposal was to improve student safety. My husband and I have never been made aware of any accidents involving students on Sharon Road on their way to or from La Entraada. If there is a specific historical data related to this, please share it with our neighborhood. During my teaching career, I've taught at several schools, none of which have had sidewalks in the residential areas around the schools. From what I understand, on a national level, there is no accident information available which would demonstrate any relationship between child safety in areas with sidewalks and areas without. On many occasions, I have certainly witnessed students horsing around on their way to or from school. On occasion, they may enter the roadway or emerge from behind a parked car. This is dangerous behavior, but it would occur regardless. When Menlo Park Councilman Ray Mueller stopped by our home to drum up support for the Sharon Walk Sidewalk Initiative, my sense was that he was quite surprised at how many neighbors were opposed to the project. Another important reason that they were opposed to this concept was the loss of street parking that would be inevitable. Parking on the street is already very impacted, especially when there is any kind of overflow from the school events. I bicycle to work regularly. I'm concerned that the proposed addition of sidewalks would make our road much less bike-friendly. I've read in the newspaper that the budget for this is close to $1 million. My husband and I are opposed to the concept of these sidewalks.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Our next speaker this evening is Ian Edwards.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was very pleased to hear about the plan to build sidewalks along the short stretch of Sharon Road between Alameda del Pugos and La Entraada. The street is very impacted with park traffic, and lots of schoolchildren who walk this route to school have to walk on the street. This street has also, over the past few years, become a major rat run between Alameda del Pugos and Sharon Road, and on top of that, there's always additional traffic from parents driving their children to school from further afield. It is a big worry for many parents with children who are going to be walking this route, that drivers trying to get to work, driving quickly past parked cars, may not see a child walking out into the street, as which I've noticed over the past couple of days observing it, they do every single day. So, thank you again for this plan. Do you want to say something? Nope. Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Adina Levin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Adina Levin, and I am going to be speaking, first of all, representing the Complete Streets Commission recommendations, and if I have enough time, I will move on to something I will say as an individual resident of Menlo Park. So, with regard to the parking and transportation demand management topics that are in the priorities, the parking garage topic has been reframed in the priorities as near-term parking strategies, a set of strategies, not only building a parking garage, but looking to manage our parking better in order to help people access downtown. The Complete Streets Commission, per that recommendation, this is a significant step in the right direction, but doesn't quite get all the way there. What we have been encouraging is moving towards not only parking strategies, but access strategies. We want to make it easier to get downtown, not only by driving and parking in a car, which is important, but also looking at walking and bicycling and including the transportation demand management, helping people get there by transit and carpool as well. So, that short-term strategies is a really terrific reframing, and we would love to see that to include broader access and not only think about access in terms of driving in a car. Quick question, we're not seeing great separation is clearly moving forward. Should that be on this list? Lastly, as an individual, the reach codes for the all-electric new building system are deferred to EQC, but I'm told by some allies on the EQC that there's a deadline this year for the city to join the regional initiative, and if the EQC so recommends, would recommend that council take that up in a timely manner so we can participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Pamela Dacus.
Good evening. I'm not Pamela Davis. She just got called into work, but since she had filled this form and she wanted her two minutes, she's already written a letter that she's not in favor of the sidewalk on Sharon Road, but she did say that she would like to add a very important point, which is that if we were to modify the sidewalks, that we should be open to consider burying the power lines, that they're very, very hazardous, they're very low on our street, and should we do so, it would open up more space for the pedestrians and the cars. So, while we're talking about all this, let's talk about things that are actually dangerous and hazardous, and as the school buses go by, it causes a lot of rumbling, and I think you must have seen that they're not organized. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is James Tulea.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm James Tulea. I live in Sunnyvale, part of the region. I'm the chairperson of Carbon Free Silicon Valley, and I wanted to ask that you make sure that, as Ms. Levin said, that the building reach codes are done in a timely manner, even though they're referred to the Environmental Quality Commission. I think they have to be approved by August or September at the very latest to be part of this cycle of reach codes, and reach codes are very important. It's -- I want to thank you that you've been a very active participant in Peninsula Clean Energy to get the clean electricity, but a critical next step to do something with that electricity is to make the buildings cleaner and reduce the carbon from buildings from natural gas. And the -- an important part of that is the new building cycle, and that building cycle only happens every three years, so reach codes happening this year by the end of the summer through council action is going to be very important to meet this timely need. There's already a partnership between Peninsula Clean Energy and my community choice energy agency, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, to work together on the reach codes. My own town in Sunnyvale is stepping up to make sure that they're going to be committing to pushing the reach codes ahead as part of that partnership of Peninsula Clean Energy and Silicon Valley Clean Energy to get that advanced, and we need other leading cities like Menlo Park to join that effort to make sure that it gets back to council in time so that we don't miss a three-year cycle. It's a very challenging step to get rid of natural gas in buildings, but we have an opportunity to do it. The Peninsula Clean Energy is going to help the city take this action. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker this evening is Angela Evans. Ms. Evans. Okay. She might be outside.
I'm sorry, I donated my minutes to that wall. They're not allowed.
We're not allowing that right now?
Sure. My name is Angela Evans. I work for the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to build and preserve more affordable housing. I think I was really excited to hear that you all are looking at parking lots, that you are really trying to figure out the downtown-specific plan, that it's coming up next month. We want to see higher density, we want to see changed height limits, and we really want to see more housing downtown near transit. I also want to say that I, you know, it was on your plan to prioritize tenant relocation assistance. We're going to be talking about that next on the agenda. So, we have been happy to see that you guys are really taking housing seriously, and we look forward to continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we are gonna -- we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine more speakers on this item. I'd like to just finish off public comment on this so people don't have to wait before we move on to the proclamations and the tenant relocation ordinance. That works for you guys? Yep. All right, so our next speaker is Pam Jones? Or Pamela Jones?
Good evening, council members and staff. I wanted to make some comments about the Bell Haven Branch Library. I appreciate that it has maintained its high priority, but the timeline is off. Logically, the only place to put the library is at the -- on Terminal Street, 100 and 1100 Terminal Street, and given that fact that we should be looking at parks and recreation, consolidating their program so that all of the services will be located in one place. That alone and rebuilding the senior center, Onetta Harris, the pool, the Bell Haven Youth Center, the Children's Center, that project probably would take a couple of years, so we need to start planning for that now. It's even more critical because we have three potential projects over in the M2 area that will bring in about 1,300 apartments and condominiums. We also have tied school. And for us to think in terms of, well, Facebook plans on having these services over in their facility, they're putting -- they're talking about 1,200 to 1,500 units, and there's also the additional units on Willow Road. So, I urge you to put together these projects so that we can move forward quickly and that we can provide services in Bell Haven that's needed for the residents there and the future residents that are moving in. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Kirk Conroy.
Kirk Conroy, 30-year resident. Thank you, Mayor Mueller, for your time and council members. I just wanted to talk about the two and a half acres that are at the end of Van Buren that's owned by the Ravenswood School District, which I understand cannot be built upon. It was the site of the previous Flood School, and I understand the city is having some discussions with the school district about the possibility of building housing for teachers there, which I greatly applaud, and also wanted to say, two and a half acres is a lot of land. If perhaps some of the land could also be put for the homeless and other service providers in the city, that would be great as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Fran Dean.
Good evening, and thank you, Fran Dean, Chamber of Commerce. We request that you prioritize the downtown parking solution, which is number 12 on your list, with an immediate emphasis on downtown parking relief while planning for a long-term solution, a potential structure, either standalone or mixed use. Why is parking a premium, and in particular, as on-street parking is being stripped away? Consider the following statistics. Plaza parking, spaces available, 1,197. Employee permits available, 685. That leaves available plaza parking, 512 spaces for additional employees, contractors, clients, and shoppers. Yes, you can add to the mix the street parking within the core, Menlo to Oak Grove, that's 314 spaces. Some of these have 15-minute limits, but we have over 500 business licenses issued within the downtown core and over 750 if you consider and expand to El Camino Real. If each business averaged two employees and one patron, or one patron and two employees, parking exceeds any acceptable thresholds that have been studied. Downtown businesses need patrons for survival. We encourage transportation alternatives. However, it's unrealistic to believe that a vibrant downtown business model can be supported by these statistics. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Mila Zelka.
Good evening, council. Mila Zelka with Palantir Technologies in Palo Alto, where we're a stakeholder in our local Palo Alto TMA. Thank you for considering accelerating an exploration of whether or not to create a Transportation Management Association, a TMA, for your city. As shared with you during your goal-setting discussion, there's a group of both public and private stakeholders from several cities who are launching talks within the subregion to identify shared interests related to completing networks, which encourage mode shift, to identify shared or overlapping data on commuter behavior, share best practices as each city explores creating or grows their respective TMAs, and four, consider how to potentially collaborate across city lines to leverage purchasing power for TMA efforts, be they administrative, data, or programmatic. We hope Menlo Park considers participating in these talks. In addition to hoping someone from this body participates in the talks, I encourage you to accelerate your exploration of creating a city TMA, as attention to first and last-mile challenges directly impact residents and commuters alike. While our local TMA still has much to do and accomplish, in our experience, there are interventions that could be considered with the city's information or records that it already has related to the location and density of employment centers. May we all address first- and last-mile challenges in our communities together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Jen Wollison.
Good evening, council. I first want to say that after listening to some of the comments, I want to put on the record that Sharon Road needs sidewalks, and I don't buy that a child-related collision is a necessary precondition to putting in a safe route. If we have a wait-to-fail approach with our infrastructure, that just seems like a really bad way to go about running our streets. So, safe routes are good. We need more of them. We need sidewalks everywhere, bike lanes, intersection improvements, traffic calming, but we have limited capacity. The way I think about it now, we've got a pie that's kind of little, and we're kind of fighting over a bunch of slices of pie with resources. So, what I want to propose is a bigger pie. We just need to expand the way we look at our resources, and I'm not necessarily talking about adding headcount. I'm talking about removing the barriers that we currently have in place to getting more done. We need to streamline our processes. We need to make them more accessible and transparent. We need an implementation schedule that the community can get around and know when help is coming. We need to create road standards and then follow through on them. We need to communicate to the community what our expectations are in terms of parking elimination, because in order to make safe routes a real reality, there is going to be parking elimination, and that just needs to become a community value and accepted. We need to set a clear tone so that when community outreach is done, people understand why we're doing the things we're doing. We need to stay the course and not cave to last-minute opposition or engage in kind of leapfrogging. We need to not get distracted. We need to know the opportunity costs involved in changing priorities and looking at new things, and we really need -- I know I said this wasn't about headcount, but we need to consider a dedicated CIP transportation engineer so that someone can really take the lead on staff of making sure that these eight-to-80 safe route bike-ped infrastructure things are done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wollison. Our next speaker this evening is Our next speaker this evening is Rachel Horst.
Hello. I just wanted to comment that I was heartened, as others were, to see downtown parking strategies and solutions, as discussed before, on the plan, which I think is great because we need to manage parking. And managing parking doesn't just mean, you know, paving and painting lines. And so, when I look at that, I just want to echo Adina's comments that, you know, thinking of it as access strategies and accepting that broader definition would be extremely helpful. Making it as evidence-based as possible would be extremely helpful because, you know, bike and pedestrian infrastructure and parking, it's all one ecosystem. And this might be one of our only opportunities with limited resources to look at that problem. So, I just want to echo those comments. On that note, I see that the parking structure or parking solutions has shown up multiple times here in different places, that the parking structure itself could be a capital improvement project, whereas the solutions can be discussed as a priority under a broader umbrella of parking solutions. And then, in the context of the downtown specific plan, the parking structure has come up before. So, a genuine question for clarification later is will there still be consideration of affordable housing on the parking, the place where the parking structures would be built? Because I've stood up here 800 times and said that, you know, we need to build on public land. That's the only opportunity to build affordable housing because land is so expensive. So, this is a major consideration. And again, it's one of our only opportunities to really look at putting affordable housing downtown. So I just want to clarify if it's still part of the picture. Thank you.
Thank you. We have five more public comments, and then we're going to go ahead and move. Just so folks know who are here, if you, what will happen is we have five more public comments on the CIP council goal-setting. After that, what we will be doing next is taking a break, moving to, actually, actually, we won't take a break. We're just going to move directly into proclamations. And then, from proclamations, we're going to move to public comment and the tenant relocation ordinance, because there's a tremendous amount of people for that. Our goal, my goal, our goal is to try to move everybody, let everybody get their comments in. And then, we have a lot of work to do for the rest of the evening that I'm sure will go on late into the evening. So folks are welcome to stay if they want to. But after this, after these next five public comment, we're going to move on to proclamations and then on to the tenant relocation ordinance issue so we can collect the public comment on that this evening. Our next speaker is Bill Barron.
I'm Bill Barron. I've been a resident of Menlo Park for a long time. Decades. Too many. I'd like to thank the council, all the council members, for their service. I'd like to bring up a topic which I brought up probably half a year or so ago at the city council meeting, and that has to do with the communications between the city and the citizenry. Citizen outreach and involvement is critical to our effective and efficient governance. A problem with our city government has been a lack of timely outreach to its citizenry so that the citizenry is able to give their input on proposed projects. While internet communications may speed the flow of information, the structure of the web can also obscure access to information. I'd like to suggest that the council consider establishing a communications monitor post as a 2019 top priority item. My thought is that the communications monitor would be responsible for establishing criteria for outreach and publicity, and then monitoring, project by project, staff and consultant follow-through in such outreach and publicity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker this evening is Ethan Edwards. Mr. Edwards. Okay. We're going to move on, but if anyone's outside, if you can check if there's Mr. Edwards. Oh, 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 sorry. Hi, Ethan.
My name is Ethan Edwards. I'm going to La Entraada next year. And then, I have seen Sharon Road a lot. Although it's not the busiest street I've seen, there are a lot of parked cars, which keeps drivers from seeing students. So, I, that makes it dangerous. And then, when, of course, the car is speeding along and then, and then the students coming out, that, that can, that can, that does not end up well. So, I think a sidewalk would make things a lot safer. And I'd also like to say that I also understand that this would also be, be, help to, this, the dis, help to, help to, help to the school district because it would stop kids from getting hurt so they'd have to spend less money on buying helpful products that are helpful to hurt kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Our next speaker this evening is Hillary Stevenson.
Good evening, council. You know what they say about following cute animals and cute children. I'm here to speak on the same issue as Mr. Edwards. And I don't think I could have said it too much better myself. I'm a parent of two seventh graders at La Entraada School. And I've worked with the district a lot over the past several years to identify ways to improve routes for pedestrians and cyclists to the school. The school's done a lot of work, including adding bus stops and a bike path. And we have personally showed up, the Barman family and I, to tape pedestrian flags, duct tape pedestrian flags to the nearby signposts so that the children can walk through the crosswalks without the help of a crossing guard. So, we've done our part. And I know that the district has been asking for several years now if the city could help out and program the, some sidewalks and safety measures into the CIP. So, I'm extremely grateful to see that you're in the process of doing that now. When my twins started out at La Entraada in fourth grade, they were alarmingly small compared to the traffic. And I tried to illustrate that in the images that I provided to you at your desks this evening. And now that they're seventh and eighth graders, they may be a little more boisterous, and some of the community members might have some concerns about that behavior in front of their house and how that relates to the need for sidewalks or other safety measures. But I hope you'll think of the entire La Entraada community, grades four through eight, and what the project means to all of them. And I also want to comment that even the county has begun working on this corridor relative to the Alameda. They convened a task force, Don Horstley and the Public Works Department convened a task force a year and a half ago. And so, it's great to see you joining into this effort. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Katie Beruzzi.
A lot of school board members are here tonight. Katie Beruzzi, quickly, first speaking for Complete Streets Commission. We just want to reaffirm that our priorities, that we're hoping council will continue to pay attention to include the Middle Avenue bike lanes in the corridor that goes all the way to Hillview to connect with the tunnel. The access points that Adina made so well earlier, and also, continued attention to the Safe Routes to School program. And that's where I want to segue into my own personal comments. I echo everything Jen Wollison said. I feel like we have a lot of places in our community, especially places where lots of children come together, where they're just, it's not safe enough. I mean, those sidewalks on Pierce Road right now that need to be added are also super critical and important. And I wish we could become a city that just decides for real that when we talk about complete streets, that's actually what we're doing. Of course, we need sidewalks. Like, it's crazy to me that somebody is arguing that we shouldn't have sidewalks because cars need someplace mid-block to turn around after they drop off their kid. There are other kids walking to school there. Of course, we need sidewalks. Absolutely. But I also want us, I'm so excited to see that the Sharon Road sidewalks are moving forward. I really am. I also want us, though, to commit to a really transparent process and a plan. I want to see the transportation master plan not just shelved somewhere, but I want to see the bike plan and the sidewalk updates plans and that, the pedestrian plan to be living documents that we commit to and think about and ship away at every year, that we have scheduled, you know, implementation processes for that. And I want to see the Safe Routes to School program blossoming so that we have a center in our city for people to come together and talk about these challenges and it doesn't feel quite so much, again, like neighborhoods kind of trying to grab their piece while they can. Because that's not how we should be. Like, we should be working on this together. And I just would love us to develop a culture in our city of safe routes and complete streets. And of course, our kids should be walking to school on sidewalks. That's what everybody should want. Of course, they should. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Pushpinder Alubana.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city council members. I'll keep this really short. I know it's, you know, already been a long segment. Thank you, first of all, for the hard work you're doing. You have a lot on your plate. I can only imagine, you know, how you're going to make these decisions. But as you review the 2019 priorities and make decisions, please keep a key concept in mind. Focus not as much on the return on investment, or the ROI, but the human return on investment, with an emphasis on the words "human" and "investment." So what that means is asking the question, which projects and community improvement activities will have the greatest impact on people's lives? And the lens you should use is human need. Human need has been very systematically documented for the residents of Bellhaven for decades. They vary from transportation and traffic nightmares to rising rents, displaced families, homelessness, abysmal quality of education for young children being offered to our students, broken sidewalks, you know, lack of bus shelters. Overall, any and everything. I think the themes today kind of cover everything that we don't have. The list goes on, and I think this is really not about telling you what you already know. You've heard these needs from us for decades. So, in your deliberation, go with human need. And where needs have been systematically neglected, overlooked, or ignored. What you get from a human ROI approach solving problems and meeting needs is that when you invest in improving people's lives, profits will follow. And you only have to drive over the bridge to see our city's greatest need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alubana. Okay, so what we're going to do now is, I don't, do we have any more public comment? Ms. Grove? So, to be clear, this is public comment on council goal-setting and priorities? Yes.
Karen Grove, longtime resident. I really appreciate following Pushpinder. I would like to offer a definition of equity that I think is much more pragmatic. What is racial equity? Racial equity is realized when race can no longer be used to predict life outcomes and outcomes for all groups are improved. I would love for our city to prioritize racial equity. It will be a way to determine where resources should go. It will help all groups. So, to Pushpinder's point. I want to also add that SPUR came out with a recent report that said, on the lack of affordable housing in the region. Since 2000, the Bay Area, if we wanted to not have a housing crisis, should have added 1.05 million housing units. Instead, we only produced 380,000. 316,000 were market rate, and 42,000 were subsidized affordable units. So that means we fell short by 700,000 housing units. And of that, 470,000 units that we fell short by are, should be affordable to people under 100% of area median income. So, I would also ask that in an effort to achieve racial equity and socioeconomic equity, that we prioritize affordable housing throughout the city, and especially to be compatible with our environmental goals, our climate goals, our Complete Streets goals, downtown near transit. To do that, we need to prioritize our public lands being made available for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grove. Our last speaker this evening on this topic will be Mr. Tom Cabot. And then, we're going to close public comment and then move the item.
Thank you, council member, council members and staff and mayor. I'm Tom Cabot, a member of the Environmental Quality Commission, but tonight just speaking as a 30-year resident of the city. I'm very happy to be here again to talk to you a little bit about the priorities and to take a look back, just, just a year and a half ago. The, in June 2017, the council adopted a resolution reaffirming the city of Menlo Park's commitment to combating climate change and supporting the Paris Agreement to implement plans aimed at keeping global temperature rise down to 1.5 degrees Celsius. And then, in October 2018, just a few months ago, the UN Science Panel, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, issued its chilling report called the Special Report on Global Warming of 1.5 Degrees Celsius. This report said we essentially have 12 years to get on top of this problem, or we've lost it. They say there are feedback loops that kick in that just, we will not be able to master. So, they alerted us that limiting global warming to 1.5 degrees C will require rapid, far-reaching, and unprecedented changes in all aspects of society. So, they've, they've said we have to change how we're doing the things we do, that our regular approaches just aren't going to be working for us. So, we've got to be thinking out of the box and trying some new things. Luckily for us, you guys have taken a number of great actions, like helping form Peninsula Clean Energy. That's bringing us the clean energy we have now. And now, PCE and the county are offering their help in doing a reach code to build, to build in new electric-friendly reach codes for new constructions that we can build without fossil gas. And so, if you can, can help the staff free up the time to take a look at that opportunity this year, it would be great for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we're, we've closing, we've closed public comment on item, I believe, item H1, 2019 City Policy, City Council Policy Priorities and Work Plan. We are going to be now moving away from that item. For folks who are here on that, since we, it's going to be a very long time, frankly, until we get to that again. It may be, could be close to two or three hours because we have quite a bit of public comment on the tenant relocation issue. And then, we're going to take that up, decide it, and then come back to the council goals and priorities thereafter. So, at this time, we're going to go ahead and move to item E on our agenda, which is presentations and proclamations. But while we do that, we'll go ahead and give everybody a few minutes, a few minutes, excuse me, to leave the council chambers if you're leaving. But when we do start to proceed, if you could please, just keep yourself quieted down so we can go ahead and start. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. So if everyone could go ahead and settle down, we're going to go ahead and move on to the proclamations portion of the evening. So, in every meeting at City Council, we try to take a moment at the start of the meeting, which is usually at 7:00, to take a moment and honor people in our community who have really contributed to making this place where we all live such a wonderful place to live. And in doing so, we want to honor and encourage that tradition, but also recognize people and so that those of us who come together can share in that community together. So this evening, we actually have six individuals that we're honoring with proclamations. We're going to honor them all together, all together, we'll read a proclamation for each, but it's, in every city, and I think we saw that, that's just what happened in the last public comment, we treasure so much our children, and we treasure so much trying to create a great educational environment for them, and there are people who step forward in the community to dedicate their time, their valuable time as volunteers to do that and to work with their school districts in order to achieve that. And so tonight, we're honoring the school board members who left public service last year. And so, we're going to bring them up, we're going to bring them up by school district and read the proclamations and then give them each a chance to speak. So, going by order of the agenda, our first, our first school district we're going to be working with this evening is Los Llamitas. So if Kristi and Rich could come on up. Who wants to go first?
[laughing]
All right, I'll go, Rich, go first.
No, please.
So, and I just want to say, on the City Council, we have enjoyed great relationships with our school districts, and I can say the same for both of these school trustees. Just incredible outreach, reaching out to the, to us as council members with insights of what's happening in the community, but also advocating on behalf of children what is in their best interest and pushing us as a council to do that, and sometimes when it's a little, might be a little uncomfortable. And it's really important to have that sort of dialogue and frankly, that sort of trust. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and we'll start with Rich. Do Kristi first? All right. Recognizing Kristi Heaton. Whereas Kristi Heaton was elected to the Los Llamitas Elementary School District Board in October 2013, and whereas Kristi Heaton, whose two children attended both schools in LLESD, served five years on the Los Llamitas Elementary School District Board, and whereas during her time on the board, Kristi Heaton brought a unique perspective to the board in that, in that was a, as a teacher and her teacher voice contributed greatly to important decisions, and whereas Kristi Heaton brought the experience and perspectives of working in another district for many years to the LLESD Board, and whereas Kristi Heaton supported bond measures as a community member and then as a board representative, which ultimately led to new buildings at both sites, and whereas, also involved in the equity work of the district, Kristi Heaton attended trainings alongside staff at the Museum of Tolerance, and whereas as a board member, Kristi approved the district's diversity statement and supported ongoing work around equity, understanding, and tolerance, and whereas Kristi Heaton was the liaison to the San Mateo County School Boards, where she performed this important work, important role admirally and efficiently, and whereas Kristi Heaton's sunny disposition and positive outlook were always apparent as she continuously advocated for students and staff, and I can attest to that, and whereas the community will continue to benefit for many years to come from Kristi Heaton's leadership and sound, solid decisions with her roots and her belief that students always come first. Now therefore be proclaimed that Ira Mueller, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, recognized Kristi Heaton on her contribution to the Los Llamitas Elementary School District Board from 2013 to 2018 and to the Menlo Park community. Ladies and gentlemen, give a round of applause. Kristi, you want to say a few words?
I didn't know I was supposed to say anything, but thank you to the community for your incredible support of our students, both just with your valuing of education, but also with your votes to pass bond measures and parcel taxes that allow us to provide our students with the best possible opportunities. It's been an honor and I look forward to many more years in the community of helping out. Thank you.
All right. Our next proclamation is for Rich Ginn. Whereas in December 2010, Rich Ginn was elected to the Los Llamitas Elementary School District Board, and whereas the father of two whose children attended both schools in LLESD, Rich Ginn served eight years on the Los Llamitas Elementary School District Board, holding the position of Board President twice, and whereas during his time on the board, Rich supported two bond measures to which his hands-on approach ensured their passage, and whereas Rich Ginn had a strong interest in the budget, which contributed to the board's decision to move forward with the Facilities Master Plan, and whereas Rich Ginn's insights, questions, and thoughtfulness were integral to the Facilities Master Plan, which ultimately led to the new buildings for teachers and students, and whereas Rich Ginn advocated for professional learning for staff and supported training at the Museum of Tolerance and equity work engaged by staff, and whereas Rich Ginn also approved the diversity statement voted on and passed by the board, and whereas during his tenure on the LLESD Board, Rich Ginn had run recurring theme, and that was always, again, putting students first, and whereas the Los Llamitas Elementary School Board administration, staff, and students are much richer for having had the experience of working with Rich Ginn. Now therefore be proclaimed that Ira Mueller, the Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, recognized Rich Ginn on his contribution to the Los Llamitas Elementary School District Board from 2010 to 2018 and to the Menlo Park community. Great. Thank you. I'll just echo Kristi's thanks to the community for all the support for the schools. It really takes everyone coming together to make our great schools as great as they are. So, thank you to all of you. And so, I'd like to do now, is we're going to take a quick picture with the council? You guys can come. Here? Yeah, right here. Real quick. Lisa, you want to come up? Why don't you get in the picture? Beautiful, thank you. Thank you. I love it. All right. That's a good segue. I love it. Let's do that the next time, too. All right, Teri and Joan, you want to go ahead and join us? So the next school district we're going to go ahead and honor is the Menlo Park City School District. So again, I know both of these ladies well. They have advocated ferociously on behalf of Menlo Park City School District students and frankly, for students throughout, throughout the city and region in their conversations. Just tremendous advocates and a high level of trust that I really, really tremendously appreciated during my time on council, so thank you. So, first, we will go ahead, based on the order you're standing. Recognizing Joan Lambert. Whereas Joan Lambert was elected to the Menlo Park City Elementary School District in 2010, serving as a board member for two terms over eight years, and whereas Joan Lambert brought education, leadership, experience from Seattle when she moved with her family to Menlo Park, as well as her legal background, which always made her an astute and thoughtful contributor to policy discussions, and whereas Joan Lambert had served on, has served on numerous committees, including the Finance and Audit Committee, the Negotiations Committee, the Policy Committee, as a founding board liaison to the Community Trust, and as a Menlo Park Atherton Education Foundation Board Member, and whereas Joan Lambert completed a Masters in Governance from the California School Boards Association, and whereas over the years Joan Lambert provided wise guidance to three district superintendents and served collegiately with numerous board colleagues, and whereas the district's Spanish immersion and world language programs owe their success to Joan Lambert's insightful leadership as she was instrumental in their design, and whereas Joan Lambert focused on what was best for children in the district as a whole throughout her time on the board. Now therefore be proclaimed that Ira Mueller, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, recognized Joan Lambert on her contribution to the Menlo Park City Elementary School District from 2010 to 2018 and to the Menlo Park community. Thank you.
I'll keep this really quick. I just want to also say thank you so much to our community. This is an amazing place to work and live, and just like both Rich and Kristi said, we could not have the schools that we have without the support of our whole community. And so I just wanted to thank everyone that's ever done anything for our schools, which is, I think, most of the people sitting in this room, like volunteering in classrooms, you know, voting to support our schools. I mean, there are just so many ways that our community helps, even, even people that aren't parents. So, thank you so much, and I really appreciate this recognition by the City Council.
Okay. Our next proclamation is recognizing Teri Tigerson. Did I correct the pronunciation? Tigerson? Tigerson. Whereas Teri Tigerson was elected to the Menlo Park City Elementary School District in 2000, retired in 2008, and returned in 2010 to serve eight more years, and whereas serving a total of 16 years, Teri Tigerson is one of the longest-serving board members in Menlo Park history, and whereas Teri Tigerson made significant contributions to the district's success as Board President and through her service on the Committees on Technology, Communications Advisory, Early Learning Education Advisory, Strategic Planning, Community Report, Long Range Financial Planning, District Negotiating, and Facility Planning. I have to, that's a lot. And whereas, Teri Tigerson also served as liaison to District Council, Menlo Park Atherton Education Foundation, City of Menlo Park, Town of Atherton, journalists, and other local board members and politicians, and whereas, as a fierce advocate for public schools, Teri Tigerson consistently led the board to take on major initiatives to improve the quality of education in the district and encouraged the public to commit its strong financial support towards that goal, and whereas Teri Tigerson also championed the creation of the district's first long-range facility master plan and helped create a framework for extended community governance, which continues to guide the district's decision-making. And whereas devoted to politics and public service, Teri Tigerson actively participated in her role as co-chair of Measure A Partial Tax in 1999-2000, the Steering Committees for the Measure AB Partial Tax in 2003, the Measure U Bond in 2006, Measure C Partial Tax in 2010, Measure W Bond in 2013, and Measure X Partial Tax in 2017, and whereas her many contributions as trustee to the Menlo Park City Elementary School District will have a lasting impact on the community, now therefore be proclaimed that Ira Mueller, the Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, recognized Teri Tigerson on her contribution to the Menlo Park, Menlo Park City Elementary School District Board for 16 years and to the Menlo Park community.
I'd like to echo Joan's comments about saying that, you know, the reason we have amazing public schools is because of the involvement and dedication of the entire community, and we couldn't have what we have without the community, and we won't continue to have what we have without the community. And, and I, I think it, you know, if we can't have great public schools here in Menlo Park, nobody can, and we have the power to do it. All we have to do is decide. The other thing I would like to say is I would like to thank Ray and, and all of our City Council members, current and past, for their increasing commitment to collaboration and partnership with our public school districts, because it is through working together that we could really accomplish more. So I really want to applaud and, and thank you for everything that you have done and everything that I know you will continue to do. So, thank you very much.
Okay, and now we're going to go ahead and move on to the Ravenswood School District. Is Ms. Knight here? Yeah, Ms. Knight, if you could, Dr. Knight? Actually, that's right, Dr. Knight, my apologies. And Marcelino, if you could join us? So, it's been my pleasure to get to know the members of the Ravenswood School Board and to support them and work with them. There, there have been many challenges and we have many things that we've, we've planned on working on together, and I've really enjoyed the partnership and getting to know your board and your superintendent, and I look forward to achieving great things in the future as well with you. So, we're going to go ahead and recognize Dr. Knight first. Whereas Dr. Charlie May Knight was elected to the Ravenswood School District Board of Trustees in 2014 as a board member for one term over four years, and whereas during her tenure, the district achieved many critical milestones that have placed the district on a path for long-term success, and whereas, under her leadership in the district, the district implemented the first K through eight makerspaces in San Mateo County, invested over $200,000 for the purchase of orchestra and band instruments, as well as preparing job descriptions for art and music teachers, and successfully exited a federal court order making Ravenswood School District the first school district in the nation to do so, founded the Ravenswood Middle School, successfully passed bonds that allowed the district to modernize facilities, implemented the district's fiscal reform package, which has provided the district with a stable financial foundation, and whereas Dr. Charlie May Knight's commitment to the students and to the greater Ravenswood community was a key component in the district's ability to put itself on a trajectory where students are now leaving the district prepared for success at the high school level. Now therefore be proclaimed that Ira Mueller, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, recognized Dr. Charlie May Knight on her contribution to the Ravenswood City School District Elementary School District Board from 2014 to 2018 and to the Menlo Park community. Dr. Knight?
Thank you. Let me preface my remarks with a thank you to the citizens of Menlo Park and East Palo Alto for your support over the years. East Palo Alto has grown because the two cities and school districts have worked together for the good of the students on this peninsula, and I want to thank all the citizens of Menlo Park and East Palo Alto and charge you to continue to support our children. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next proclamation this evening is recognizing Marcelina Lopez. Whereas Marcelina Lopez was elected to the Ravenswood School District Board of Trustees in 2002, serving as a board member for 16 years, and whereas during his tenure, the district achieved many critical milestones that have placed the district on a path for long-term success, and whereas, under his leadership, the Ravenswood School District implemented the first K through eight makerspaces in San Mateo County, invested over $200,000 for the purchase of orchestra and band instruments, as well as preparing job descriptions for art and music teachers, whereas successfully exited a federal court order making Ravenswood City School District the first school district in the nation to do so, founded the Ravenswood Middle School, successfully passed bonds that allowed the district to modernize facilities, and implemented the district's fiscal reform package, which has provided the district with a stable financial foundation, and whereas Marcelina Lopez's commitment to the students and to the greater Ravenswood committee was a key component to the district's ability to put itself on a trajectory where students are now leaving the district prepared for success at the high school level. Now therefore be proclaimed that Ira Mueller, Mayor of the City of Menlo Park, on behalf of the City Council, recognized Kristi Heaton on her contribution to the Menlo Park City of the City Council, recognized Marcelino Lopez on his contribution to the Ravenswood City School District City Elementary School District Board from 2002 to 2018 and to the Menlo Park community. Mr. Lopez.
It's a great place to be here. I'm very proud to be, to work for our kids. I know it's, it was a very hard process we had to go through because the, what we need to, to do is the consent. Again, that was one of the worst things ever happened to any district, but I think even though it was very costly, over $44 million, but I think our kids deserved that and more. So, everything we do for education for our kids is, is good for us, for everybody. So I'm glad that the city of Menlo Park is working with us. I mean, he went and offered themselves to help us, and I'm very proud of that. So, thank you. Thank you.
You want to come on up? Can I take a picture? We're going to bring up all the school board members real quick for one picture altogether, and we said you could join us. We got, we got to get in a little closer. So, so I apologize, everyone, but we, we need a restroom break. We got to snuggle up. So, we're going to break for, we're going to break for eight more. We'll break, we'll break, we'll try to start again at 7:55, okay? Thank you. Could please take your seats, and we'd like to go ahead and, and proceed. All right. So, I want to remind everyone, if you have public comments to make this evening, please fill out a comment card in the back of the room and provide them to Ms. Heron. So, we're going to go ahead, and again, just like last time, we're going to hold the public comment to two minutes per person. Time can't be donated from one person to another. And then, after public comment, we'll go ahead and proceed. So, we're going to move on to, right now, to item, excuse me, H2, is that right? No, H2. And we can go ahead and start. So, at this time, we're going to go ahead, and we have a staff presentation. Assistant City Attorney Kara Silver and interim Housing and Economic Development Manager Clay Curtin will make the presentation, and then we'll go ahead and take public comment. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Clay Curtin, City's interim Housing and Economic Development Manager. Tonight, we're going to quickly go over the background of the tenant relocation assistance issue that was studied at the study session about two weeks ago. In the past year, the Housing Commission spent approximately four months reviewing this item and developing its recommendation. On February 12, the City Council held a study session which included over two hours of public comment and nearly 50 public speakers. A variety of views were expressed by both council members and community members. The feedback we received, below is a list of, not an all-inclusive list, but gives an overview of the feedback. It included providing assistance only to those that are in most need. Landlords expressed concerns about impacts to the landlord-tenant relationship. We heard about how displacement causes homelessness and damages community continuity. We heard concern about rising rents and tenants' inability to pay. We heard from some that this, they were concerned that this was too similar to rent control. We heard that the city should share in the burden of the relocation assistance payments. We had both members of the public and council members ask for better data on the, you know, related to housing issues. We heard about the disparate impact that displacement has on minority populations, and a call for uniformity on policy regarding relocation assistance among cities. Real quick, we're going to highlight a couple of follow-up items where folks had asked for more information. One was on eviction data. State law masks certain data on unlawful detainer court filings in order to protect tenants and their credit history. A vast majority of cases are settled without trial, and settlements are rarely filed with the court. Most of the data that we referenced previously came from the San Mateo County eviction report that came out in 2016, and it included a small sample of Menlo Park-specific cases, which we were told about by, from Legal Aid. The eviction report contained 1,100 county-wide eviction notices for the year 2014-15. Seventy-five percent of those reported evictions were based on no cause evictions or because tenants could not afford to pay increasing rents. And over the past 32 months, we've had at least 20 no-fault eviction notices served in Menlo Park, according to Legal Aid. We heard a request for data about the vacancy rate in Menlo Park. Now granted, this is citywide data taken from the American Community Survey. These numbers are estimates, but it shows a homeowner vacancy rate of only 0.3% and a rental vacancy rate of 5.4%. As you can see, our rental vacancy rate appears to be higher than that of the county and the state. Next, we were asked for a comparison of rent increases. This chart on the right shows a snapshot of one-year point in time. This data was taken from rentcafe.com and shows that Menlo Park's rents increased more than any other city in San Mateo County, and is currently the highest in the entire Additionally, we were asked about the possibility of requiring longer notifications for significant rent increases or eviction. And the legal counsel has told me that state law prescribes noticing periods, and we are preempted from requiring anything other than what's in state law. At the study session, we received direction to return with two alternatives. One was the Redwood City model, and the other was going to be a modified version of the Housing Commission's draft ordinance. Tonight, we'll cover both of those and talk through the key provisions that include relocation triggers, the rental unit definition, eligible tenant definition, relocation assistance payment, and how those are calculated, and other provisions that are included in both. First off, the Redwood City model is mainly geared toward units that are withdrawn from the rental market. This is in accordance with the Ellis Act. It also covers units that are removed from residential housing use, and units that are undergoing a remodel, renovation, or rehabilitation that results in permanent tenant displacement. It also covers units that are being converted to condos, community apartments, or cooperatives. And it includes those that are, that are covered by a change in real property from residential to non-residential use. For the alternative B, the Menlo Park draft that's been modified by the working group, we've decided to split this into two triggers. One is the landlord-caused termination or the no-cause trigger. It has covered units when they are, when a landlord ends an eligible tenant's tenancy. It does not, it is not triggered by the following exceptions, which include failure to pay rent, breach of the rental agreement, continuing to commit or expressly permit a nuisance, or owner move-in. The Housing Commission felt strongly about including an owner-move-in exception to protect landlords. Should be noted that it previously included the natural lease expiration that is defined in our 12-month lease ordinance. The council members that we were working with have recommended removing that as per the Housing Commission recommendation. The second trigger is the significant rent increase trigger. This occurs, or triggers payments when all of the following occur, and that's defined as a tenant, when a tenant has rented the unit for 12 months or longer, and the rent increase proposed by the landlord is equal to the annual consumer price index plus 5% or more in a 12-month period. Again, that formula was based on state law, which governs price increases during declared states of emergency and natural disasters, and also the UC Berkeley-Turner Center definition of price gouging. The tenant, this also includes, the tenant would have, the tenant would have to move out because of the rent increase, and the tenant's household income would have to qualify at 100% or less of the area median income. This is, this is down from the previous recommendation. The rental unit definition in the Redwood City model covers properties with more than four units. It does not apply to single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, secondary dwelling units, mobile homes, et cetera, including onsite manager units and units where tenancy is a condition of employment. The Menlo Park draft, it still covers any housing unit in the city, including multifamily housing, condominiums, duplexes, single-family homes. Our draft does not apply to affordable housing units already rent-restricted. It does not apply to secondary dwelling units or owner-occupied, single-family homes where a room is rented to a third party. In defining the eligible tenant, Redwood City's model has a means test based on household incomes below 80% of the area median income, and does not include any length-of-tenancy requirement. The Menlo Park alternative calls for household incomes to qualify be below 100% of the area median income, and a length-of-tenancy requirement that the tenant would have lived in their unit more than 12 months. This chart kind of compares both the 80% and 100% AMI amounts for households of various sizes, and compares it to the original proposal of 150%. And then I just wanted to note that the Menlo Park median household income, according to the American Community Survey put out by the Census, places the median household income in Menlo Park at $139,833, which is higher than all of these proposals. For relocation assistance payments and how those are calculated, the Redwood City model calls for three months of fair-market rent and a 60-day rental subscription, as well as one additional month for special circumstance households. The second trigger, the significant rent increase, in this situation, the landlord would only pay one to two months of fair-market rent based on the length of tenancy, in addition to the 60-day rental subscription service. And through the creation of a community housing fund, the city would pay for the one additional month of fair-market rent for those special circumstance households and those tenants who have recited in their same unit for greater than five years. This slide compares the two payment calculations side by side. It shows that for a two-bedroom household example, alternative A, the Redwood City model, the landlord would be responsible for three to four months of fair-market rent. Under all, our alternative B, trigger one, which is landlord-caused termination trigger, the landlord would also equally be responsible for three to four months of fair-market rent, just like the Redwood City model. Or if the payments were triggered by trigger two, the significant rent increase trigger, this shows the sliding scale based on length of tenancy, where a tenant would receive one month of fair-market rent if they've only lived in the unit for 12 to 24 months. If they've lived in the unit for greater than 24 months, 25 months or greater, they would receive two months of fair-market rent, equal to about $5,600. And as shown here, the community fund would pay that additional one month of fair-market rent for those special circumstance households and those tenants who have recited in their same unit for greater than five years. The other provisions that we want to explain are the Redwood City model currently does not include an anti-retaliation provision, at least not initially. I hear they are looking to possibly revisit that. Their, their ordinance did not call for a separate provision for enforcement, since it's largely intended to be enforced through the building permit and entitlement process. One key thing about theirs, they require that the payment funds be deposited into an escrow account, and for the landlord to contract with a third-party relocation company. That's easy to do when you're removing your unit from the market and you're planning ahead for something like that. They call for administrative fees to cover their administrative costs, plus the landlord is required to cover the cost of the third-party relocation. And as shown here, the community fund would pay that additional one month of fair market rent for special circumstances or five years tenancy. So under trigger one, it's the same, three to four months. Under trigger two, one to two months, plus a possible one extra month for special circumstances. The other provisions that we want to explain are the, Redwood City model currently does not include an anti-retaliation provision, at least not initially. I hear they are looking to possibly revisit that. Their ordinance did not call for a separate provision for enforcement, since it's largely intended to be enforced through the building permit and entitlement process. One key thing about theirs, they require that the payment funds be deposited into an escrow account and for the landlord to contract with a third-party relocation company. That's easy to do when you're removing your unit from the market and you're planning ahead for something like that. They call for administrative fees to cover their administrative costs, plus the landlord is required to cover the cost of the third-party relocation agency. For the Menlo Park modified draft, we have included an anti-retaliation provision upfront. For enforcement, our ordinance provides tenants with a private cause of action and specifies that a landlord's failure to pay relocation benefits is an affirmative defense to eviction After review of the Redwood City model, we also would recommend including a provision that would authorize the city to recover administrative costs. This would cover the administrative costs only. It would not charge landlords for anything other than that. Our ordinance still also, as presented two weeks ago, provides for a hardship waiver. This waiver is intended to help those landlords that have a legitimate financial basis for being unable to pay relocation benefits. Our ordinance also still includes the sunset clause that would terminate the ordinance on October 1st, 2022, barring any other action from the council. So in reviewing the creation of a fund, the city council gave direction to look into this. The Housing Commission at various points in its review over the last several months also was interested in creation of a fund. So we would look for direction on what you feel the fund should cover. In the proposed draft, we have said that it would cover the special circumstance payments and also could be considered for payments in those cases where a landlord is granted the hardship waiver. In developing the criteria, the amount of seed funding that the fund could potentially start out with, and the process for administering the fund, we would recommend that this be referred to the Housing Commission for their review and input before city council's final approval of the fund. Another topic that came up last time we were here was the idea of a landlord-tenant mediation program or rent board. Previously, the Housing Commission discussed and debated this idea. They, they were provided information that led them to believe that mediation oftentimes creates unrealistic expectations on the part of the tenant and in the end, results in very little difference in the, in the final outcome. If the council wants to proceed with exploring this further, we would ask that the issue be referred back to the Housing Commission with that direction. And then also, as it was originally recommended from the Housing Commission, they called for this to be an urgency ordinance. That's a decision for the council, and urgency ordinance would require a four-fifths vote of the council. And an urgency ordinance that is approved on a four-fifths vote or greater can become effective immediately. Otherwise, we would introduce a concurrent ordinance that would go through the first reading, second reading, and 30-day implementation period, which is typical for most ordinances. So tonight, staff recommends that the city council consider for possible, possible adoption one of the two alternatives, or possibly a combination of provisions from both. Secondly, we would ask for a direction on the community fund usage and referral to the Housing Commission to develop criteria. And then finally, we'd ask that you provide direction on the establishment, establishment of a rent board or mediation program. We're available for questions.
I think we should probably hold questions and get to public comment. We have right now, I think, close to 50 public comments, and it may go longer based how the evening goes. So we're going to move to public comment now. Same, if you weren't here last time, same, same comment I would make to you all last time. Always never underestimate the power of a sincere heart, a sharp mind, and a kind voice. I realize that people are going to be passionate tonight. We're trying to take in the information that you give us, and it's a lot easier to follow it when everyone is, is acting in that manner. Second thing I would say is, in a, when there's an issue like this, people are going to be really excited and they're going to want to cheer for people. I'm going to ask that you not do that. So no cheering, no jeering, no clapping after people talk, no booing after people talk, no hissing. I mean, imagine all this stuff that you would expect. I'm just going to ask you, please, respectfully, when you come to that podium, it's your first, it's someone's First Amendment right. It's someone's First Amendment right to speak their piece. And so I would ask that you please allow them that right to do that in that moment and not make them feel uncomfortable or feel attacked, no matter who they are. And then the other thing that comes up from time to time is people will have questions and they might want to turn to a staff member or the city attorney. We're going to ask you, if you have a question, direct it to me. And then when we get done with all the questions, that's when I go and I ask staff to follow up on those questions. Just like last time, I promise you, I'll follow up on every one of your questions. If I miss one, it's not intentional, and you can go ahead and tell me I missed it, and then we'll ask it, okay? But with 50 people, we want to try to get through this as efficiently and expediently as possible. Finally, on the signs, because I see their signs tonight, perfectly acceptable to hold your signs. I'm going to ask you not to hold them up and wave them when people are talking. You don't want to block another person's view. You also don't want to intimidate someone when they're at the, at the podium, okay? So with that, we're going to go ahead and start public comment. Our first speaker this evening is, I'm sorry, it's so weird, when I push up, it goes down. Kirk Conroy.
Mayor Mueller, city council members, thank you again for your service to the community, the opportunity to address you today. Tonight, you have a unique and momentous opportunity in front of you to reach a compromise between the conflicting interests of property owners, tenants, local employers, and the legal interests representing them. Four variables differentiate Menlo Park from other municipalities that have faced the same questions you do. First, this city's council appreciates that if government removes the incentives to invest in rental property, that it will result in a shrinking rental housing stock and higher rents, as has happened in San Francisco and elsewhere. Second, the size of our renting community is relatively small compared to our city overall. Third, Menlo Park is blessed with a strong property tax base and highly educated citizens that have attracted successful employers. And fourth, at this unique time in history, local corporations, charitable organizations, nonprofit organizations, including housing builders, are working together in our community to address our city's growing housing needs. With these four variables, you have the option tonight of making whatever tenant relocation assistance you decide upon be 100% publicly funded, as public purposes should be. This will provide the incentive for the city to make such assistance merit-based, proportional, and affordable, while retaining incentives for new private construction. If you embrace this groundbreaking opportunity and demonstrate that it can work, Menlo Park will be lauded as both progressive and innovative in addressing the area's housing needs and may become the model for cities throughout the region, or possibly even the nation. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker this evening is Andrew Boon.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and city council members. My name is Andrew Boon. I lived on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto for eight years in a rent-controlled apartment. That's the only reason myself and my partner are able to stay in the area, and it's the same story for a lot of other people. Tenant relocation assistance is this tiny little help that people need to get by when they can't stay in their apartment anymore. They have to move. When you have to move suddenly and all the apartments cost at least $2,000, $3,000 a month, it's depending on your needs, if you are two people, a family, someone with a child. It's very, very burdensome. So thank you very much for bringing forth this discussion on a very contentious issue. Other cities have passed such tenant relocations and the sky has not fallen down. Like Redwood City, permits for constructing big new apartment buildings still keep on coming. So this myth, like if landlords have to pay a tiny, tiny bit out of their giant bank accounts, that apartments aren't going to be built anymore in the future, is just false. Your decision tonight and ongoing is what details of a tenant relocation ordinance should you include? And I would encourage you to include the more generous benefits, the higher amounts, the higher amount for your income. And also, I find it a little curious that Palo Alto's ordinance wasn't among those being considered for a model. Maybe it was a terrible one, but your next-door neighbor just went through this entire discussion just a few months ago. Thank you very much, and I hope very much you do pass an ordinance and that you would consider in the future rent control, because that is another successful policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next speaker this evening is Paula Mcello. And I apologize if I pronounce your name wrong, Paula.
Good evening. What distinguishes Menlo Park from other nearby small cities is the relative number of small owners providing housing. 4,600 rental units out of approximately 5,300. The eviction data on record, measured against the number of rental units in Menlo Park, does not support the need for a TRA ordinance, and certainly not one enacted as an emergency measure. Requiring the payment of thousands of dollars in tenant relocation costs is an unfair, unreasonable penalty to owners. If you take control away from owners, then their ability to end a problem tenancy, if they choose, and they do exist, or put a family member or caretaker in their own property without having to pay thousands of dollars, will have negative consequences for both tenants and owners. Studies have indicated this, as was discussed February 12th. Property owners and tenants are not all the same, and any rules and regulations should always take this into account. In my view, both proposed TRA ordinances are bad policy and do not factor in the myriad needs of owners and tenants. As elected officials, you're the ones accountable for new regulation and, and not the, not the, not by empowering unelected, anti-owner commissioners to do your work. I, I urge you to reject both of these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, I'm going to ask a question, and if anyone objects, I won't do it, but because we have 50 speakers and the hour's going to get late, does anyone object to us making it a minute and 30 seconds? That's fine. That's fair. I just wanted to see if everyone could agree. We'll keep it at two. No. So our next speaker this evening, and folks, we value, we value your, we value your comments. That was, we're just, we value what you have to say. I wanted to see if there was agreement on that, because I also know that you all want to actually watch us make a decision this evening, and I can guarantee our discussion's going to take some time this evening. Our next speaker this evening is going to be Nick Newman.
Hi, Mayor, councilmen, women. I stand firmly against the bill being a brand-new, the bleeding edge of the youth that are going to be taking over these buildings, mostly in financial straits, coming forward with the management and inevitable upkeep of these buildings. But I just wanted to say, I have a quote from a famous president, "Government is like fire. It will keep you warm at night, but there is, if there's too much, everything around you will burn to the ground." Teddy Roosevelt. California is one of the most legally protective states in terms of tenants' rights protections within the United States. Now, there's lots of people here tonight telling you that they feel that they want a bit more fire, because they're feeling a bit cold or because they like to see a bonfire. There's a lot of people here telling you tonight that there's not much firewood left to burn, and the last thing for, for you to burn is us, the people who run buildings and try to take care of people as best we can. The only other thing we have left is our right, and there's very few of it left. These people I speak of, I'm speaking on behalf of them because I've walked many miles in their shoes. The vast amount of the area's buildings are very old. Over two-thirds of them are over 60 years old or more. There's massive work that needs to be done on them, and they have massive monetary investment that is not seeable by those that rent. Sorry, I'm very nervous about public speaking.
Don't worry, you'll be fine.
Many of these protections for tenants requires to protect themselves from, protect them from their selves required by law. This doesn't always make us friends, but I just wanted to leave a last minute, the road to hell is paved in great intentions.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Diane Dittmer.
Hi, I am a 30-year resident of Menlo Park, and I have a little bit of a unique perspective because I'm also a homeless advocate, and I've worked to house homeless households with landlords throughout San Mateo County. I also work for a nonprofit affordable housing developer and spend my days trying to build housing on the peninsula for low-income and homeless folks in this area. And I'm a landlord in Menlo Park. I applaud the steps the council's taken so far to address the housing crisis in Menlo Park, and I'm here to support alternative A. It provides more housing security for our most vulnerable residents and maintains what works well. I think that you may have heard the term naturally occurring affordable housing in terms of duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. Most of that in our city is owned by local residents who deeply care about their tenants, and I'm one of them. And they often do what they always do, which is not raise rents a lot and help their tenants to stay long-term. And alternative A provides them to keep doing that without getting into a rental hole where they can't make up increases. In addition, alternative A also allows a lease to naturally expire. And I know that when I was trying to house homeless folks throughout the county, every single landlord asked me, "What do I do if it doesn't work out?" And they needed something that ended, or they wouldn't have offered housing to our most vulnerable residents. And I think that we would end up seeing a lot of residents displaced if we couldn't offer a natural lease end. So I encourage you to support alternative A, and thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Jackie Newton, and I'm a primary care doctor for the homeless. I'm also a resident of San Mateo County, and as a doctor, I see every day how homelessness harms people's health. There are many different reasons why people become homeless, and I want to bring to light the people who we often don't think about, honest, working, everyday people who just can't afford to live here anymore. Last week, I met a patient who was in her late 60s, and she came to me because she was first-time homeless. She was a grandmother and had worked hard as a librarian for 30 years, and she retired but had been struggling to make ends meet because her rent was very expensive. And then she got evicted for no reason, couldn't afford a new place, and just like that, she became homeless. So she came to me crying, severely depressed, and I was completely shocked to learn that this grandmother had started doing sex work to try to afford a few hotel nights. She said to me very clearly, "I'm depressed because I have nowhere to live, and I'm scared, and I want to give up." I couldn't magically give her housing in my 20-minute visit, and so I only ended up scratching the surface of treating depression. And, you know, I, so that visit, I also ended up treating her for chlamydia, and I'm honestly holding my breath. holding my breath to see what she's going to come in with next. So as a physician, I really see the downstream effects of homelessness, and I think that is completely unacceptable for the elderly and other fragile people to lose their housing. We have a responsibility to make policies that protect these most vulnerable people. The housing crisis is the number-one threat to people's health and costs the entire system. We must do all that we can to prevent homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Ernesto Reyes.
Good evening, City Council members. I sent you a letter this afternoon. Hopefully, you got it. I don't want to go through throughout the letter, but I just want to read a little portion. After 9/11, we have seen how the economy has been deteriorating through people losing their jobs, home, the high cost of living, et cetera, et cetera. Say that we are getting into a great world recession on which I don't know how that will affect us in the near future. Therefore, I'm in favor of the tenant protection or tenant relocation assistance, City Council. My job is, I'm an architectural designer, and I have my office here in the border between Palo Alto, East Palo Alto, and Bellhaven. And the reason why I decide to be there is because I want to help the community, especially the most needed. For some reason, I'm there, but I decided to stay there and help the community. And the job that I do is I do a lot of accessory dwelling units, secondary dwelling units, in helping the people who they've been living in a legal way in the garage conversions, in the illegal between East Palo Alto and Bellhaven. Now, all of this, with Facebook and all the other big companies are here, people are looking at East Palo Alto and Bellhaven. Say that it's amazing how people, there are some landlords that they have like a five, six, seven properties, and they want to do remodel, addition, ADU conversions, and that kind of stuff, which is nothing wrong with that, but looking for a really good economy to go out and increase the prices on the real estate and the rental. Therefore, I really going, I would like to go for the City Council to shoot both yes on the relocation, tenant protection. So that's all I want to say, and we'll keep in touch. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Mike Haddock. And our speaker after Mr. Haddock will be Nicole Evans, if you want to get ready to come up.
Mayor, Councilmembers, mom-and-pop housing providers are adamantly opposed to A, B, and any alternative choice proposed tonight. In the absence of any credible supporting data, pushing these harsh measures is unreasonable. Harsh measures would only hurt our housing supply. Out of 5,420 housing units, only 20 sought counseling for nonrenewal of a lease over a 32-month period. If all 20 units were displaced, that would be a teeny 0.003% of all Menlo Park rental units. That is 3,000ths of 1%, not much to work on. Mom-and-pops offer 80% of this city's rental stock. It is already a struggle to provide housing and earn a slim 1% if we're lucky return with today's costs. Either of these alternatives would be bad housing policy. Throwing one's life work into Menlo Park housing would be a risk not worth taking. Units would be taken off the market. Investment capital is very mobile. It goes where it is treated best and welcomed. There is no compelling data to support either alternatives A or B. Please do not accept the idea Menlo Park must choose only one or the other choice. San Mateo City Council acknowledged dangers of private right of action. They directed staff to eliminate any mention of it. Private right of action is wrong for Menlo Park, too. It would be a field day for nuisance lawsuits designed to invite litigation. Council, do not believe the rhetoric. Look at the facts. Rise above the political pressure. Please permanently shelve both measures. Stick to the facts. Neither is warranted for Menlo Park. Neither's right for Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Our next speaker is Nicole Evans, and after Nicole will be Justin Alley. Justin, if you could please get ready.
So I only lived in Menlo Park for a few months, and my rent at the time was 1,600 for one bedroom in a house, and that's kind of below market rate, but at the time, it was more than half of my take-home pay. So I moved to the city of San Jose after a few months and commute a longer distance And so I'd like to urge the City Council to consider as much tenant protections as possible, and it sounds like Alternative B has, covers more houses overall. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Justin Alley, and after Justin will be Brian Ponti.
I'm Justin Alley, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of One San Mateo, a local community group that seeks to advance just, equitable, and across-the-board housing solutions. I commend you for taking up the very important subject of how to provide greater stability and protection for renters. As you deliberate on these matters, I would encourage you for a moment to step back and take a higher-level bird's-eye view of the situation. We must always remember that a just society depends upon a broad cross-section of rights. America at its best has been about developing and embedding those rights into who we are. We have been on a long quest of, in the words of the late Stanford philosopher Richard Rorty, achieving our country. As you all know from a shared knowledge of the history of our country, at one time or another, not all people have been afforded their just rights. In the beginning, only white property-owning males had full enfranchisement, but over time, through much struggle, this country has moved toward the expansion of rights to ever-greater multitudes. First came universal white male suffrage, then emancipation of slaves, then women's suffrage, then civil rights, then, most recently, certain LGBTQ rights. Quality shelter which a person can call their own is a basic human necessity. As such, every person has the right to be free from having a home unreasonably stripped or barred from them. As has been mentioned by others earlier, more and more cities and localities are coming to recognize that due consideration to the rights of renters is essential to a balanced housing system. History teaches us that when not all people's rights are recognized, this leads to great injustice. Few could argue that our current housing system is fair to tenants. Many are severely rent-burdened. Some have been gouged by repeated exorbitant rent increases, evictions completely upending people's lives. So I have to say, though, I'm filled with hope that you're taking up this important subject, and I think that, you know, we can move towards becoming a better society.
Thank you, Justin. Our next speaker this evening is Brian Ponti, and after Brian will be Susan Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and members of the City Council. I urge you to approve Alternative A this evening as it strikes a fair balance between the needs of tenants and those of residential housing providers. It is important, when dealing with challenging public policy issues, to forge compromises and meet the needs of all stakeholders, and I'm convinced that Alternative A does just that. From a very practical and long-term perspective, Alternative A also ensures that those providing places to live are not punished and accordingly are not incentivized to leave the business, as many in Mountain View are doing. And I sent you an article from the San Jose Mercury that spoke to the issue that is taking place in Mountain View, where I think they're now approaching up to 200 low-income housing units have been lost since rent control was imposed in that community. Alternative A is also needs-based and provides much-needed protections for the most vulnerable in this community. I thank you for your time this evening and ask that you adopt Alternative A to preserve low-income housing in this community and protect small property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Lewis, and after Ms. Lewis will be James Purvis. And if I pronounced it James, I'm sorry. Susan.
Yes. Mayor, Councilmembers, oppose Alternative B. It is bad news. Sadly, it's counterproductive political ideology. Now, these bad ideas were seldom rejected as No Own Proposition 10 just this past fall. In that same election, some on tonight's council earned their seats. Congratulations. If the votes for our council members count, then No Own 10 counts. Respect the voters. Responsible housing providers know that Alternative B is rent control. Under B, we would quickly lose at least one-third of our precious housing stock. Mom-and-pops would be forced to operate a financial loss. Housing would disappear from Menlo Park. We cannot bear the loss of 1,800 rental units. What's the plan to replace those rental units? Alternative B means loss of housing. Mom-and-pops are in the business precisely because they are not rich. They work all their lives to pay for a modest piece of property. Small housing providers barely make 1% return. Most individual providers have low-to-modern incomes themselves. For the mom-and-pops, their properties are their life's work. Their income supports their families. B removes that. B means loss of financial independence. Mom-and-pops simply cannot pay burdensome relocation penalties. For that funding, please look to our community-minded large employers and public funds that are already earmarked for affordable housing, Measure K and Props 1 and 2. The voters have already approved these expenditures. Consider that many of our elderly are one medical crisis away from needing to rent out their homes. They are counting on future rentals to pay for medical care or for their assisted living. Alternative B takes away a safety net for our seniors. Oppose Alternative B. It is bad housing policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is James. James, you want to help me with your last name?
Purvis.
Purvis. Oh, you know what? This happened last time. I didn't, I'm looking like a V. Okay. And after James will be Carol Collins. Thanks, James.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mueller, City Councilmembers. My name is James Purvis. I'm here representing the owners of the Anton Menlo Apartments located on Haven Avenue. We submitted a more detailed letter yesterday, so I would urge the council to consider that letter. I won't repeat the contents here, but in short, Anton Menlo is strongly opposed to Alternative B, to the extent it would require all landlords to provide relocation assistance for rent increases, regardless of whether or not those units are exempt from rent control under the State Costa-Hawkins Act. This provision would effectively seek to impose rent control indirectly, where the city cannot otherwise impose it directly. We believe it would be preempted by state law and illegal. While we appreciate that the Housing Commission and staff has attempted to narrow the proposed ordinance to address impacts in certain neighborhoods, the ordinance is drafted would substantially limit the ability of all landlords to establish rental rates with no carve-out for units that are exempt under Costa-Hawkins. We've, in the letter, pointed out there are other cities in the Bay Area that have included carve-outs and similar tenant relocation ordinances. The city of San Leandro is one example of that, and we would urge the City Council to the extent it's considering Alternative B to do just that here. And as I said at the beginning, we submitted a letter, urged the council to consider that, and we appreciate the opportunity to provide these further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Carol Collins, and after Carol will be Caitlin Marianacci.
Hello, Councilmembers. I am Carol Collins. As I stated when I went to the Housing Commission meeting in the summer, I can support general relocation assistance for those in need when a unit is taken off the market or, you know, redeveloped. My husband and I are mom-and-pop housing providers, invested solely in Menlo Park. I clear sink traps. I paint inside and out. I wash windows for all my tenants, you know, not all the time, but this is how I make a living. In adopting Option B, you're requiring me to possibly subsidize my clients through rent control, and in definitely extending our contracts at my client's will. I, however, would not have those options for the contract, you know, ending when I wanted. Therefore, I strongly encourage you to consider Option A as the better choice. Option B has too many potential pitfalls, the biggest being maybe a legal challenge and the cost of administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Caitlin Marianacci, and after Caitlin is Meg McGraw Sher.
So I grew up here in Menlo Park, and I currently live here, but I only can live here because I live with my parents because I can't afford it any other way. And I feel very lucky to even have that option. I know that's not an option for a lot of people who live here, and so many people have had to move away because they can't afford it here. So we need more protections for tenants and strong protections, and I think Alternative B will help tenants the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Meg McGraw Sher, and after Meg will be Miki Winkler.
Hi, City Council. Thank you so much again for bringing this ordinance up for consideration. As you know, I'm the chair of the Menlo Park Housing Commission, but I'm here to just share my thoughts on ordinance. As I've said before, and I'm saying this for everybody, I want people to understand that the Housing Commission took a ton of time really thinking carefully about the different aspects of the ordinance and what we thought was most critical. We all, I think all of us, really wanted to do more. We really wanted to do something that would help everybody in our community because I think it is important that we are there for those that are vulnerable. And so we tried to come up with something that seemed to do that, but also that was fair. And that's why we spent so much time working on it, and that's why we had two community meetings over in Bellhaven and then in central Menlo Park. So just the background on that, some of the specifics, I beg you to please consider this an urgency ordinance. I know that the only way that that can happen is if four of you vote for that. I don't know if that's likely or not. I hope so. I think it's imperative that we don't even consider Option A. We only look at Option B. I think we have to, we have to keep in consideration the rent gouging, and it is legally, not legally, I'm sorry, it is considered rent gouging when you increase rents over the course of a year by CPI plus 5%. So we're not talking about most landlords. We're talking about bad actors, and we're talking about trying to help the most vulnerable and trying to prevent homelessness. I think it's critical we include, continue to include, single-family homes in this. That's most of the area in Bellhaven. If we don't include that, the ordinance is meaningless, so please don't remove that. I like the idea of the Community Relocation Fund. I appreciate the idea. However, you know, I don't like that the language doesn't guarantee access, and I don't like the idea of targeting Measure A and K funds for that. That's for new housing. I don't want public funds to be subsidizing landlords for getting rent increases. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Folks, I know it's going to be a long time listening to people. I'm going to ask if you want to have a conversation with someone, even if it's just whispering, please go out, please go out in the hall. Last time, during the last comment, I heard multiple people talking. I'm not trying to figure out who, and I understand why you would want to, given the length of time, but I'm really going to ask you, please, if you could go outside and if you have a conversation with someone, we really would appreciate it. Next speaker is Miki Winkler, and after Miki is Mike Dunham.
I've known several people who have forced to move from our area because the cost of living for everyone, even for homeowners, goes relentlessly up. Considering the ordinances before you, Option B has three egregious problems. As you have heard, it has the potential to exacerbate the housing shortage, which is at the root of our rental problem. Two, the cost of administering the ordinance may exceed the benefits to at-risk renters, no matter who pays for it. This is bad fiscal policy. And three, it tempts landlords, and this is important, to raise rents to the highest allowable amount in order to pay for the Ordinance B program and to offset the possible costs allowable amount in order to pay for the Ordinance B program and to offset the possible costs that may arbitrarily occur in the future. Option A is clean, clear-cut, and just, and no matter our sympathies, Option B just defies common sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winkler. Our next speaker this evening is Mike Dunham, and after Mike will be Rupa Narasimha. Mike?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Dunham. I'm a member of a group called Housing for All Burlingame that advocates for affordable housing and renter protections in our city, but I stand here in solidarity with all the residents and community groups in Menlo Park that are looking for similar protections. I want to respond to a few of the comments that have been made so far. I strongly support Alternative B, and I think it actually addresses many of the concerns that have been raised so far. So one, one of the landlords raised the possibility of problem tenants and being stuck with them forever. I'll point out that there is a residency requirement of twelve months or longer in Alternative B. So if there is a problem tenant, you have a year to figure it out. Two, if a tenant is a nuisance or pronits a nuisance under Alternative B, you can still evict them for cause and not have to pay relocation assistance. So that objection, I don't think holds water. Second, someone raised private right-of-action in San Mateo. They actually did not remove that. That was incorrect, what was stated before. It's been referred to a further study session. So I wouldn't say there's precedent to remove private right-of-action. Three, a couple of people have claimed that the Alternative B is rent control. Obviously, it is not. Landlords can still raise rents up to CPI plus five percent, which is seven to nine percent a year, given typical inflation. That's a tremendous rent increase, and if you can't make your buildings work after owning it for a while with making seven percent raises, rent increases a year, maybe this is the wrong business for you. Third, people brought up Costa Hawkins and how it does not allow rent control on single-family homes. I think one thing that has happened since 1995, when that law has passed, is that a huge proportion of the rental stock is now single-family homes. It is essential that you cover it. Alternative B does that, and I strongly encourage you to pass it without modification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Our next speaker, and folks, I started to hear some clapping. Please, no clapping. Next speaker is Rupa Narasimha.
Narasimha.
Thank you. And after Rupa will be Jeff Deng.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Rupa Narasimha, and I'm a proud American citizen and a renter. I'm here to do the right thing by me, which means to pass Option B. My story started many years ago when I came to this country as a single mother with two small children. During the last fourteen years, I have moved four times, not because of any other reason, but the fact that my landlord raised the rent, and with a single paycheck, I could not pay to live in that place. Two weeks' notice is all they give you, to gather your children, your belongings, and move out of your home, your safe place and sanctuary. You could get lucky if your landlord decided to give back fifty percent of your deposit, and boom, there goes your life. Another new cycle to deal with, a very difficult place to find, again, deposit, rent, six to twelve months, and you move again. Your children get displaced, and move after move exhausts them mentally, physically, and emotionally. Unjustified rent increase tears away at the very fabric of humanity. That is why my son hates change. He tries to keep one thing constant, and that is his bed, his study table, and his chest of drawers. I work hard, I'm educated, and I try my best to provide for my children as any other parent will do. But living here has become impossible for a middle-income family with a single income. The very fabric of this beautiful Menlo Park community is being shredded to pieces. Please pass Option B. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Deng, and after Jeff will be David Tuzman.
Hey, good evening. I'm a homeowner at Menlo Park. Before I can afford my own place, I have been rented for many, many years and moved many times. So I know moving is not ideal, but it's part of our life for most of us. And I think when I was a renter, I felt like when the rent is too high, I had many options. For example, I can move to a smaller place, I can share the place with other peoples, I can move to older buildings. But after I became a homeowner, I realized I have so much higher risks and liabilities. For example, if I don't pay my mortgage, I would lose my home. If I don't pay the property tax, if I don't pay the insurance, there are so many risks that I have to deal with. Another example is what if there's an earthquake? So I realized, actually, as a homeowner or as a landlord, there actually has a much higher risk compared to renters. So I think, I believe, landlord, especially the mom-and-pop landlords, need more protection than most of the renters, namely realizing the rent to pay their mortgage, their property tax, maybe they have kids' tuitions, maybe need to prepare for their retirement. But why does the audience just assume this mom-and-pop landlord would have the money to pay for the renter to move? It's three months or more, and a two-month of agency service fee. It's a lot of money. But why does the audience assume it's the landlord's responsibility if the renter cannot afford the market rent? Why is it not the responsibility of the city, of the county, of the government? I think it's very unfair. I urge the council to reject these unfair protections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deng. Folks, we've been going for an hour on this item, so in about ten minutes, I'm going to close off comment cards. If you attend to speak tonight and you have not filled a comment card, I'm going to ask you to please fill it out now and bring it to Ms. Heron. Next speaker on this item is David Tuzman, and after Mr. Tuzman will be Aina Gru.
Hello, council members. My name is David Tuzman. I'm a five-year resident of Menlo Park. I'm a renter with a great landlord. Because of my income level, I will not be covered by either proposed ordinance. Regardless, I strongly urge the council to pass the Housing Commission's Option B recommendation. It is a win for social equity and will help our city maintain the cultural and socioeconomic diversity that sets us apart from some of our neighbors in the peninsula. Last year, I was glad to see the city council quickly and enthusiastically approve the Guild Theater renovation to become a live entertainment venue. I attended the planning meeting here in April, where then Commissioner Chair Combs voted to approve the recommendation. I heard council members Carlton and Mueller give public comments, speaking as fans of live music, who were excited to bring a venue to the peninsula where residents could enjoy music and dancing. I made a public comment, too, speaking as a fan of live music. I live right across the street from Ravenswood, so it'd be a short walk for me to go to the shows at the new theater. But I wonder about the folks who will staff the new guild. Bartenders, techs, custodians will be the backbone of the operation. Will they be able to afford to live in Menlo Park? Could they afford a nine percent rent increase? Could they afford to find the new place with first and last month's rent and security deposit? Or will they just live somewhere else and commute in, adding traffic and gas emissions or maybe live on the street? But when I made the public comment at the Planning Commission last year, I also spoke as a musician and someone who saw a potential for the theater to become a hub for a local music and arts community. Willie Nelson playing an intimate show could be a rare treat, but I imagine most of the music events will be aimed to be booked with local acts, visual artists and musicians from the community. But none of that is possible if we don't foster an inclusive community, one that's accessible to a diversity of income levels. This ordinance will help keep lower-income families in the neighborhood. They are an important fabric of the town as any other member of the community. Please vote to approve Housing Commission's Recommendation B. It was designed for Menlo Park and is the plan that will work for Menlo Park. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Folks, a comment card is a card in the back of the room. You can find them on the table, in case you're not aware what I was speaking about. Next speaker this evening is Aina Gru. After Aina will be Jalissa Moreno.
Good evening, council. My name is Aina Gru, and I'm a current sophomore in high school at Oxford Day Academy. I'm here to urge you to vote yes on the Housing Commission's advised ordinance to protect residents of the community, because my close family has experienced rent increase, which has resulted in my grandparents moving two hours away from me, and also my cousins moving one hour away from me, when they used to be one house away from me. When I need family support, I have no close family to go. Homelessness and rent increase also affects youth completely. My close cousins have been moving house to house, and their parents have been working early mornings and late nights. This led to my cousin losing a full ride scholarship to a good high school where he was playing football, and now he goes to Menlo Atherton, and he's failing his classes, and he rarely goes to school. I've lost a lot of close friends who were strong empowering individuals because they had to move due to rent increase. I don't see them involved in their community anymore. I have done research on homeless youth, and two-hundred-and-six students are experiencing homelessness at Bellhaven Elementary School. To prevent and lower this number of students experiencing homelessness, you can start by voting yes tonight, and please consider Option B. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jalissa Moreno, and after Jalissa will be Kenya Nohar.
Good evening. My name is Jalissa, and I'm a sophomore at Menlo Atherton. I am here because I would like you to vote yes on the Housing Commission's recommended ordinance to protect the greatest number of residents and keep our community intact. A lot of my family has had to deal with displacement. A lot of them have had to move far away that it even affected their kid's education by having to move schools. Displacement, it doesn't only affect adults, but it also affects youth and their education. You can help us make a change by voting yes tonight. Please consider Option B. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenya Nohar, and after that will be Ophelia Bello.
Good evening. I'm a longtime resident of Menlo Park. I've lived there for about fifteen years now. I'm here tonight to urge you to say yes to the Tenant Relocation Assistant Ordinance, preferably Option B. If we don't address the homelessness issue in our county or even displacement in our own communities, we will see an increase in homelessness, and we have seen that through the data that has been provided. I ask that you keep in mind families and youth who are being displaced by richer people who have assets to move if they wanted to. They have a home to live in currently, and they own these properties. So these are families that are very vulnerable. They have nowhere to go, they don't own property. And I think the solution to this crisis is to pass this Relocation Assistant Ordinance, and please keep Option B as your consideration tonight, and also keep vulnerable families that you serve in mind while doing these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ophelia Bello, and after that will be Mark Molno.
Good evening, council. My name is Ophelia Bello. I'm a lifelong resident of East Palo Alto and currently the new director of Youth United for Community Action, a local nonprofit youth-led organization in East Palo Alto. Before joining UCA recently, I was employed as a long-range housing planner with the Regional Planning Agency, ABAG, and MTC, where I spent a long time taking inventory of housing policies throughout the Bay Area, aimed at supporting the expansion of housing, securing funding for housing development, preserving housing, and protecting both vulnerable tenants and rental units. I say this to impress on you that with the expertise and research I gathered during my tenure at MTC, it is my personal assessment that what you have before you in the form of Alternative B is not only great policy, but will help you maintain the vibrancy of your community, of our community. It will also make Menlo Park one of the leaders in the region, who is actually being responsive to their needs of their community, while taking into account the potential hardships that responsible landlords might face. The need for tenant protection policies is not going anywhere. It truly isn't. From the regional initiatives that include a number of tenant protection policies, to Governor Newsom's recent recognition that tenant protections is a key element to addressing the housing crisis, the movement is only gaining steam and validation. I ask that you own this opportunity and do right by over forty percent of your constituents. We, as a community, have a lot to lose, but Menlo Park also potentially has a lot to gain. Please vote yes on the Housing Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Molno, and then after that will be Karen Grove.
Hi there. I'd like to take a moment to talk about how this issue fits into the greater scheme of the housing crisis in the area. We're looking at an area in which land values have increased dramatically over a period of time. And what happens when land values increase? It matters who you are. If you're someone who owns land, you're protected. And not only you're protected, you also get a windfall. You end up getting more money than you expect. If you're a landlord, you end up being able to charge higher rents. If you're a homeowner, you have home equity. If you're landless, if you're merely a renter in the area, you don't get anything. In fact, your entire stability is threatened. And I think it's obvious that this discrepancy between two classes of residents, who are both people in our community, needs to be rebalanced by the people who administer our housing policy. And I think that this measure does a small, small amount to begin to redress this gigantic imbalance between the landed and the landless here. And that's a moral argument about, you know, why this is fair. As far as production goes, everything said about the fact this will disincentivize apartment building is not really... The way to incentivize apartment building is to allow for it, zone for it, create policies that actually incent it, such as not holding land vacant and underused, not to squeeze your tenants. This entire relocation plan, I'm not exactly happy that there's so many means testing. I think it could be a lot more powerful and universal, but it is better than nothing, and Option B is the better of both of them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Grove, and after Karen is Julian Cortella.
Hi, I'm Karen Grove. I am a member of the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking for myself. And I want to echo what Meg said about the really, really intense and high level of responsibility that we all felt about this ordinance. We heard five hours of public comment at the two meetings, plus at every Housing Commission meeting, we heard a lot of... I'm sure it was seven hours in total. Staff worked really hard, and we all did, too. So we started with the Redwood City ordinance, and then we made it into a Menlo Park ordinance. So I urge you to adopt Option B. I really appreciate the work that Cecilia and Betsy did with separating the two triggers. I think that's really smart. I like the Housing Community Housing Fund to address the tenants' need, having done that for the rent increase. And I'm going to offer you something, because I think there's a lot of opposition to including the twelve-month lease natural expiration as a trigger. If you take that out... There's a desire to remove the natural expiration of a twelve-month lease. If you take that out, then you should also take out the minimum residency requirement. So I would rather it stay in, but if you take it out, please, you must remove the twelve-month minimum residency requirement. And the other thing I would say is I'm very disappointed that the means test was reduced to a hundred percent of area median income. That excludes our teachers, our public service workers, accountants. I mean, there are a whole bunch of professions who make more than a hundred percent of area median income. It should be where we set it, which was a hundred and fifty percent or two-hundred percent or no means test, but at least a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Our next speaker is Julian Cortella, and after that will be Keith Ogden.
Thank you for your time. I just want to also express my support for Option B. It is already a compromise, and I am neither a renter nor a landlord. I am a homeowner in Menlo Park for, I've been here now sixteen years, and I just want to express this as a question of what kind of community do we want? Do we want a community where only the wealthy can afford it? Or do we want a community that includes the backbone of the people who provide the structured support for this community? If you are a responsible landlord, this measure does not affect you. You are still allowed to raise your rent. You are still allowed to evict people for cause. It is a compromise already, and I just want to express and reiterate the support that others have already given for Measure or Option B. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Uh, last call on cards, folks. So, uh, at the, after the next two speakers, we're going to close off cards for the evening. Mr. Ogden.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Um, my name is Keith Ogden. I'm a housing attorney with Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. Thank you for all your work and dedicated time to this matter. Every day at Clespa, we, uh, meet with families and individuals fighting to remain part of the fabric of their communities. We urge Council to pass alternative B tonight as an important step towards preventing homelessness and mitigating the most severe impacts caused by displacement. Alternative B offers anti-poverty and displacement mitigation protections that are meaningful and reasonable, including relocation assistance in cases of landlord-caused evictions. Relocation assistance payment of three months fair market rent is narrowly tailored to help displaced family cover first and last month's rent and security deposit. As such, it would increase a family's chance to successfully transition to new housing and the ability to stay in the area. Um, by contrast, alternative A contains significant loopholes. A landlord can wait until the end of a fixed-term lease or impose a significant rent increase in order to evict a tenant without being subject to tenant relocation payments. After Redwood City's ordinance went into effect, a landlord, um, who had previously undertaken substantial renovations on some units, uh, went ahead and issued rent increases of over 100% as part of the offer of a one-year lease. Uh, this enables the landlord to essentially evict by rent increase without triggering, triggering relocation assistance, highlights the risks of unintended consequences of, uh, option A. Of course, most landlords don't act in this way. Two weeks ago, many landlords here noted that they don't increase rent more than CPI plus 5%, and those landlords would not be required to provide any relocation assistance when increasing rent under alternative B. Alternative B, in fact, should be passed precisely because it provides assistance to lower-income tenants in those rare cases where landlords impose significant rent increases. It plugs loopholes. While displacement continues to negatively and disproportionately impact low-income people and people of color, jurisdictions around the Bay Area are taking important steps towards meaningful tenant protections. We urge you to lean into this historic opportunity and pass option B. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Our next speaker is Jonathan Erwin Frank, and after that will be Vanessa Honey.
Hi, and thank you. Um, I work with Keith at Community Legal Services in East Palo Alto. And, um, I want to explain to you briefly why, um, I'm, I'm quite confident that this is both, um, not rent control and would withstand any legal challenge. The state law at issue, Costa Hawkins, establishes that a landlord has a right to establish initial and subsequent rents. It doesn't use the term rent control, and it's really is a narrowly defined right in that sense. So what this does, um, I'm sorry. I also wanted to make clear that there is no written law and no appellate court that has decided that an ordinance like option B would violate state law. Um, what we do have is, um, the most relevant decisions talk about the idea that if an ordinance imposes a prohibitive price, um, and what that means is if the cost is, is so great, um, that a landlord effectively wouldn't be able to exercise that right, wouldn't be able to, um, set the rent at the level that they would like to, um, then that ordinance would violate state law. Um, I think has, many other folks have spoken to, this is a narrowly tailored law, and by definition, um, a landlord would make up that relocation cost by renting out, um, their apartment, um, to a new tenant at market rate for three months. Um, another important point I want to make with regard to the, uh, to that is that the ordinance by, um, by including the hardship exemption actually ensures that it can't impose a prohibitive price, right? It says that if there's a so great a financial burden, um, then the landlord has the option where they would not have to pay. Um, and so...
Thank, thank you, Mr. Frank. Our next speaker this evening is Vanessa Honey, and then after that will be Sandra Zamora.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Honey. I am a resident of Mountain View, California. And by disclosure, I am also on the Mountain View Rental Housing Committee and have been for two years. I am here tonight, however, as a property management professional for a small mom-and-pop owner in Menlo Park. And I would like to recommend that the city council consider the Redwood City ordinance as it is triggered by the owner's removal, remodel, or condo conversion rather than by rent increases over the CPI plus 4%. That is only benefits tenants with income up to 80% of the area median income rather than up to 150% of AMI, and that it only appears to properties, only applies to properties with more than four units rather than all the way down to single-family residences. I would, um, urge you to consider... Excuse me. I can't read my own writing. Creating a fund to pay for some or all of the parts of the ordinance that would come from city revenues, county funds, corporate sponsors, and charitable sponsors, and the possible creation of a landlord-tenant median program. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Sandra Zamora, and after Sandra will be Pamela Jones.
Hello. Good evening, uh, mayor and city council members. Today I'm here to tell you that you have received enough evidence and data for you to pass and say yes on the proposal that the Housing Commission proposed back a few months. Uh, they did their research. They had a lot of meetings. They held a lot of meetings with Menlo Park residents, and they provided you all the information that you need, that support the need of passing this relocation assistance ordinance. This is not rent control by no means. This is just a, a very small help that landlords would be responsible for, for incrementing their rents extremely high, as I have experienced in the past. I had an $800 increase back in May, and now I'm just hoping that I don't get that increase again this coming May, which is only two months from now. I think you also should focus on attracting investors that are willing to invest in affordable housing, like Mid-Penn, and not just any, any company that is coming to Menlo Park and suck our blood. Um, I feel like this is part of your job to make sure there is affordable housing for everyone in Menlo Park, and not just to leave everything on the landlord's back. Yes, it is a responsibility for carrying on on these expenses that they put us because they want to fill their pockets with more money than necessary. But also, it's your job to spend the $11 million that you guys have right now for affordable housing. So I urgently, um, I think it's urgent that you pass this law and that you pass it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zamora. Our next speaker this evening is Pam Jones, and after Pam will be Rachel Horst. Ms. Jones, here she comes.
Good evening again, and thank you for bringing forth the tenant relocation ordinances, alternative A and B. It's clear a lot of work went into doing this. My name is Pamela Jones. I've been fortunate enough to live in the Bell Haven neighborhood of Menlo Park for 45 years. I also have rental property in the, in the Flood Triangle. I was talking to one of the responsible providers, and I was saying to them this evening that I miss the children. I miss the children that used to run up and down the street screaming and hollering and making much too much noise and getting on my nerves. I miss the children that were riding their bicycles and their tricycles in the middle of the street. On my block, they're gone. Those are the, that's the statistics, the data that is not provided for you. How do you capture that? Those are the people that live in the Bell Haven neighborhood, which probably has closer to 70% rentals in the single-family homes. And we don't know who owns those homes, but, um, it certainly has changed since the time that I've lived there. We have a problem in Menlo Park. This is the opportunity for us to fix that, part of that problem by preventing route, um, price gouging. If they do choose to gouge their residents, then they're at least going to have to help them so that they have money enough to pay for another place. We need alternative B. We need as much teeth as we can get. I don't believe that the majority of the landlords that are here, that are speaking out, that they're the ones that, that are causing the problem, at least I, what I find in my community, because they sound like good compassionate people. I also want to acknowledge, change is scary because oftentimes we don't have all the information to understand the issue. So if I hadn't been doing a deep read in this, I might be afraid of it too. So I urge you to, um, pass, um, alternative B. And I also would like for you to look at the below-market housing guidelines and look to see if we have annual reports. I can't find annual reports, and I wonder if that's part of the angst with the BMRs.
Thank you. Rachel Horst, and after Ms. Horst, Jennifer Lu.
Good evening again. Um, I moved to Menlo Park, uh, in the last few years, as some of you probably know. And in the relatively short time that I've been here, you know, I've, I've seen changes. And I'm not bringing up my personal situation for any other reason except to make the point that, having been a part of other communities and having grown up in a very different community, I do have some perspective. And to the extent that I've had the privilege to live in different communities, including this one. In, in 2019, I, I look at my residence in Menlo Park, and I don't feel particularly thrilled to be part of a community that is losing people and that seems to be losing touch with reality because we failed to recognize what inequity looks like in our own city limits. I feel implicated, and I've spoken several times about the details of this ordinance. I'm a member of the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking as an individual. And I just can't get past the fact that this is a modest proposal to deal with a massive problem, which staff has tried to show us with the available data. We know why there's a dearth of data. It's because it's on people that are experiencing a lot of instability in their lives, and they do not have the upper hand in this transactional relationship. So it's very common not to have the proper data to show the extent of the problem. But yet, we're still talking about what seem to be largely unfounded fears. And, you know, this is a complete insanity of a market that we live with, and we just accept that as a reality. Could we really break that market with this ordinance? And I ask you to just look at the real risk and the real costs of doing nothing and watching our community continue to pay as they already are. Uh, please consider alternative B. It's measured approach. It safeguards its nuances that the Housing Commission and council members and staff have diligently worked so hard to hone. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Lu, and after Jennifer will be Tom Thompson.
What do we do when there is a food shortage? Give farmers more incentive to produce more food? That's no-brainer. Now we have a housing shortage. What are we doing here in this meeting? We are squeezing the housing providers so that they are too scared to provide more housing. With the housing shortage, we need to provide a housing-friendly policies to encourage people to provide more housing. We need to give incentives to people to build and to rent. However, we are doing exactly the opposite. San Francisco have strict rent control for 40 years, and guess what? It has the highest rent among the whole nation. There are over 30,000 vacant units because landlords do not dare to rent them out. The rental policy is terrible. Do we want to follow the footsteps of San Francisco? Please make the right decision to encourage more housing, reject any policy that discourages housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Thompson, and after Tom will be Kelsey Baines.
Honorable mayor and city council, I want to tell you about a real-life example why rent control and just cause eviction are bad policy. A boy named Jose grew up across the street from my rental duplex. He became a Norteno street gang leader. Violent crime, brash intimidation, and drug deals became daily commonplace. I bought and installed video cameras to protect my tenants. Not cheap. Jose committed a double-attempted murder a block away. He shot a rival gang member four times, then emptied the gun on the fellow's girlfriend as she ran for her life. Both victims survived. My videos caught Jose coming home a few minutes later, blowing his alibi and proving he was there. Jose and his lawyer tried to intimidate me and my tenants by subpoenaing my video equipment while making it known they knew where I live. I considered a concealed gun permit. I was soon on a first-name basis with the gang task force district attorney and detectives. Owning real rental property is no picnic. I convinced my neighboring housing provider Jose's family had to move. Very reluctantly, they moved, just in time. Both victims developed cold feet from fear for themselves and their family's lives. Both attempted murder victims refused to testify, and Jose was released a free man. With just cause eviction or rent control, Jose's family would have never had to move. Norteno gang members would have been back across the street from my tenants every day. Violent crime, intimidation, and daily drug deals would have returned. This is just one real-life example of why rent and just cause eviction are really bad ideas. Please don't take Menlo Park there. Both A and B are expensive, wrong, and dangerous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kelsey Baines, and after Kelsey will be Adina Levin.
Uh, good evening. My name is Kelsey Baines. I am a psychologist at the Palo Alto VA and work at the Menlo Park campus, uh, where I serve homeless and previously homeless veterans. Uh, and I'm here tonight representing myself. Uh, I urge you to support option B, which is a modest renter protection which serves to prevent homelessness and would remind the council that many voices who haven't been protected by an ordinance like this and have already lost their homes do not get their voices heard tonight. And these are real people to me. Um, I know their names, and they have families and hopes and dreams. And, um, unfortunately, they don't have the same power in our society as, uh, the landlords and realtors and developers who have the money and the time to be able to influence, um, you. Uh, so, uh, one kind of just observation is, as a direct care provider, I find landlords co-opting the provider language to be distasteful. Um, and being a provider is fundamentally about helping people. And the good news for responsible housing providers is that this ordinance will not impact you. If you're not price gouging your renters and you're not kicking them out of their homes for no reason, this ordinance will not impact you at all. Um, so I encourage the council to support option B as a compromise. Um, I'm disappointed that you're means testing this at all. Income is not indicative of financial status. People have medical bills. People have, uh, student loans. Um, ideally, this would be a universal policy. Uh, if it can't be universal, uh, I would encourage you to go with the higher AMI. Um, this is the highest rent in the county, and AMI is calculated by the county. So if you want to protect the most renters, you should go with all housing types as high as you can agree upon to go for the AMI. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adina Levin, and after Adina will be Nevada Merriman.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Adina Levin, uh, Menlo Park resident and a member of Menlo together. Um, so there were a couple of things from today's city council agenda that I found really moving, and one... And one was the proclamations for the people who have really contributed so much to our school system, including the leaders in the Ravenswood School District. In the Ravenswood School District, I read in the paper that there's a, I think it was a 40% rate of student homelessness or severe housing instability, like sleeping on couches. What can an educator do when the students do not have a safe and stable place to live? That is a really impossible burden on a school system and an impossible burden on the student. Like, how can you possibly learn as a kid in that situation? The other was the physician who told a story about the senior citizen who was pushed into homelessness by a rent increase that she was unable to pay. I see that as part of the priorities. One of the things that I think we're looking to take on is something about homelessness and chronic homelessness, but chronic homelessness starts with losing a home for the first time. And this measure before you will prevent people from becoming homeless. Therefore, I encourage you to adopt this and to adopt the stronger version B that has been really vetted by the Housing Commission. And I do, several people had mentioned that, no, this doesn't solve the housing crisis. We need more housing and housing at all income levels. I completely agree with that. But if we're trying to prevent homelessness, which is the severest presentation and the severest experience of the housing crisis, please do approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to close cards at this time, Ms. Aaron. Nevada Merriman's our next speaker, and after that will be, it just says, "Housing Provider." So if you filled out your card, "Housing Provider," you're next. But when you come up, we really need you to state your name. Go ahead, Ms. Merriman.
Hi, I'm Nevada Merriman. I'm Vice Chair of the Housing Commission, and you also know me through my work at Mid-Penn Housing, but I'm speaking today as an individual. I wanted to support, lend my support to option B and thank councilmembers Taylor and Nash for their work on this. It's my personal preference to see that the means testing be increased to 120% of median because that really is how the industry thinks about the missing middle, is looking to really capture that moderate income component. So in order to do that, you need to move it up to at least 120% of median. And then, I've heard so many things here that I can kind of run counterpoint on, but I just wanted to leave you with two points. One of them is, in my day job, I sift through all sorts of records related to property. And you can't take away the history that property rights has been used to further discrimination in this country, and especially here. So while I am, I'm very sensitive to the legal implications that are presented in option B, and, you know, you need only look at the covenants that exclude people of color from owning in different parts of this county, in different neighborhoods, to see that the laws over time sometimes are proven to be unjust and just wrong. And then lastly, because this has been going on for a long time, I felt it was an urgency ordinance last summer, that it's something we really needed to do soon. I still feel that way. And while listening to NPR coverage of Martin Luther King Day, I was reminded that 50 years ago, every single politician was blatantly anti-poverty, and that I would really like to see that the politicians in our city are also anti-poverty and can do something to alleviate the condition of homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is "Housing Provider." Okay. We're going to pass on "Housing Provider." Next speaker is Munir Vora, and after that will be Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember and Councilwoman. I'm surprised, and I bring different perspective. Last meeting, I brought a perspective of open economy versus socialist economy. I, myself, is a software engineer, and we work hard. This is dangerous, let me tell you. There is a housing problem. No one disagrees. This area has a housing problem we all have gone through. I came to this country with $20, so I understand what it takes to be a tenant. The problem is not landlord, problem is not tenant. The problem is caused by something else. The problem is caused by the employers who are employing from 3,000 to 35,000 employees in 10 years. Those are the root cause. Focus on solving the problem, not suppressing one of the, not hurting the, creating basically a situation which could hurt the, simulate the problem further. You're trying to solve the housing problem, not hurt the housing. Understand, this is one aspect which I'm trying to bring up. There are landlords and there are tenants, but there are other people who own the house in this community. They are not landlords. What have they got done wrong? What about their house pricing? Understand, when there is a rent control word to any city, investors move away. Prices do get capped out, they do go down. People who are not renting, they've not done anything wrong. Their retirement relies on this housing price. Also, another thing which is happening in current economy is the opportunity zone. This rent, this job control and the tax new law, 2017, has defined opportunity zones surrounding our neighborhood. Bellhaven, where my house is, Bellhaven was not part of opportunity zone or a low-income housing. What will happen? The investment will go to those opportunity zone. Investors are not coming here, and now we are adding fuel to it. I understand, we have to solve the problem. The better way, if I do choose between A or B, oh, sorry, option one or two, I would say A, but please be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes, and after Jordan's Grimes is Piyush.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jonathan Swift. I'm here in favor of the modest proposal. Sorry, I'm kidding, I'm Jordan Grimes. I'm a lifelong resident of San Mateo County, a leading member of Peninsula Yimby, or Yes in My Backyard, and I'm here in strong support of relocation assistance option B. So I'd like to bring up a few things that I think are important for you to consider tonight. First, and I really want to push back on this one, is this myth that has been presented that new supply and supply alone will solve this crisis. I don't think you'll find a single person in this room tonight who would argue that more housing units aren't needed, least of all me. Increasing our housing stock, changing zoning codes, making it easier to build in exclusionary areas are all very necessary, are all very necessary, are things I support. However, none of these things address the immediate need of tenants, which is an end to the astronomical rent increases many have experienced over the last several years. Option B is integral to deterring landlords who might think about engaging in these practices and is essential to ensuring renters aren't left with nothing if they choose to do so anyway. Next, I want to mention the fear that many tenants experience when considering speaking up around these issues, which Vice Mayor Taylor touched upon previously. Some have questioned whether these increases are actually happening and why more tenants aren't speaking up. In that vein, I think it's too important to note that most of San Mateo County is essentially the Wild West for renters. Landlords can kick tenants out at virtually any time for virtually any reason. Knowing that, I hope all of you will take a minute to imagine whether you'd be willing to share your negative experience in front of a room of people who might very literally control whether or not you have a roof over your head to come home to at night. Lastly, I just want to embrace the ethos of realizing that what we have always done is not enough, that we can and must do better. And in my mind, option B is the only way forward. It's one small step to protect the most vulnerable among us, and I urge you to support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Our next speaker is, it just says, "Piyush." And after that, it will be Julie Shanson.
Hi, my name is Piyush. I do have a last name, it's Gupta, but people have trouble, so I don't put it down often. I'm a retiree, and I co-own a home in Bellhaven, which is why I'm here today. I'm a first-generation immigrant, so I've had the opportunity to live under two economic systems, to experience two economic systems. One of them is the relative free-market one that we are in, and the other was a more managed And my experience in the managed economy has been, even though the public policy decisions were well-intentioned, often they resulted in negating the reason they were, the public policy was enacted. With respect to homelessness and poverty, for instance, under the managed economy, the poverty and homelessness I've seen, there's very few people in this room who would have seen it. And I'll tell you, those homeless would love to live like the homeless that live here. Having said so, you know, I'm not saying we need to look towards that as the model, but there are two learnings I have had. One is, you should intervene in the free market if it is absolutely necessary, if it's an emergency. And here, 20 evictions in the last three years doesn't seem to be that emergency. Second, there are unintended consequences. Here, the unintended consequences that are likely are a reduction in housing. But the second, even for owners, a reduction in their value, neither of those two are desirable. So whether you're a landlord or a homeowner, neither is desirable. So I would suggest you consider not intervening. So reject both the options in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julie Shanson. After Julie will be Angie Evans. I kind of feel like the room is starting to feel like they need to root for people, guys. No, please, no rooting for people. We really just need to get through public comment.
So I didn't realize I was right after Julie Shanson. Julie asked me to say that she supported alternative B. So I had a whole written statement. I'll just go into my comments so that we can save a little bit of time. So I had a whole written comment, and I was like, oh, we're talking about policy. I work for the Housing Leadership Council, policy, policy, policy. The thing is, I go on Facebook. You guys probably all go on Facebook too, right? Don't respond. I'm in, like, 18 mom Facebook groups. One of them, this month, I have seen three posts from single moms who are on the verge of homelessness, who cannot afford the rents here, who are doing anything they can, asking for RVs to borrow, asking for money to help pay their rent so that they can keep their kids in their schools. And those are the, like, that's the reason that I am, I lost my voice this weekend because I won't stop talking about this, and HLC is not going to stop talking about this. I'm going to grab this poster we have in my one minute, and I'll just talk really loud. So. The Housing Leadership Council is really supportive of this policy and really supportive of option B because it covers the greatest number of homes. If you do option A, sure, you can cover 2,353 homes potentially, if all of those homes income qualify. But do you want to pass a policy that'll just do okay, or do you want to pass a policy that is comprehensive? So that was my first statement. My other statement is, we keep walking around talking to people. None of the people in this room signed our pledge. None of the people who spoke tonight signed our pledge. But somehow, very easily, we got 50 people just to sign this giant pledge that they support tenant relocation assistance. Now, I hope that all of you will do the same. I hope, actually, you don't have to sign it, because I hope we're not talking about this again after today, because you have option B.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Our next speaker is Danielle Valverde, and after Danielle will be...
He also left, and he also asked me to read a statement for him. Am I allowed to do that?
Apparently, no.
I'll give it to...
Yeah, if you want to read, if you want to pass the statement up, councilmembers can take a look at it. Next speaker will be Joyce Lu, and after Joyce will be Jean Marino.
I'm Joyce. I was here last time, and thank you. I see your people working hard on it. And today, we have alternatives, and I saw it. And just by my experience, I would urge you, I know the problem is big and broad. There's no such a simple way now we say, do this, do that. But at this time, I really think the problem is not, if there's a crisis, we just can't say, landlord, you pay for it. So that one, I think something is not logic here. But, so I just want to say, at least, this time, I urge you to vote on, Redwood City one, the A. Yeah, let's go from there, and we have a chance. If we find a mutual one to make it better in the future, it's still possible. But at this time, I'm just thinking, it is not fair. If there's a problem, the only thing is the landlord, the housing provider, to pay for it. Something is not right here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Marino, and after Jean, excuse me, will be Diane Bailey.
Good evening. My name's Jeanie Marino, and I'm a 32-year resident of Menlo Park. I've raised my three children here. They all went to MA and attended public schools, but they don't live here now because they can't afford it. I think there are a lot of people my age who are in that similar situation. Our children can't afford to be our own neighbors. I have a kid who lives in Manhattan, and believe it or not, it's more affordable than what he might pay here. I also want to say, I live on Antonel Avenue, across the street from a pretty big development. You never saw me here complaining about it, because I'm going to join Jordan's organization. Yes, in my backyard, yes, we need more housing. We desperately need more housing. But, you know, those units, I went on Zillow, those units are being sold for $2 million. I don't know who's going to pay $2 million for those townhomes, but that's a crazy situation. We need to do more about affordability. I think we need rent stabilization here. I've worked in East Palo Alto. It's worked really well there. It has not created housing shortages and shortages of housing building in East Palo Alto. But I know that that's not on the table. I urge you to vote for option B because it provides more protections for renters. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeanie. Our next speaker is Diane Bailey. After Diane, will be Penelope Huang.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm here as a compassionate human and in support of option B for all the reasons that other speakers have stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Our next speaker is Penelope Huang, and after that will be Rory Lynn Antonio.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm Penelope Huang. I'm a local realtor and a Menlo Park resident, and I'm here to tell you a story. So I manage a three-bedroom, two-bathroom home in the Willows. I manage this home pro bono. Why do I manage this home pro bono? Because my owner is an 88-year-old man who has owned this house for many years, raised his children here, has a small mortgage as a result of putting his children through college, and when he retired, could not afford to live in this house because the PITI is too high because he has a fixed social security income of $1,100 a month. So as a result, he rents a house, not rents a house, he rents a very tiny apartment in Palo Alto, South Palo Alto, close to the train tracks, which I believe, I don't know the current numbers, are somewhere in the $2,700 a month range, which his $1,100 social security check doesn't cover. So as a result, we rent out his house after the PITI. He has, the net income offsets the cost of his rental in Palo Alto so that he can stay in the neighborhood, relatively speaking, and have a very, very small amount left to live on. That house needs new gutters, desperately needs new gutters. We've got three quotes for gutters. The cheapest one is $3,000. In order to pay for those gutters, he's going to have to give up something of his own in order to get there. So he's not the landlord with a large bank balance that somebody early on said, the rich landlord is just milking it. He's hardly milking it. He is one step away from being homeless himself, even though he owns a piece of property that is significant, has significant value. And we just did take a small line of credit in order to bump up the rent by having to fix the house up enough to bump up the rent in order to offset his rent in Palo Alto. It's a vicious cycle. And he's not alone. I manage many pieces of property that have a similar situation to this. Just wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Antonio, and then after that will be Ryan Kerrigan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Roe V. Lynn Antonio. I am the Government Affairs Director for the California Apartment Association Tri-County Division. We are an organization that represents rental property owners and operators. We are an organization that represents rental property owners and operators. Many of them have properties here in Menlo Park. I think it sends a strong message tonight when you have a lot of housing providers and renter advocates coming together this evening to declare that the community should work together to come up with solutions to address our housing issues. That's why we're all here. That's why we've been here tonight, and we want to work with the city. Now, with the two options that you are considering tonight, one is a form of rent control, Alternative B, and it has a hefty price tag to the city and has a lot of unintended consequences. Alternative A, however, although not perfect, is an actual relocation policy because the trigger is focused on the actual relocation of a tenant when they find themselves displaced because a unit is permanently withdrawn from the market or completely demolished or redeveloped. This is a better approach than setting triggers that, at rent increases and eviction controls that really function as a form of rent control. And so CAA Tri-County urged the city council to support tonight Alternative A. And also recognizing that the housing issue is a community-wide concern and warrants a community-wide response, we believe in the idea of creating a community fund that could be used for emergency housing for those in need. This is worthy of discussion, and we believe that CAA Tri-County, along with other stakeholders within the community, public or private, should be part of that discussion on how this fund could be created and what the funding mechanisms would be. Thank you very much tonight, and thank you for all the hard work you guys have had this evening.
Thank you, and I apologize for the Anchorman moment where I just read the screen. I know your name, Rovi. Next speaker this evening is Ryan Carrigan, and after that will be Carol Eldridge.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Ryan Carrigan, and Silicon Valley Association of Realtors. I also represent Realtors and a lot of small property owners. Quite directly, I'm here to ask you to vote for the Alternative A. That is the one that, when we were previously debating rent control-like policies, the Housing Commission was given direction to explore and to focus on votes that would be most vulnerable when units are removed from the market. That's why we feel Alternative A is the best path forward. And further going back and looking at policies that only increase the cost of providing housing, especially for homeowners, small property owners, folks who work very hard to provide quality places to live, only further incentivizes them to leave the market and harm those folks that rely on them for a place to live. So I encourage you to move forward with Option, or Alternative A, and keep it focused on those truly in need and the true conversion and removal of the unit from the market. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Carol Eldridge, and after that will be Emily Ann Ramos.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Carol Eldridge. I am here this evening as a veteran leader with Faith in Action Bay Area, and I want to vigorously urge you to approve Option B this evening. I would like to speak to some of the racial dimensions involved in the decisions that you will make tonight. I would submit that any version of this ordinance that excludes single-family homes fails to protect a large segment of the tenant community that's most in need of assistance and that it also ignores the racial disparity between those who would be protected and those who would not. Shirley Gibson of Little Legal Aid wrote a letter in which she laid out four facts, and I'm going to read them. One, Menlo Park is clearly segregated with majority of African-American and Hispanic residents concentrated in the Bell Haven neighborhood. Two, a majority of the rental units in the Bell Haven neighborhood are single-family homes. Three, African-American and Hispanic residents have the highest rates of housing cost burden in San Mateo County, 50% to 60% in fact. And four, tenants who are already cost burdened by rental rates are more likely to be displaced by a rent increase. Taken together, these facts amount to a certain and predictable outcome if single-family homes are omitted from the Alternative B ordinance. Shirley goes on to say that African-American and Hispanic tenants will inevitably be less likely to receive relocation benefits in Menlo Park than tenants of other races or ethnicities. To make such a policy choice, knowing this outcome is contrary to the city's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing and construct policies consistent with the Fair Housing Act. So I encourage the council to proceed in a way that advances racial equity and improves outcomes for all groups and to keep in mind the risk of litigation involved in the failure to further fair housing laws. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Jen Wolison, and after that would be Keith Sujin. Oh, sorry, Emily. I'm sorry, my screen dropped down. It's good to see you, Emily.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller and council. Thank you for taking the time to consider options to tackle the extreme housing crisis in the community. Your neighbors up and down the peninsula are working really hard to find solutions in different ranges. Do you increase renter protections, build more market rate, provide more funding for affordable housing? The answer really is yes to all. And so the question is, how far? Some commenters have said that the options before you, particularly Option B, is rent control. I'm from the beautiful and extraordinary city of Mountain View, a city that has wonderful staff, brilliant residents, and a community that prioritizes protecting our most vulnerable populations. It's a community I'm really proud to be a part of. It's also a city that is now implementing rent control. Like my colleague who spoke before you, I also sit on the Mountain View Rental Housing Committee. It's quite an experience. And like my colleague, I'm also just speaking in my individual capacity as a housing advocate. Knowing the difference, none of the options before you actually implements rent control, therefore, in my opinion, none of these options actually go far enough. However, I applaud the modest compromise proposal crafted by the hard work of your staff and Housing Committee or Commission. It's a small step in addressing such an overwhelming process, and thank you for your time and taking on this difficult issue for your city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jen Wolison, and after that will be Keith Sujin.
Good evening. I'll be fast. First, there was a comment recently about an elderly landlord who was having a hard time making repairs. There is a hardship waiver in Option B. There has been some comments about letting the market be free and kind of don't regulate housing, but I want to point out three things that are already benefiting landlords and homeowners, which is zoning, which restricts the amount of housing supply so it keeps prices up, Prop 13, and mortgage tax deductions. So I think we have to be honest about whether we're really living in a fully free market anyway and who it's currently benefiting. That, a couple of points have already been made. Option B is already a compromise that they worked out. The three Ps of addressing the housing, production, preservation, and protection. And without any of those one things, it's going to be a tough road to getting to where we need to go with housing. The point that's been made a lot, the Bell Haven housing stock is a lot of single-family homes. And basically, you've been given a ton of information. You've been sitting up here and being talked at. And I think the question to ask yourself is, what are you even trying to accomplish? Like, take a step back. What values are you trying to put on the city? And possibly, this isn't binary. It's not Option A or Option B. Like, I would love for you to have a conversation and see where there's common ground and see where you can figure out how to get to the values that you want to have in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nana Friedman, and after that will be Andrew Skelton. I'm sorry, Keith, it keeps dropping down on me. I don't know why. Keith Sujin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Keith Sujin, good evening, mayor and council members. I just want to encourage the council to reject Option B. We all do want affordable housing. It's been said earlier this evening, but the real solution is to find ways to really encourage rental housing and let the laws of supply and demand take place. A couple of examples, we lost a lot of jobs. Let's focus on the jobs housing imbalance. We lost a lot of jobs in the dot-com implosion around 2001. Rents in Menlo Park and San Mateo County dropped about 20% to 25% at that timeframe. Currently, with the supply increase over the last couple, three years, we've seen rents flat in the area here, Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and the surrounding area for the last two and a half years or so. So that's an example of supply impacting. And earlier, the dot-com was the demand impact. So markets do work, given an opportunity. I specialize in apartment brokerage. I've observed cities that have laws similar to Option B leads to a reduction in investment capital coming into those cities. It reduces the incentives for owners to improve, maintain, and enhance their properties. Hence, those properties start to decline as far as their condition. The cities with similar laws end up having to create expensive bureaucracies, and the laws create many unintended consequences. We've seen it up and down the peninsula and South Bay with laws similar to this that get into place. Please do not penalize those that are providing the housing, but find ways to encourage them to provide more housing is a real long-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nani Friedman, and after that will be Andrew Skelton.
Hi, my name is Nani Friedman, and I am here to support Option B as recommended by the Housing Commission and the Community Input Sessions. We must take the protection of our low-income tenants seriously to the highest degree possible. Bell Haven renters and single-family homes must be protected. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Andrew Skelton, and our next speaker after that will be Kate Hamm.
Hello. My name is Andrew Skelton, and I'm here in support of Option B for tenant relocation assistance. So renters deserve a fair chance to find housing, especially in a time when they're being pushed out of their own homes through no fault of their own. You all have a really cool opportunity to take part in actively fighting the Bay Area's housing crisis, and Option B is a great place to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kate Hamm, and after Kate will be Hannah Williams.
Hi, my name is Kate Hamm, and I'm a college student speaking in favor of Option B. People often argue on behalf of college students, saying, how will graduates be able to live and work in the area? And as a college student myself, I can speak for myself and say that I'll be fine. I come from a family of mom-and-pop landlords that built its wealth on exploiting low-income communities and gave me the opportunity to attend college. College students like myself can make ends meet, and this ordinance is not about young, educated people like myself, nor mom-and-pop landlords like my family members. Instead of thinking about us, I urge you to think about those who are most vulnerable to the housing crisis. I'm talking about people of color. I'm talking about the history of racial segregation and disinvestment. I'm talking about renter families, including renters of single-family homes and duplexes. I'm talking about the homeless. I'm talking about those who are already displaced from Menlo Park. I urge you especially to consider racial equity, echoing Carol's comment, and the national mandate for affirmatively furthering fair housing. Tenant relocation assistance is only one small step, and we need to move forward to policies of just cause and rent control that our more progressive sister cities are already considering. Please vote yes on Option B. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Hannah Williams, and after Hannah will be Marisol Zorati.
Hi, my name is Hannah Williams, and I'm here in support of the Housing Leadership Council to ask you to vote for Option B. Excluding single-family homes as Option A does would leave a large portion of the Menlo Park community vulnerable. And renters deserve the right not to be displaced by no cause evictions or rent gouging and should be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marisol Zorati.
Hi, my name is Marisol Zorati, and I'm also here in support of Option B as recommended by the Housing Commission. It is our duty and yours as representatives of the city to prevent homelessness and keep communities intact. Option A does not sufficiently assist our most vulnerable residents, particularly those in the Bell Haven neighborhood. Our community is working incredibly hard to afford a living wage, and they trust you to take actions that can support them. And you can only do so by passing Option B.
Thank you. And one last call for housing provider. Still on my list, so.
They did leave a phone number. Do you want me to read the last four?
Last four digits of the phone number.
0252.
Anyone with the last words, 0252. Okay. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and close public comment, and we're going to take a five-minute break and then get down to business. I really appreciate everyone's feeling social and happy, but it's time for us to get to business. So if everyone could please take their seats. All right. So this time, we're going to bring it back up to council. We've closed public comment. We're going to go ahead and open it up for questions to staff from council members first. Who would like to ask, who has a question for staff? Okay, Councilmember Nash.
So I was wondering, on Alternative B, if the number-one landlord cause termination had the means testing?
Yes, it does. And the means testing is currently set at, the Housing Commission's original recommendation was 150% of AMI, and the modified version now has the means testing at 100% AMI. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we move on to comments and we start working on the actual vote? Councilmember Crowellton.
Sure, I've got comments and questions all lumped in together, so excuse me while I ship through this. Regarding the noticing, on most of the things that we've dealt with, we have been able to make requirements more strict than the state. We can't make it easier than the state, but we can certainly make it stricter. And we've done that across the board in a number of things. Why are we, or I guess why is not really the issue. Is it just confirming the case that on pretty much everything else, we can make things stricter, but on noticing, we cannot?
So it's not the case in every statutory scheme that you are preempted in terms of noticing. With respect to unlawful detainer actions, there is a specific court opinion that has held that cities cannot make a more stringent noticing provision than the state has prescribed. And there's a body of case law that says that in unlawful detainer actions—
What is unlawful detainer? I'm sorry, can you explain that more?
This is, the state, there's a state law process that governs evictions that are called, it's called the unlawful detainer statute. And there are a whole bunch of procedural requirements that a landlord needs to follow before they can evict a tenant. And those procedures relate to the notice period and what needs to be contained in the notice, et cetera. And there's a court decision that held that cities cannot vary from the notice provision. Recently, Santa Cruz tried extending the notice provision in their relocation ordinance, and I think it was the Apartment Association that brought that statutory scheme and case law to the city council's decision, and they stepped back from that based on legal precedent.
I guess I'm more specifically asking about giving notice if a landlord does intend to raise the rent, even if it's a small amount. The more advanced notice they can give to someone, the more that individual has the opportunity to budget appropriately. What is the notice right now? Someone said two weeks. Two weeks is not a lot of time. What is the amount of notice that is required? You know, just making sure that people can budget and make informed decisions about their spending.
Yes. So it's 30 days if the rent increase is less than 10%, and if the rent increase is more than 10%, then tenants are entitled to a 60-day notice period. So I also took note of that two-week notice, and I was surprised at that. That sounds like an unlawful practice.
Okay. And then, in the landlord cause termination, one of the exceptions was nuisance. What is nuisance? How is that defined? Is that codified, or is that, you know, it's, sometimes these things are in the eye of the beholder, and it makes me a little nervous what may be nuisance, one may not be to another. So how— what may be nuisance, one may not be to another. So how is that defined, and who defines that?
So there is a generally accepted definition of nuisance. In the unlawful detainer context, it generally means that somebody is disturbing their neighbors or creating something unlawful or performing some unlawful activity on their property. Menlo Park also has a definition of nuisance in its code.
Okay.
So there are some parameters around nuisance.
All right. And then, I'm just looking at my notes. In addition to the two or three months' rent, landlords also would be required to pay for a third-party relocation company for 60 days and the amount that the city decides to charge for administration fees. So in addition to the two or three months, roughly how much would that be? I just want to know what we're...
So the subscription, the relocation company is a process that is in the Redwood City ordinance. Both ordinances contain a 60-day subscription to a rental subscription company, and I don't know what the cost of that would be. Now, I think that most people find out about rentals online, and so I don't think that that is a big factor in the relocation package. The other, the other piece that you talked about was the administrative fees, and that also is in the Redwood City model, and when staff saw that, staff thought that the council may want to consider that as well. The administrative fee would be something that would be charged to landlords in order to just recoup the cost of administering...
I understand why they have it. I was just wondering, are we talking about 200 or 2,000 or 10,000? You know, do we have any concept of how much that would be?
Right.
If Redwood City's doing it, how much are they charging?
Right. You know, I don't know. Their ordinance went into effect January 1.
But the amount of the fee would ultimately be set by council. So, I mean, that's for a future discussion, along with your fee ordinance. I mean, you set all the fees that the city charges.
Sure, but rightly so, in my opinion. We don't just willy-nilly set charges. We actually go through a process where we make sure that it's a charge that's related to the amount of hours, and that's why I was hoping that we'd at least have some kind of concept of how many, ballpark, how many hours we're talking about, how many staff members. But you're saying we don't know. That's frustrating. Okay, and back on the idea of being vague, hardship waiver. Can you tell me who's going to determine that, how that's going to be determined, and what that might include?
So there is a standard in the hardship waiver in the ordinance, and there are two definitions of qualification for a hardship waiver. We also suspect that, so in the actual hardship waiver, as drafted in our ordinance, will be determined by the Community Development Director. And we expect there would be some type of evidentiary showing by the landlord of a financial hardship. We do expect also to publish some regulations that will provide further guidance on what types of evidence we would expect to see, the examples that folks have brought up about needing, need for capital improvements or maintenance issues. I think that that would be a reasonable thing to expect, you know, to entertain. Other folks have talked about concern about foreclosures. If there was a risk that paying these relocation payments would then cause them to foreclose, cause foreclosure on the rental property, that would obviously be a grounds for hardship waiver.
Okay, thank you.
No questions. Any other questions of staff? Okay, we can go ahead and open it up to comments then about, so anything that wants to be proposed or talked about. Do I need to start calling on people, or are we going to move to a vote?
Well...
Mayor Proton Taylor.
Betsy and I discussed earlier, since there were some concerns by Councilmember Combs and by you, Mayor, and also by Councilmember Carlton, that you could start off the discussion since there were some concerns that the three of you had.
So what I actually would think would be great is if we went back and forth with people of different opinions, not like one, those who had concerns would speak, and then you guys would answer. But I'd like, I'd actually encourage a back-and-forth. And what actually, Mr. Curtis, could you put up a curtain, right? If you could put up the video, what the steps that we need to go through this evening, I think that'll lead us through the discussion perhaps. So it was in your slide presentation, I believe it was, may have been the last. So that's the slide we're looking at. Those are what we need to go through this evening and discuss. And I think that'll go ahead and lead us through the discussion in orderly fashion. So I don't, but I don't, what I don't think would be, what I don't think is going to be helpful is that one, quote-unquote, one side would go, and then the other side would go and respond. And then back, I think we, I think we should just go down the, go down the line, talk about each issue as it is here, and then, and then figure out where we are, and we can have a robust discussion about it. So first one, so with that being said, do you guys want to start getting into the meat?
Can I?
Yeah, Councilmember Combs.
Just really quickly, I had a question for staff on sort of what's being proposed when it comes to the Redwood City model. Did you see that or look at that in conjunction with the fund? Because it seems as though that's like sort of not an option in that analysis, and that the fund is only with regards to a modification of what's being presented by the Housing Commission.
Correct. I think your description is accurate. We looked at the fund. As proposed, it would cover the special circumstance payment of option, or alternative B, but you could mix and match from both alternatives and pick pieces to put together into an ordinance that you can support.
Yeah, absolutely. So that was my intent in raising the fund, was that it would be alternate A plus the fund.
Okay.
So, and the idea being, so, look, candidly, guys, I'll go first. Like, I don't have any problem going first. Where I am on this right now is that when I see this, when we go through it, and I don't want to get too much into the weeds of lawsuits and whatnot, but legally, I think there's, I think what we end up happening is we're in a position where we don't cover all of the housing stock. Tonight, actually, and I'm not sure that she's going to like the way I used it, but when they held up the poster board and it showed that alternative A covers half the housing stock in the city, I actually saw that as a positive, because if you go with alternative B, I think we end up in a lawsuit. And I think it's a long time until we're actually able to provide any help to anyone pragmatically. And I think that, you know, there was an attorney who spoke tonight who said that there, you know, he was starting to argue about precedent and that there was no appellate case law yet. But there is a real risk that trying to be the most forward, one of the most forward-looking jurisdictions in the state, you are going to end up with appellate case law that people might not be happy with. If you go with alternative A, we're not in a position where we're going to have a Costa-Hawkins lawsuit. We're going to cover, we will cover a portion of the housing stock in the city, and we can cover the rest of it with the housing fund. And what pragmatically, that means we get money to people right now who need it, as opposed to trying to be the one of the most progressive jurisdictions in the Bay Area and the state, and then being stuck in litigation, basically. And I know that's unhappy, you know, it's one of those things, you walk in the room, and you know, no one's going to be happy with you. Like, I want, no one's going to be happy with me when I leave here tonight, right? I see a gentleman shaking his head. He's like, "Yeah, you're right. Not happy with you." I knew that, right? I know that. I know that there are people who have worked really hard on this, and I'm letting them down. And there are people who think that I'm infringing on their rights and the free market, and I'm letting them down. And at the end of the day, where I've come down on this repeatedly, and I have, I didn't sleep last night, you know, trying to figure it out. And I know that's of little help to people who are thinking about this, but where I keep coming back to over and over again is I want to help people right now. I want to help people right now, and I have money right now. If we took what we would spend in litigation defending this and put it into a fund, and then we put, and, you know, we heard tonight, California Apartment Association saying they're going to put money in the fund, they're ready to have the discussion with us, and I believe there are other stakeholders who are going to have money with us. We put money into the fund, we set the criteria for the fund, who aren't covered by alternative A, and we can get money to people who are in need right now. And that's what this is. It's a tenant relocation ordinance to help people who are in need right now. One of the things I heard in public comment tonight a lot was that people are being displaced. This is not an anti-displacement ordinance. And if we say it's an anti-displacement ordinance and we pass it for that basis, we are going to end up in court. So I, I really just want to get people, the money to people who need it now, who need help, who, so that they, and I don't see a prolonged litigation struggle over trying to be the most progressive, helping them. It might help me. I had someone email me and say, "You could be the most progressive, you know, one of the most progressive leaders in the county." And I, you know, for a second, I was like, "Well, that's pretty cool." And I realized, like, you know what? I don't care, because it doesn't help people to have that label on me. Well, I appreciate the comment, but, and like I said, people aren't going to be happy with me, and people might swear at me. So with that, that's where I am right now on this. I'm happy to open it up to comments from you guys, from you guys on it.
I was wondering if you could explain to me the folks that you believe you will help with alternative A, and also how you, what you're talking about with the fund and covering people with the fund.
Well, the, what we see in alternative A has already been explained by staff as who's covered by that. Basically, it's going to be if we have, someone comes in who wants to go ahead and, and any of those trigger points that you've seen. So they will be covered. People who won't be covered by alternative A, we would set criteria for, saying, so number one, and we've talked, I talked about this last time, I, I respect the one-year lease. Like, I just do. I respect the one-year lease. So, but if a person at the end of that one-year lease is in the position where they are looking at the same trigger point that you guys were looking at, where they're going to be, but I frankly would want it, I, you know, candidly, the 100 AMI, I've heard all of the discussions about that. I, the 100, the 120 or the 200, the 100 AMI, that is a very tough situation to be in. I don't dispute that. But to me, the way that you solve that dispute, that, that position is by increasing housing stock. That is not, those are not individuals who I think, who I think of are going to become homeless tomorrow with no possibility of finding a home. The people who I, when I think of tenant relocation ordinance, I think of people who are, if without this, without this help, they're doomed. It's over for them. And that's the people. So what I would say, for me personally, when I look at it, and that doesn't mean I don't care, but like, I'm trying to get a teacher housing project started here in Menlo Park. I care about housing workforce. I think we need to, we need to add housing stock. We're working, we are working on that, and trust me, there's people in town who don't believe that. But to me, you need to set the AMI at a threshold so that you're really affecting people who are doomed. So, and so for me, what I would say is alternative A for all of those trigger points, and then for the things that you're talking about where someone is looking at a rent increase, and we can talk about what that increased threshold is, that the fund that could kick in and help that person at the proper AMI. And if we do that, then what I know, because what I'm worried, I mean, candidly, what I'm worried about is the person, are those people? While we're stuck in litigation, we're going to have people come forward, people out there who are going to be sitting there, who basically are in the position why we started this all to begin with, and we have resources right now to help them, that we're putting into a legal process where we're, you know, candidly, I'm not going to say we're going to lose, but I can't, I can't say that we're going to win. And so why wouldn't I, why wouldn't I want to try to take those resources and match them? I mean, one of the, one of the things that we have right now because of all this is a giant stick. And the other thing that we get out of it, frankly, and my, you know, the folks in the Landlord Association are going to like me to hear it, say it, but you know what? When you start a funding, you start tracking criteria, guess what happens? You get data. And so all of a sudden now, if that fund starts to deplete quickly, guess what? We have data on the people who applied to deplete that fund, and we actually can go ahead and see what we're looking at. So to me, that is, to me, I think that's just the most pragmatic place to go. But I, that being said, I want to have a robust discussion about it. Like, I don't want to dominate the conversation. I want to hear your guys' thoughts on it. But I just want to, but so, so I took the bullet and went first.
Thank you, Ray. Well, I support Option B for multiple reasons. First of all, when I think about the largest stock in rentals as far as the Bellhaven neighborhood, this wouldn't help. Option A wouldn't help. The other piece is because we have chosen not to do anything around housing over the past five to 10 years, we don't have any data on our own community. So we don't know how many people are displaced. The, what's the number? 32 people that we know of that were served an eviction, an illegal eviction? I'm sure the number is probably triple or quadruple, but we don't have data on that. So we don't even have anything about our own residents so that we can start creating policy to protect them. And I don't think choosing a policy that isn't going to serve the majority of the population is the best way to go to Menlo, for Menlo Park. I also believe that our tenants, our residents are worth fighting for, just like they would fight for us if they wanted certain people in office. So I think that Menlo Park can do more.
So just responding quickly, Costa-Hawkins, though, doesn't cover single-family homes. So if we don't do a single-family exemption, then we're opening ourselves to a Costa-Hawkins challenge, which, the result of which, I would challenge anyone to say is clear. However, if we go forward with Option A plus a fund, we can cover single-family homes with resources to help those people now. And that's my, that's pragmatically where I keep coming back to this, is, Cecilia, if I was where you, I mean, we want the same result, okay? We want the same result. I want to help people in those single-family homes. I want to help people who are in those garages, who I don't even think I can, I don't even think I can enforce this policy on people in garages, because it's not a true lease. But we can if we have criteria that sets out that we can with resources. And we don't get stuck in a battle about whether Costa-Hawkins should apply or not to that, because we've already set criteria out that our fund will apply to it, and we've said, and we heard them tonight, they support it. And so, and we can track it. And so that's why, my big thing is when I look at Option B, it's applied to things that we don't, that I'm not sure at the end of the day will be the, will be one of the most progressive jurisdictions, but I don't think that we can definitely say that we know what the legal outcome of that will be, or how long it'll be before we can actually get help to those people.
I'm wondering two things. One is if we were to be sued, if we go with, I, okay, I am actually also for Option B. If we were to be sued, would the, would there actually be, would it not go into effect, or, obviously, we don't know for sure, but what is the likelihood that we actually would not have any coverage for tenants while we are in a lawsuit?
So it, it varies. The landlord that would bring the lawsuit would probably also ask the court to enjoin the enforcement... the enforcement of the ordinance, and if they could show that they were likely to succeed on the merits and that there was some harm that would result through enforcement of the ordinance, then a court could enjoin the ordinance. But we, we don't know, we can't really tell until we, we have a plaintiff identified, how likely it will be that a judge would, would grant the injunction.
Yeah, so, I'll just generally sort of chime in with, with efforts to possibly hone the discussion a bit. I, I want to get, I mean, at, at the end of the day, the issue is what are there at least three votes for? And, and maybe we should look to whether this is some foundation we can base off option A or option B. And if there aren't seemingly three votes for option B, then, then I, I think we can sort of discuss it and air out why we support it, but I don't know if it's the best use of time to get into something that actually results in, in an ordinance being passed or voted on tonight. If, if there just isn't, you know, three votes for anything sort of close to option B. Just to be transparent, where I'm coming from, it would be something based more on option A, the Redwood City model, for, for several reasons, many of which I've, I've stated in the past, and when we, we brought this up as, as a study session. I think that there is the concern of, of going and covering housing stocks outside of, of Costa-Hawkins. Again, when there is no clear legal precedent and the idea of the city being entangled in litigation for, for months, if, if not years into the future, is, is, is a concern. I, I think even away from the threat of a lawsuit, there is just a general concern about when we take this market, which doesn't have this regulation and we put this regulation on it, what are the unintended consequences? Will you then have situations where landlords, specifically smaller landlords, will, will, you know, act in a way that is, is more likely to maximize rental, rent increases every time they, they can, based on this idea that at some point in the future, there could be a limit to that? So, I think even away from the, the threat of, of the lawsuit, there are possible unintended consequences that I think come into play with regards to, to, to option B. And then there is just the bureaucratic infrastructure that it would take to sustain a system like that, and it's not clear to me exactly how that happens. I, I mean, there's all sorts of nuances, you know, is it someone's AMI at the time of the lease or the time that their, that their, that the rent increase is being, is being applied? I, I think that there's all sorts of, of, of not clear aspects of which can be made clear, but you need an actual bureaucratic infrastructure to make, make them clear. And I, I think it's a lot to ask for a city of 35,000 people to, to be, to be out there and setting precedent in, in this way. So, that's where I'm coming from, but, but I do think we should sort of, you know, my assessment is, is that there are not three votes for option B. And so, and so, we can air out why we support it or think it, but I, I think it is best that we, if it's clear that there are not three votes for that, that we move on to where there possibly can be three votes. And if there is a sense that, from those on the council who support option B and completely respect it, whether for you that is something that it is either that or nothing, completely valid stance to take, but I think that that is the moment we're coming to. It is either that or nothing for you, or it is that and there is something else possibly that, that you would be willing to support.
So, one of my concerns, actually, a couple of things. One, on option B, there actually is, it says in the regulations that it's at the time of the rent increase, that it's, that's when you're looking at the AMI. First of all, with option B, it really does not, and I've had this conversation with a few landlords who, once we talk about it, it doesn't seem to concern them. That, basically, they seem to be embracing, they are embracing option B. What is hap, what option B is, is it only gets triggered if you're doing the large CPI plus 5% increase, and the person must move because of the increase, and the person is hitting the AMI limit, which right now we've set at 100%, and they've been in the, in the unit for longer than 10, longer than 12 months. So, it actually hones down to a very limited number of people who it would affect. And in fact, it's something where, in talking to the, some landlords, it's, they did not feel it would affect the landlord-tenant relationship because they said this really is not something that they would ever be in that situation. So, that's why I am very passionate about B is because I really don't think that it adds any, any new constraints to the landlord-tenant relationship. And in fact, it does protect tenants who are in a situation where they are, get a huge increase. And in fact, it only gets triggered if the person moves. So, if you've got someone who's under the, if they have their rent is under market and they do get a big increase, there's, they may not, that may not trigger a move anyway because of the options that they have, if they can possibly pay that rent increase. So that, there's, a landlord can increase the rent to any amount, it's really when it, if it triggers the tenant to have to move because they can't pay the rent, and they're in that AMI bracket. So, I think it's actually, it does not constrain the landlord-tenant relationship. One thing that I'm very concerned about with a consequence of what we're talking about with A, where, well, first of all, I'm very concerned that it actually doesn't cover the rental situations that we have in the situ, in this, in Menlo Park, and so I guess, Clay, do you have any data on that?
My understanding is that the Redwood City model applies to properties with more than four units. So, if that same standard is applied to the Menlo Park housing stock, it would cover basically the bottom three rows of this chart that add up to 22.6% of the housing stock, or 3,563 units, out of the total 15,764 units.
And do we know, and within those units, this would only be triggered if the unit was taken off the market for, well, the unit was taken off the market?
Taken off the market, renovated, yeah, the, the list of mostly change-of-use type of examples that are explained under Alternative A.
Do we have any idea how many situations where someone is taking the unit off the market for those triggers?
I really don't have an idea of how often that is happening in Menlo Park right now.
So, what my concern is, is that if we have, if we're then trigger, if we're using a community fund to pay for the rent increases, then there's absolutely no barrier to ju, to rent increases. And in fact, I think we might be triggering rent increases in our rental units unintentionally, by having it something where there's no deterrent for a landlord to raise the rent if it's being paid for by the community fund.
So, just, the only thing that I'd, so, using this chart to say that we don't know how many are in five to 20, I mean, we only know that there's, by testimony of staff, 46 out of 15,764 units. So, you got 46 complaints a year of this happening. About four a month, four, somewhere around four a month, 48, I guess is what, but then our last hearing, that was your, your testimony. That's how many people have called to complain?
I think we're mixing some of the numbers. We've, we had reports of, I think, 47 cases that we heard about through legal aid, and then I was saying that I get calls of approximately three or four a month, mostly triggered by tenants who have questions about rent increases or the 12-month lease ordinance.
Okay.
Those are not necessarily eviction situations at that point.
All right. But my point is, what we have actually data on is a small amount of the 15,764, right? I mean, that's the whole thing, and that's the basis why I think actually, why I actually think Alternative A, I mean, option A plus the fund initially could work, because I don't know how many, we don't have the data yet. And look, if that fund disappears like, within a month, then guess what? We're having a different conversation. Go ahead.
So, what I'm actually concerned about is not that the fund is disappearing, it's that people are being evicted, they, and that the rental market is in, the housing, rental prices are increasing because there's nothing keeping it down. Whereas, if there's, under option B, there's, and where the landlords are part of, are paying for the soft landing for the tenants, so if they're paying for the first and, anyway, the rent, that one or two months' rent, for the tenants, there's actually a disincentive to do that. Whereas, if there's, if that amount is being paid for by the community fund, there's no disincentive to not increase the rents.
Councilmember Carlton?
I'm tempted to go into the details on this, but for the, for the sake of, of time, you know, I mentioned last time that my family was displaced when I was a teenager, seriously dark time in my life. Because my mom was a single teacher with two children, part of the solution is more houses, and part of the solution is appreciating teachers and paying them more, but that's a different elected body that can fix that problem. I like a lot of the details on A, and the units in exchange for employment, including that means, I am, there is no bigger cheerleader for teacher housing, because it hits me in the heart of my own experiences. And if, if things go forward with the flood area and we get fantastic teacher housing and a teacher decides not to be a teacher anymore, do we want someone that then has decided to become a nurse living in that housing that we've specifically put together? You know, there are a lot of reasons why these details are here, and I tend to agree with Mayor Mueller, that I want to make sure that these protections are in sooner rather than later, and not drawn out for however long it takes to, to get through a lawsuit. And I feel that not only is, is it an issue of expediency in helping people, but also supporting people in single houses with a fund. And I don't think that this is written in stone. There is a sunset clause, and there has been precedent where councils brought things back when things don't work. Hopefully, this will, hopefully, that's not the case. But I, for a whole myriad of reasons, feel that A is going to provide the protections in a, in a thoughtful way that will address the issue with the fund backing it up. And we still have to work out the details on the fund, admittedly, but that's where I'm on this.
I mean, I, I'd just like to add, Councilmember Nash, you said that you favor B, and your concern with A is that there is no disincentive not to increase the rent. If I'm a lawyer representing a future landlord challenging this, I've just got my money quote. You essentially set it up to say that what you're trying to do is provide a disincentive to increase the rent. That is rent control. And that is the argument.
No, rent control is when you don't, okay, you're the lawyer, I'm not. However, my understanding of rent control is that you are saying you cannot increase the rent to, you're, you're saying you can't increase the rent, and we're not putting any caps on the rent.
You, as a government body, are providing all of the regulation to disincentive, disincentivize someone from being able to increase the rent as they are allowed to on some housing units in the state of California. So, I'm just saying that like, this is, you know, all of this becomes discoverable. And, and it's, and it, it ain't looking pretty for us, or for option B, to be honest. And so, that's just something I think we have to take into account.
Can I make a motion?
Well, I don't, I want to actually, I don't, I don't want to cut off comment, like I see, I see, yeah, I mean, if you guys have, if you guys have comments or you want to go further, and I know, guys, look, this is going to be, we're going to have lots of passionate discussions up here, and there are going to be times we agree and disagree. And so, what I want to try to do is just keep, keep us all understanding that we're trying to come from a good place on it. And I understand too, folks, and the, you know, it's one of those weird things, I think we're moving toward actually putting together a tenant relocation ordinance and a fund with money from the city and private, and we're going to walk out here and people are going to be upset, and that is way better than we were yesterday. And so, for me, that's a little disappointing, that we're going to end up in a place that was way better than yesterday and, you know, but, but, and I, hopefully, we can all look at that and say, "Well, that's, that's an accomplishment." But, and, and I, we're going to also cover people in single-family homes. And I'm telling you guys, I don't think we get single, I realize that everything with the best intention for this, for the ordinance was to try to cover single-family homes. I don't see that we get to do that for a long time with the ordinance. Like, there's just, you know, the, what is it, the only other, the only other city that's attempted to do this is Santa Cruz. And I tell you, the Santa Cruz is like, you know, when you look at like, the state in terms of liberal jurisdictions, they're not actually, I don't think, I think they're kind of past where the, for the judiciary is most of the time. So, like, we're, we're moving the ball. Once, when Redwood City passed this, I don't think they have a fund to cover all the other, all the other houses in that, in their city. They don't. So, yeah.
Mayor Mueller?
Yeah.
We need to take a supermajority vote to extend this meeting, past 11?
Uh, yeah, so we'll do, thank you, I appreciate that. So, do you, guys, everyone agree to extend the meeting past 11? Okay. One thing I do want to say though, is can we, there was, how do you guys feel about continuing the council goals and CIP discussion to the next meeting, however, keeping public comment closed and not making staff go through a report again, just picking up the subject as if we were locked in time? Does that sound agreeable to everybody? Yes. Mr. McClure, we can do that?
You can do it because you already closed public hearing, and, and as long as you're not changing what is presented or comes before you at the next meeting.
All right, so any staff wanted to let you guys go, so if you're waiting on that, you don't, you're not, you're not locked here. Although we appreciate you waited this long, and I'm sorry we didn't give you the courtesy of knowing that earlier, we're trying to be really optimistic that we get through this.
Are you also for continuing the police?
No, we're going to take comment on that this evening.
Okay. I agree to that.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll figure out which date, we'll put it, we'll send an email to you guys updating which date it'll be on. I have to sit down with Starla and go over the agendas, but more than likely, it'll be March 5th because we have to get the information to staff. All right, so, more comments on the discussion or debate?
My, Mayor Pro Tim Taylor? Thank you. My, my comment is, one of the reasons why this came before is, is because we need to create something that includes more families. And so, both Councilmember Nash and I are passionate about that because we've listened to a lot of the community members that have concerns, and there's a larger discussion that needs to happen around housing, I believe. This just scratches the surface, and... This just scratches the surface, and Councilmember Nash and I are willing to come here to make some type of concession so that we can get something passed for the city. So that's what the priority is. But I just want to reiterate, the goal is to capture more families, not exclude them. And with some of the practices that have been happening in Menlo Park that are both predatory and discriminatory, and this is, obviously isn't gonna capture that, and then also the idea of not having data about our own city, it just, it makes it hard to do this.
Understand completely, and I would, guys, I think that we all have the same, the same priorities. I know you guys care about families, I do too. I know Kat does, I know Drew does. The fact that I'm not voting for option B tonight doesn't mean I don't care about families, I do. I actually think that the reason why I'm taking the vote I am tonight is to help them. So pragmatically, I think this is the way that I actually get stuff to them, and it's, I have a rare opportunity to have, that I think to have, so money we would spend, and we can talk about how much money we want to do that tonight, or we can save that to a later date, but how much money that the city puts in, how much money that the private sector puts in, and how we go forward.
I have a number.
Okay.
Since we would spend, what, roughly half a million dollars on litigation possibly, then we can start our fund with five hundred thousand dollars.
I think we should probably, that's not the number that I've heard from staff, is how much litigation would cost, but we can go ahead and talk with, we can get that teed up for a discussion at council, because what will have to happen, I think what will have to happen is that we're gonna have to have it come back with criteria for the fund. And so, so what the city's contribution is, what the, what we'd be looking from the private sector and from funders, and then talk about what the criteria is. Any other, so, but I'm not, I mean, it's up to you guys what you want, what you want to do tonight. Any other discussion on this topic? Councilmember Nash?
Yeah, I am still concerned that the community fund could be misused.
Um, we'd have to, so, the community fund, why, Michael? Just because, I mean-
Okay. How do you not think it's going to be misused?
I think that we'll have set criteria that we would have, that would be administered more than likely by a housing nonprofit agency here in Santa Clara County that we would vote on, and that there would be evidence, it would be an evidence-based, evidence-based, evidence-based criteria that they would have to apply to it, show circumstance, show lease, show what the rental re-increase was, and then that, they'd have, you know, and then they'd get money from the fund, I don't know-
That's not the point, I'm sorry, that's, that's, I'm thinking of a different situation. I'm thinking of the situation where people are evicted using, or people get increases of rent that then triggers using the fund, and that it's, there's, you don't think that that would happen?
No, I don't, like, I don't, I don't, I'm not following why it would happen any more than it would happen now. I don't think that it's a carrot to a landlord to say, now that there's a fund out there to pay for your relocation expenses, I'm gonna raise your rent more than I otherwise would have. I just don't. So, why, I mean, I don't follow the logic, why would a landlord say, I'm gonna raise your rent more than I otherwise would have because there's now a fund that if I do that, it's gonna pay for your moving expenses? To the, either way, the person's gonna be evicted, so why would they do that?
Well, I, what my concern is, is that, I believe that the landlords are compassionate people, and that they would not want to raise the rent a significant amount, however, this allows them to use the community fund if they do raise the fund, if they do raise the rent and the person is no longer able to live there.
So they're not raising it, so you think that people aren't raising rents to a certain amount because they think that if they do that, the person doesn't have money to move? I don't say, I'm still not following the logic, like-
I, I believe what Councilmember Nash is saying is that it would incentivize landlords that want the tenant out, right? They, they want him out-
Or they just want more money, and they might have had-
But how is that, I, I still understand how that is different than it is now, if a landlord wants a tenant out. So, anyway, so let's, so anyway, so-
Can we, actually, let me ask, let me go on to something different, and that's, can we raise the AMI? I would like to raise the AMI, AMI on alternative A to a hundred twenty percent.
All right, so let's first decide, before we move on to red, to alternative A, should we, should we actually now decide that we're not gonna have the votes for alternative B, and then move on to alternative A? Can we foreclose that discussion?
I have one question of staff.
Yes, yeah.
Is there a way to exclude Costa Hawkins out of option B? So that we don't have a potential of a lawsuit?
Yes, there is. So, on page five of option B in your staff report, there's a definition of significant rent increase. And there is some red line language that has been deleted, and if you were to restore that language, that would exempt Costa Hawkins' properties from the significant rent increase trigger. And it would leave in place the significant rent increase trigger for all housing stock that was built prior to nineteen ninety-five.
Except single-family?
Correct.
So it would apply to duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes?
But that still wouldn't help the single family.
That's, that's, so we're going down the path of where I went, guys, where I was like, okay, if I do this, if I do that, and then I was like, look, but if, in all of those circumstances, I'm picking for like one class of housing to sort of win the lotto, that their landlord's gonna do this, and why, and then, but if I do that, then I don't have funders for a, I don't have funders for a fund anymore to cover everybody. See, that's the reason why I keep coming back to option A. Right now, option A, I'm getting told I have funders to cover everybody, plus I got option A. If I like start to piecemeal it out, I don't have everybody covered.
I actually did not, I heard them say that they would work with us, I did not hear them, I did not hear them say that they would fund it.
Well, if they don't, we'll probably have another conversation.
So, somebody made a comment earlier that I thought was really interesting, and it was about the AMI. And it really rings true. AMI is one of, really, a number of things that indicates someone's ability to pay. There are people that may still be paying off medical bills, there are people that may have horrific student loan payments, you know, that, it's not just AMI that indicates your ability to handle a rent increase or not. And AMI is an easier way of dealing with it, rather than having to go through someone's finances, which many people might find an invasion of privacy, although people put it forward for loans and many other things. But I was just putting it out that, that it's not just the percentage of AMI, that it's, and I, I don't really know how we manage that in a, in a way that doesn't then increase the administrative cost of doing this, but I thought it was a very good point made.
I agree with you. My concern would also be the administrative cost of trying to, AMI seems like a much more straightforward mechanism. I'd be happy to raise it to a hundred fifty percent.
I mean, just to sort of throw it out there, I mean, regarding AMI, I was going in the opposite direction. I would be looking to lower it. If this is truly about us as a community and government entity stepping in to help, help those most in need than those who are truly at risk of homelessness, I'm not saying that someone, I'm pretty sure there are some people at two hundred percent AMI that may be on the edge of homelessness, but i-if we are truly trying to protect those most at need, I feel that it, it has to be those whose income suggests that they are among the neediest in our community. So even with, with us possibly centering our attention towards alternative A, I would be looking at, at a lower AMI than, than eighty percent. Lower than eighty percent. Eighty percent, what is, that's, for one person, it's like eighty thousand dollars or something like that, correct?
Excuse me, eighty percent AMI for one person is eighty-two thousand two hundred.
I'm not in the business of providing protection where I'm telling the community that this is the appropriate use of your funds for a single individual making eighty-two thousand dollars a year. It just, it's not something I'm gonna do.
Councilmember Carlton.
Sure. Just to throw it out there, one of the advantages of doing something that's very, very similar to Redwood City and the county and whatever, is the continuity, the consistency, also the potential opportunity of sharing education information with, you know, across larger areas. There is an advantage to having consistency and not having it completely piecemeal, place to place. I was just gonna throw that out there in terms of, of not going too crazy on either direction.
Okay, it sounds like, guys, so, it's eleven o'clock, it sounds like, and it means candidly, it sounds like option A is where we're headed, so unless you think that there's something, and I know it's hard, but I, I'm, I myself personally don't see myself moving off it unless, because, unless there's something-
Okay.
Go ahead.
I would like to read a letter that Diane Reddy sent, sent in to CCIN. Diane Reddy is a city council member in Redwood City, but, and she says, "I am not writing, I'm writing not as a Redwood City council member, but as a housing advocate who is very concerned about the displacement of thousands of families from our community. I commend the city for taking steps to protect tenants in Menlo Park. On the other hand, I urge you not to use the Redwood City ordinance as a model. We are facing the closure of three schools due to the loss of families and the inability of the district to hire and retain teachers who are also being displaced from our community. By means testing your ordinance at eighty percent, you will not be protecting teachers or members of your own staff. I urge you to adopt the ordinance originally proposed by your housing commission. It will actually protect tenants, and I applaud the commission members for their thoughtful proposal. Thank you for your consideration of protections for the most vulnerable in your community." Diana Reddy.
I mean, I, I understand that's Diana, that's Councilmember Reddy's position, but it wasn't the position of a council and the ordinance that they passed, and it's not the ordinance that's in Redwood City right now. So, you know, I appreciate that's her position, but it's not the one that was adopted by the city council, which frankly has much, much more in the ray of resources for both enforcement and also to, to deal with this issue. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate you sharing that letter. I mean, my question gets into, and then again, I, during the study session, I said this has become an unwieldy process, like, what problem are we trying to solve for? When she says that it provides no protection, what is the protection that it should provide, right? Because at the end of the day, this is in theory about providing assistance for people who are actually leaving the community, right? So what is the, the protection is, is, is to keep them in the community, which it seems as though that's what she was saying, that it doesn't do, but that's never what a relocation assistance is really about, or it should be about. It should be about trying to provide a soft landing, generally someplace else, for people who have been outpriced of a community. And so, again, that's, that's where I get into this, like, there's just lots of different things going on here, and, and it's, it's challenging for a city of our size to get in this and, and try to not, in a situation where we, we won't be able to really factor in and understand all the unintended consequences, and we don't have the staff or the infrastructure in place to then, to then deal with that. So again, again, that's the, I think that, like, my question is, what is the protection? And I don't think that the protection she's talking about is the protection that is what a rental relocation assistance program is supposed to be protecting for.
All right.
Mayor Mueller, would you like a motion in the interest of time?
Well, so, what, what, the question I have is, so, if we move forward with alternative A, then the question is, is it alternative A plus, plus a fund? And then, then we get into a question about the criteria for the fund, which basically, I think we would probably want to, we can talk about and give some direction to staff on tonight, but this is gonna need to come back to us. So, I want to make sure everyone feels like they've said their piece. So, if, if we're ready to start making motions, that's great. You feel like?
I'm wondering if there's any way we can put the landlord-caused terminations from alternative B into alternative A.
Which one specifically are you, are you addressing?
That would be on page eighty, just for your reference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me take a look.
Can you, you're probably the most familiar with this ordinance, or the proposal.
I'll defer to Cara on the ordinance language itself.
So, it's, landlord-caused termination is on page four of, of option B. And so it really is a broad statement saying that landlord termination means a landlord taking any action to terminate the tenancy of an eligible tenant occupying a rental unit for any reason, and then it contains some exceptions. So essentially, it is a no-cause termination. So to do that, let's see.
So it, I mean, it's kind of the reverse of what's in alternative A, because alternative A only applies if it is one, two, three, four, or five.
Right.
And so, it just, it flips it the opposite way, so it's, you know, any termination unless it's excluded.
Right. I'm not, I'm not-
Which, in which case?
I'm not prepared to go there myself.
Would you be prepared to put in rental increase?
No, I'm not, so the, the rental trigger is what the issue is tonight that's causing the problem. That's the, the rental trigger is frankly, so I'm willing to, the problem is, is that the rental trigger, I'm totally fine with the renter, the rental trigger would be what, one of the criteria under which someone would receive aid under the fund. The problem where we get into legal issues is when you try to apply the rental trigger to the landlord, and then as a matter of, as a matter of right, that's where, that's the problem we're running into, so.
I thought it was the rental trigger within Costa Hawkins.
Right, but that's, but if you don't, if you may create the- Right, but that's, but if you don't, if you create the, but you didn't just, you just said, so you want me to include the rental trigger in A without Costa-Hawkins? I'm not, I'm.
But A includes properties that are protected by Costa-Hawkins.
Right.
Because Costa-Hawkins is all pre-1995, right? And, and so this, this, so there are some units within the Redwood City model that in theory aren't exempted by Costa-Hawkins. So I think that that's where, therein lies the complication. But I'm not the city's attorney on this, so I'll defer to one of them.
So what about adding the Costa-Hawkins exemption with the rental triggers?
I'll defer to Mr. Combs to figure it out at this moment.
I can.
I am trying to protect more individuals.
I know, but at the, at the end of the, I'm not, see, the thing is, I think, well, we're going to talk about the criteria, but I'm very, fairly comfortable that we're going to find, have, like, we're going to have protected individuals, and I'm trying as far as I can to stay away from the legal ramifications of doing, of going beyond that, so.
Where I'm very frustrated is that if we were going to do the Redwood City ordinance, we could have done that many months ago.
That was a different city council that didn't, and it was sent to the housing commission. This is our city council, we're looking at this issue now. So this is what's before us. Okay.
So I can make a motion.
I think we're there.
But I felt that there's, there's, generally, like, it would be a motion to adopt Alternative A as an ordinance, but, but there's still lots of X-factors with regards to the community fund. And so are we, would a motion say that that is to come, or I'm going to defer to Bill?
Yes, so my recommendation would be that you take two separate actions. And, and so the first action would be if you support or want to introduce, so first, is it an urgency ordinance, requires a four-fifths vote? And then it would become effective immediately. Or if that motion fails to adopt it as an urgency ordinance, then you could make a motion to introduce it as a regular ordinance, in which case then it just requires a majority vote, and then it would come back for a second reading at a subsequent meeting. And then I would suggest that after you've dealt with that motion, then you have the discussion about the Community Housing Fund.
I have no problem with it being an urgency ordinance on Option A, on the Redwood City ordinance, so it's fine with me.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay.
And from what I hear, the details will come back to us on the fund.
Right, so that's fine.
So I'll make a motion, just for clarity, that we adopt Option A as it, as it's sort of written. There were some things that I just wanted to bring up.
And as a correction, the mover is Drew Combs.
And Kat's seconding it.
So I would, you know, in this motion, though, I would say, I'll keep in deference to my colleagues, the 80% medium AMI. And like I said, I do have some, some, some issues with that. But just for, for cleaning it up, I would say remove the 60-day rental agency subscription. There is correct list, so I don't know that that's needed. I also say let's remove this administrative fee. I think, let's not sort of try to get too much into the weeds on this. And under the Redwood City one, there is no actual sort of length requirement, I'd actually like to see a minimum of 12 months for, for it to be applicable to tenants.
Councilmember Combs?
Yeah.
Just as a friendly amendment, we do try and cover the cost of our staff, otherwise it's the taxpayers covering the costs, which is why we have the administrative fee. I tend to not like taxpayers paying for specific individual issues. So for that reason, I would prefer to keep the administrative cost, even though it is kind of, it doesn't make me happy that we don't know how much that is, but I do understand that traditionally we've been very prudent in not overcharging and making sure that it is something that is directly related to the costs that cost the city to administer.
Yeah, totally fair. I think my, and I'm, it's not something I'm going to necessarily be a stickler on. I think it's a different thing when you're applying for, like, a use permit, right, to renovate your house, and that there are certain recovery fees that the city seeks. In this case, there is this new regulatory scheme that, to this point, does not exist, which we are, are requiring people to, to now participate in. I'm pretty sure most of the landlords would not want the administrative fee because they don't want the ordinance, right? So they're like, hey, you can keep your administrative fee and you can keep the ordinance, thanks. But the fact that it's a sort of a new scheme, and it's a burden, a new obligation, that we as a community are, are, you know, opting them into, I think I would just sort of, like, not have it. But if it's, if it's a major issue for you, then, then I think I'm totally fine with, keeping it in, as the record now indicates my, my concerns with having it.
I would like to keep it in with, with the proviso that it be some sort of intelligent set amount that doesn't go crazy, but that does cover the staff costs for, as traditionally we do, that might come up with individual things.
Okay, so totally fair. So then I will, will strike the requirement that, or the ask that the administrative fee be removed. Are you okay with the removal of the 60-day reno subscription?
Well, hold on, let's, let's just finish this. I'd like to, I'd like to see the staff, I'd like to see the staff come up with the set amount that we, you know, I, the direction is that, that staff not go crazy, that staff be, you know, I know you will, but I just have to say this on the record to make sure that that comes across.
You can control the craziness when the fee actually comes back to you, because we can't charge a fee until it's been approved by the city council.
Excellent, thank you.
So that's how you will control it.
Thank you.
And I guess I'll have another option to vote on the issue then. Okay, so then I think, I'll just, I'll just, just leave it clean, that the motion is to adopt Option A as it is currently written by, by staff. So my, my, please ignore my, my amendment attempts. And I think Councilmember Carlton would be okay with seconding that.
All right, so, so the record's clear. The motion is by Councilmember Combs and seconded by Councilmember Carlton. Yes?
Yes, thank you. There's one edit that we have in Section 8.56.130. We took the actual remedy section of Option B and transported it into Option A, and some of that is not applicable here. And so we recommend striking the language where a landlord provides a legal notice to terminate without cause, or where the landlord provides a legal notice of significant rent increase.
Sorry, what page are you on?
I'm sorry, that's page 10 of.
What's, what number that we have that we're looking at?
It's Alternative A, page 10.
Yes.
Of the actual ordinance.
Mine stops at nine, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, okay, it's, it's Section 8.56.130.
Page 74, I think.
But that's before the ordinance. Right?
And it would, actually, it's the one, the, the fifth line from the bottom. We would recommend striking the fifth line from the bottom, the fourth line, and the third line from the bottom, and inserting the language after receipt of notice of termination. And the reason for that change is that it references the triggers in the old language, and it really is not applicable to this particular ordinance.
So just to make it clear, can you read the, the actual language that would be deleted?
Yes. Where a landlord provides a legal notice to terminate without cause, or where the landlord provides a legal notice of a significant rent increase, or proposed multiple rent increases that cumulatively create a significant rent increase at any time during a 12-month period. So we recommend striking that language and instead inserting after receipt of notice of termination.
I mean, yeah, if you're looking for some, for me as the maker of the motion, that, that's totally fine.
Kat, you accept, that's up to you to second, or?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Discussion on debate, on debate on the motion. Councilmember Nash.
So I'm just wondering if there's any way to get the no-cause eviction homelessness protection in there? And if not, why not? Because I don't think it's a legal challenge issue.
I don't think no-cause has been noticed. No-cause eviction has been noticed to the public that we would be doing that, so.
It's in there. It's, has been part of.
It's in Alternative B.
Yeah.
It's in Alternative B.
Right.
Right, so. As the maker of the motion, do you want to entertain it, Mr. Combs?
No.
Okay. Do you want to obtain, do you want to entertain it? Councilmember Carlton. Any other debate on the motion?
So can I just clarify, just to make sure? So on page four of the ordinance, in Section 8.56.030 definitions, definition D, eligible residential household, would remain at 80% of the AMI, but there would be a, they would have to have a residency of at least 12 months to qualify.
Why do you, why do you want to do that? Because I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm on board with that.
Well, I, the idea is, is that, like, under the Redwood City ordinance, there, there is no, like, actual length of residency requirement, so someone can be in a unit for a month, right, and then be, then eligible to some sort of relocation assistance?
Yeah, but the idea is, I think the idea is that if the, if someone, so, I mean.
But the thing is, is I struck. I said that I, I removed all my amendments, but.
Oh, yeah, he removed his amendment, so that's not there.
But that was, so that, but that was the reasoning behind it, just because.
That's why I was trying to clarify, because I want to make sure that we have a very clear motion before you vote.
Okay.
So that is not part of.
We don't have to debate it. It's gone. Well, I wanted to debate. But, yeah, I actually removed that, I removed all of, all of my suggested amendments.
So it is just an intro, it's a, the motion is to approve Alternative A as an urgency ordinance, as it's written, with the exception of the change to Section 8.56.130, as indicated by Cara.
Yes.
If there's no more debate, we can go ahead and vote on that. Bill, do we need to make any findings for the urgency ordinance, or are we okay?
They're all incorporated in the ordinance itself.
Thank you.
Yes.
So everyone goes, goes ahead and votes.
Yeah. I'll be an I, it's not.
Drew's isn't working.
It's not showing up.
Okay, motion doesn't pass as an urgency ordinance, so.
Correct.
Interesting. So we can go ahead now, and you want to just make a motion that it's not an urgency ordinance?
Yeah, so.
This would be to introduce the ordinance.
Yes. Please, Councilmember Nash.
I would vote for it if it includes no-cause eviction, and I would add one more piece to the no-cause eviction that, under family exemptions, I would like to include grandchildren and primary caregivers.
So you can talk about that and entertain it, but I just want to point out that you're trying to, you're, you're actually saying that you don't want it to be an urgency ordinance and actually take longer to implement so that you can get those things into it. Councilmember Combs.
So why don't we do this? Why don't you make the motion, and then, and then we can go from there? Like, if you, you make the motion based on these modifications, and, and I'll determine whether it's something that would get in my vote. I think that would probably be easier.
Okay, so I move that we proceed with the Alternative A with the no-cause eviction clause, and that the no-cause eviction clause under the family members also includes grandchildren and primary caregivers as people who would be included in a family move-in, and that we do it as an urgency ordinance.
So if, if I understand, and, because we have to make sure that we, that it appears correctly, I think you're saying that you want to substitute, and Cara, you may have to help me, that you want to substitute the language around displace or displacement with essentially a landlord-caused termination.
No, I want to add the landlord-caused termination to the move-in. I mean, sorry, to the, sorry, it's getting late.
Protected, the five, right, the thing that would fall under. So, but, but that's.
So it would, so it would be the, let me.
So is that putting the language back in 8.56.130?
8.56.130. What page is that?
Page 74.
74.
That was the, the bit that they pulled out.
So the, the landlord-caused termination provision is the broad language that says any termination other than the exceptions.
Oh, okay, so yes, you're right.
And so then you don't need to enumerate the other items that are in Alternative A because they're limiting, as opposed to, they're specifying when it applies.
You're absolutely right, thank you. Yes.
Okay. But my only problem is, is the language doesn't exactly fit. We can't just substitute it over. So if, if the motion passes, we're going to have to bring it back, and we're coming back next week?
We have a meeting, yeah, we have a, we will be having a meeting next week. However, yeah, we will be having a meeting next week.
Because I, I mean, I think there's more than just. Because I, I mean, I think there's more than just a simple tweaks to it. But if that's the direction, then we can bring that back for adoption, if that motion passes.
In, just from my perspective, it turns Alternative A into Alternative B Lite, essentially. It, 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 it sort of guts what is the corpus of Alternative A, and tries to model it on Alternative B. So, I, I just to say that why the motion won't get my support is because I think a lot of the concerns around Alternative B still come, come up with, with this issue, with this change.
Even though there wouldn't be no significant rent increase trigger, which actually is where my heart is.
But essentially, you would be saying that, like, the, a landlord could, couldn't would be prohibited from evicting tenants for any reason other than these nuisances and other, other specific things?
And failure to pay rent.
And failure.
And a family move-in, a family member needs, is moving in, which includes the owner, the owner's siblings, the owner's parents, the owner's grandkids, and the primary caregiver.
So, I mean, it, it becomes like this, this just cause eviction ordinance. I, I mean, let's just have a vote.
What's on the table?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're kind of there, too.
So, do you want me to explain what's on the table, what I believe is on the table? Councilmember Nash, do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, it would be Alternative A, but rather than having the triggering events being specified that are in Alternative A that would trigger relocation benefits of essentially the building being taken off the market, you know, and those five specified reasons, it would substitute in the language from Alternative B, which is the landlord caused termination language. So, any termination of the lease, other than the exceptions which are listed under landlord caused termination, would trigger relocation assistance or payments. Except that, the item four, owner move-in, would be expanded to include grandchildren and primary caregiver. So essentially, any eviction other than failure to pay rent, breach of rental agreement, nuisance, or an owner move-in would trigger relocation benefit.
I second Councilmember Nash's motion.
And, and the motion is to essentially direct staff to go back, modify the ordinance, to incorporate these changes into it, and bring it back to you for consideration next week.
So, it's, it's not to pass it, it's just to put it in?
You can't pass it, because there are too many tweaks and changes.
You got to give notice to people.
And so then, then the public has the opportunity to comment on that ordinance when it comes back to you for adoption. It's, it's the same thing with the regular ordinance. You would, you're, the first, if there's a motion to introduce, and it comes, and it's not adopted as an urgency ordinance, the public has the opportunity to comment on the actual ordinance that comes back to you for the adoption, at the time of adoption.
Yep. Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you. So, my understanding is, we won't be able to do the, the motion we just put on the table because it can't be an urgency ordinance, because there's too many tweaks to it.
Well, it, it can't be introduced or adopted as an urgency ordinance, because we don't have the precise wording, and it's going to take some, a little bit of tweaking and work to do that. So, it, it has to be sufficiently clear coming out of tonight's meeting in order for it to be either adopted or introduced, either way. And I, and I just, there, there, the wording doesn't fit exactly, so that's why it's got to be kind of modified, revised, and come back to you.
Bill, for the record, how do I suggest this motion?
All right. So, so the motion is to direct staff to bring back Option A for either adoption as an urgency ordinance, or introduction as a regular ordinance at the, at next week's meeting, with landlord caused termination to substitute for the displace or displacement kind of definition.
Modified version should be on your screen.
I could just add one further clarification. The Alternative A lists a series of exceptions as well. And if we are importing the Alternative B exceptions, there would have to be some reconciliation. Do you want to include all, the whole set of, of exceptions, both the A exceptions and the B exceptions? Or do you just want to include the B exceptions, and then drop the exceptions in Alternative A? Those exceptions are listed in Section C of the ordinance.
Okay. Guys, candidly, this feels to me like we're taking a rental relocation ordinance, and it's becoming a no cause eviction ordinance. And then, like, there, I, I don't, I can't even speak substantively to that, because I didn't prepare tonight for us to decide whether or not we should be passing a no cause eviction ordinance. And I don't think we gave notice to the public that we would be passing a no cause eviction ordinance. What I've been, came prepared to discuss, and, like, looked at very closely, was a rental relocation ordinance. Doesn't preclude the Housing Commission or members of this council in the future to bring no cause eviction as an issue they want to discuss.
Can I try a different tact, then? What if we go with B, and we make it, no, no, and we put the ordinance from A into B? In other words, we limit it to the five units or more, 80% AMI, and get rid of the rental trigger, the rental increase trigger? Isn't that where we are?
No, because you still have Costa-Hawkins. I don't, I, so I don't, I don't even know, so I don't know what that even looks like at this point, like, how that, how that gets deconstructed. I mean, you guys, I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, and I care, I care, I care, I care very much that you're trying to find a place to, to come out on this. So, if you guys want to look at no cause eviction, then that can come up through the council work plan, as something to be discussed, and that, that wouldn't be precluded from doing it. I, what I, what I don't want to end up doing right now, is what I feel like we're down the path of right now, is not doing anything tonight, having another meeting next week, having another meeting the week after that, and this going on ad, ad, ad item. And that's exactly where I was walking into this, where I was like, I want to start helping people now. And get that on the books, and then start getting the criteria for the fund, and like, just accomplish it and be done with it. And then, the other, there's always items we're putting before the Housing Commission this year to go ahead and bring forward through their program. So... Yeah, Vice Mayor Taylor?
Thank you. Our goal was to bring something that, that would get passed to help people tonight, but we're averaging one item a year. Last year, it was 12-month lease. This year, it's tenant relocation. Next year, it's something else. And so, we're moving slowly on it, because again, the city hasn't kept data on its own residents. And so, we're doing our best to take care of the community that exists, and so, and that's what we're trying to do. So we're not trying to be difficult. So, if we could get staff direction, where do we go from here?
Well, I think, I think there's going to be another motion now. Oh, sorry, we, do, do we vote on this motion?
No, there's a motion that's before you that needs to be voted on.
All right. So, vote. It's not direct staff to bring Alt, A, oh, Alternative A. All right, well.
So the motion fails, with Mayor Mueller, Councilmember Combs, and Councilmember Carlton dissenting.
So, I'll, I'll try this again. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Alternative A, with the only changes being the ones that, that was previously outlined by, by Cara.
Do you guys want, and you guys don't, neither of you want to change your position on whether or not you'd vote for an urgency ordinance? Because right now, we're going to vote just for...
Yeah, this is just a regular...
Point of order, haven't we already voted on A?
We voted only as an urgency ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second that.
So it'll pass, it'll pass with three, and it won't go into effect immediately.
Right, so this is an, this is to introduce, because the vote on an urgency ordinance failed.
Failed, yeah.
Right.
So unless there's some change in direction...
I made a motion, and Councilmember Carlton seconded, so I...
So if either of you were to make an amendment right now to make it an urgency ordinance, that would signal the rest of us that there'd be four votes? But we don't have to do it that way? Okay. We can go and lead to a vote.
I'm, I'm, I don't really think that this is, I don't, I don't have a problem with being an urgency, simply because the impact that it's having, someone is going to know months in advance whether or not they're going to change the use of their building or what have you. So I, I don't mind, but you made the motion.
Um, yeah, yeah.
It's not, it's not, it's not an urgency ordinance now.
Yeah, no, totally.
All right, so let's vote.
So you, you don't want it to be...
There's not votes for an urgency ordinance, so let's, I just want to vote. And I'm, I'm a yes.
I'm a no.
The motion passes, with Mayor Protem Taylor and Councilmember Nash dissenting.
So now, if you want to provide any direction to staff on the coming back with a community housing fund?
Yeah, so, why don't we talk about that? So what I think actually would make sense is that we go ahead and appoint two councilmembers ad hoc to meet with Clay, to go ahead and create proposed criteria in a staff report that we could then look at. I think that's going to be the fastest way to do this, and get it back to us, and I'd like to try to get back to us as fast as possible. I'm going to nominate. Will you be on it? Yes. Would one of you like to be on it with him? No? Not interested? You would? Cecilia? All right.
I was going to suggest you do it, since it was your...
No, I have, me, trust me, I, right now with Starla and folks, I have, we have a lot of going on with the agenda. So, I trust you, yes. Yes, we do. So, so that's fine. So I, I trust you guys to go ahead and do it. And if there's input that staff has from me, I can always talk to staff, I just can't talk to the two of you. So, with that, is that acceptable to everybody? Yep? All right. Bill, do you need anything more?
I don't think so.
All right. Then we are moved on from that topic. All right, we're going to go ahead and take up now...
The PSA, public comment on the PSA?
The public comment on the PSA, which is item H4. All right. Receive report and hear public comment on upcoming negotiations with the Menlo Park Police Sergeants Association on successor agreement to the current agreement expiring June 30th, 2019. We have a report from our Administrative Services Director, Lenka Diaz, who will make the presentation. There you are. You're hiding behind Clay.
So, Mayor and councilmembers, I do have a presentation. It's short, prepared for you, but it is just excerpts from the staff report. So I, just with the late hour, I wanted to check in with you if you'd like me to provide the presentation.
I don't need the staff report. Do any of you guys need the staff report?
No.
No? Can we have...
On the basis of us having discussed this at length in private, in closed session? I don't, unless, unless there's someone, if there's someone in the...
We ask for public comment right now. So is there any public comment on the item? No public comment on the item, so we can go ahead and, I think we've gone ahead then, and so I need a motion and second to receive report and hear public comment on upcoming, I need a motion and a second that we've received the report and heard public comment on the upcoming negotiations.
Go ahead and make the motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All right, let's go and vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That passes unanimously.
It passes unanimously.
We're going to go ahead, is, are there any, the informational items, anyone have any questions for the informational items, I1, I2?
Mayor Mueller, we do have public comment for item F, which is public comment.
Oh, let's take public comment right now, then. All right, so our first public comment is Andrew Boone. I believe Mr. Boone has gone home. So our next speaker is Kyra Brown. Good morning.
Hi, I would first like to preface my remarks by saying that I came before you in 2017, when the issue of a Facebook-funded police unit in Bell Haven was on the city's agenda, and I expressed being wary of something like this, due to the propensity that overpolicing would be the result. Okay, so fast forward to today, 2019. My name is Kyra Brown. I am an East Palo Alto resident, as well as a planning commissioner. Recently, I learned that several East Palo Alto residents riding Facebook bikes have been arrested by Menlo Park Police Department. I later learned that the police department did not have Facebook's consent to undergo this operation. With that said, I would like to publicly request that Menlo Park City Council provide data on how many EPA residents have been stopped for riding Facebook bikes, and provide this information to East Palo Alto's City Council. I'd also like to invite the Menlo Park and East Palo Alto Police Departments and residents to join us in creating a bike access program and a memorandum of understanding, which looks for solutions to this problem outside of racial profiling and running the risk of exposing urban youth to the criminal justice system unnecessarily. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And I should have stated before you spoke, that under public comment, the public may address the city council on the subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker can address the city council once in her public comment for a limited three limits, three minutes. We cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and we can't respond to non-agenda issues. So I apologize, we can't talk back to you. But we will shortly. All right. And the, the next public speaker is Isamar Moia, and I hope I pronounced that right.
Hi, thank you so much for being here this late, and still being so understanding. My name's Isamar, and I'm an East Palo Alto resident. I've lived in East Palo Alto for the last 26 years. And on February 7th, 2019, we had over 65 community members from Bell Haven and East Palo Alto and other parts of Menlo Park... from Bell Haven and East Palo Alto and other parts of Menlo Park come together to discuss their concerns regarding incidents that have occurred related to Facebook bikes, specifically arrests, citations of citizens, including Facebook employees, youth, and other members from our community. You might be wondering that why this is a concern for us. And just sharing some statistics, African Americans and Hispanics make up about thirty-two percent of the population in two thousand fifteen. However, they compromised fifty-six percent of all incarcerated people, looking at two thousand fifteen. So African Americans at that time were incarcerated at more than five times the rate of whites. And within East Palo Alto and East Menlo Park, there is a large Hispanic and African American community. So this is a matter that is essential to address. East Menlo Park has been, regarding the Facebook bikes, our biggest concern is that they're being used as a tool to racially profile people. And it's really important to think about the long-term solutions that we can address regarding this. As an action, I would like to receive from the city of Menlo Park additional insights and reports. One of the action items and follow-ups that we're requesting is public data from the year of two thousand nineteen up to the month of January twenty nineteen from police logs. And then we would also like additional information on how many arrests and citations have been prompted while an individual was riding a Facebook bike in Menlo Park, East Palo Alto residents, and Menlo Park residents from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. We're also requesting a short-term solution as we address this larger issue, that a statement be made to share with the public as to what the Menlo Park Police's stance is on this, and also continued conversation regarding this topic. We follow up, we followed up with an email and we'll forward that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move from item F to item G, the consent calendar. Are there any questions on the consent calendar? Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move.
Have a second? All right. Well, let's all vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. And then we're going to move to, I think, the last thing we have on the, well, no. So we're moving to I now. Informational items. Any questions on the informational items for staff? No, moving on, past I. City managers' report, anything to report?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, did you
You already did. All right. Nothing to report. We're going to go councilmembers' report. I'm announcing a joint city council meeting with the Menlo Park Fire Protection District on the fifth. Councilmember, did you have, Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. I was told that the people that sponsored the roundtable I spoke on, on smart cities and city services are actually writing it up, which would be nice and I don't have to go through my own crib notes. And I will provide that to you all so that you're all in on, on what was discussed. And I was going to offer, if you like, I can put together like an informal thing to tell you about kind of what I've learned on it's, there's, I know this is me being a geek, but there's some really amazing, not only technologies that cities are using, but really great ways that cities are using public-private partnerships to leverage the technologies so that they best impact the citizens in a great way in the city. And I'm happy to, if you're interested, I don't really want to preach to you if you're not interested, but if you are, I'm happy to put something together to kind of share what I've learned. I don't expect that I'm going to share this with you and you're going to say, yeah, okay, and immediately throw it onto the work plan. But there's some really good case studies I can share with you on ways it can be done to keep in the back of our heads as we move forward in the future.
Great. I have a, I'll talk with you about that, Kat, about adding that in the councilmember report section of a meeting. Councilmember Nash?
I was just wondering if you can give us an update on the CCAG meeting? Or was it the, the meeting left?
The CCAG meeting was, it was, it was, we voted on the managed lanes for one-on-one and the ownership will be shared between the MTI and, and the CCAG.
All right. Oh, the classic contact? Oh, something different? Okay. Councilmember Combs?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. One other thing, and city manager, Mrs. Jerome Robinson knows about it. The city of Palo Alto, Mayor Palo Alto, Eric Felseth and I had lunch and, last week, and he is, we have had this idea that we would do a joint council meeting to talk about areas of pain points on traffic and other issues, putting together an agenda on that, that historically, I know for years, we've always talked about those people in Palo Alto and they talk about us, but those people in Menlo Park, and we're like, let's just sit down together and talk with each other. So he's down and we're talked about making it a, a rotating thing. So this year, this year we'll go to them and next year they'll come to us. There'll be a once yearly meeting where we all sit down. And the idea will be that, the idea is that we can go ahead and start to get some of these things, the, the juices flowing and get these things ingrained in the, in the work plan, but also just to hear in that setting some of the pain that we're feeling and some of the wonderful things that we're seeing as a result of collaboration and when we don't collaborate. So we'll, that'll be coming through you guys in very soon. And, all good?
Do you want me to? Just Cecilia and I, as part of the Stanford GUP Subcommittee, Cecilia will be the point person for the Santa Clara sub, for a more select Subcommittee, which will now, which will be perhaps meeting with, as part of the Stanford GUP.
Congratulations? Commiserations?
All right. Great. All right. Well, I think with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.